The hour being after seven, we'll open up the meeting of June seventeenth. The main meeting room, first item is minutes and would you say we don't have them? Okay, moves on down to other business. First, next item, reorganization.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to nominate Sarah Kefield as as chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Alright.
I'd like to nominate Jack.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, alright, all those in favor of Sarah, say aye.
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 Alright, all's in favor of Jack, say aye.
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 And okay. For clerk, I'm not clerk, um vice chair, I'll nominate John. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any any other nominations? No, be enough, make a motion to for John to be clerk, um yeah, for John to be vice chair. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, and the third one, nominate Katie for clerk. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Staying?
Staying.
Okay.
So. We abstained.
Done, okay, um.
Do we change seats?
No, you don't have to, because you're prerogative, um. Okay, next item of business going down here is
Then I'd have to move on my step.
The discussion on the master plan. And it was circle around who should be on it, um the first, and what we had, what I printed out was the master plan implementation implementation committee that was done and readopted on July thirteenth, two thousand and ten. And the makeup of that committee was one planning board member, one selectman, one sewer and water, one Concom, one historical, one housing partnership, one school committee, one finance member. And for members at large, uh one would be appointed by the board of selectmen, one by the planning board, one by appointed by the chamber of commerce. And this goes on to say ex officio, non-voting members, including economic and grants, recreation director, town plan, a school business administrator, so that's what we had before. I'm still in favor of that, so any?
Have a question.
Yeah.
Was that the actual master plan or was that the update?
That was adopt, this is the actual implementation committee, but it was updated July thirteenth, two thousand and ten.
Okay.
So this is the charter, the bylaws set forth by.
Oh, that's the charter?
Yep.
Oh.
So.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So again, uh following what Katie said, so that's the implementation committee, so that could potentially be different than the, you know, the creation committee, the master plan committee, but you're proposing to to keep it?
Well, this is what it is, you you do your master plan, they're the ones that, um.
I thought it could be different, maybe we can keep it the same, but um.
Okay, well, that's what we have.
If that's a bylaw though.
Okay, what else, well.
How can we waiver from it?
Okay, well, I guess the question would be, is there any, is there any?
I didn't realize there was a bylaw, that's why I'm asking, this is the first I heard, so that's why I'm asking. But it says we're doing a charter and bylaw, I can see that.
Is that a bylaw or that was just who was picked to be on the the committee at that time?
No, they didn't have the names, it just.
So is this a steering committee, I mean, I know most master plan
Yeah, these are the ones.
whose towns do a steering committee.
Yeah, these are the ones who put everything together with a consultant, yep.
A whole lot of other people will participate, so.
Hopefully a lot of problem.
I'd like to propose two planning board members instead of one.
Okay, um.
Can you read that one more time, please?
What, the whole thing?
No, just who was, who were the participants?
Planning board, selectmen, everything's one, 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 one. Planning board, selectmen, sewer and water, Concom, historical, housing partnership, school committee, FinCom. One appointed by the selectman, one by the planning board, one by the chamber. And then you naturally have the.
Did it have council on aging?
Uh, that might have been one appointed by the planning board or selectman.
Or selectman.
Yeah, they can, you can pick whoever you want.
No particular groups of residents are identified?
No, no, that's just, there's, you get three voting, you get three people you can pick. Chamber of Commerce naturally is on there to pick somebody from their group to represent business, so the planning board and the selectman got a shot at whoever they want.
I'd like to see certain groups of residents represented.
So I think that we can steer it that, I agree. I think we can steer it as far as participation that way, I think with, so I haven't seen this paper, I'm re, I'm I'm looking. But that being said, I think we can steer it that way, I think what Jack's saying is these are just the people on the, I don't want to call it a board, because that's not the right word, but.
Yeah, the committee.
Yeah, the committee, um but that doesn't mean that's who's going to, the data should come from everyone in town, it should be a very, very wide scope. So I think those are just the people, the worker bees, is the way I view it. Does anyone agree or disagree with that?
I think it's often called a steering committee for the for the master plan.
But, right, but what I'm trying to say is I think, like, that's not the end all be all, it's, there's gonna be a whole lot more involvement.
Well, they would, yeah, they would go out and and also solicit more input, they would work with other community members, and it'd be the consulting company that would do all of the legwork, you know, putting putting the document together. But they would meet once a month, and then they would report back to us, is what should happen, as we are the sponsoring board.
Okay.
So so should we add a couple more?
What do you think of adding?
But can you if it's a charter and a bylaw? I mean, that's, so I was, aren't we restricted if that's a bylaw?
Well, what it takes is it takes all the elected and appointed boards other than the zoning.
Are you saying that was from, that's a bylaw charter?
Well, so it says.
Yeah.
Charter and bylaws, devised and readopted. So they readopted two thousand and ten when they did their update in two thousand and four.
I'm wondering if that's charter and bylaws for the committee, but not that, it's a bylaw that established the committee?
Okay.
You know, just to be.
Alright, well, kind of spinning, so what's?
So what if, um, I hate to do this, but perhaps we should table it till next meeting? And we should all review the charter and bylaws since we didn't know it existed? And that way we all have more information?
Yeah, so I I think that's the charter and bylaws of the master plan implementation committee. It's not, it's not, I don't, I don't think that's being specified in a bylaw.
That's in the town bylaws, you mean?
Yeah. I don't have a copy of it.
Is it, is it numbered at all, Jack?
I don't think that is a bylaw that we, that is telling us what to do. That is, so so in other words, typically, there's for the master plan, there is the steering committee that the planning board appoints, and the members of. And 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 I know that that Pat Duchesne sent out a memorandum that came from the, um, from the the consultant company, that talked about how many people to have on the committee, large committees, mid-sized committees, and very small committees. And their thought on it was that the the ideal time size is to be in the middle, um, I think they said about eleven. And it's good not to have just all the town officials on it, that makes it, makes it very more in, you know, like an in inside thing, so. So I think, I I noticed that Ben Barrett's for the, um, that the, that with the select board which was talking about at the time, was they put, um, members of different boards or designate, so to give a little flexibility that that board member or that board could appoint somebody else. So that gives, that gives extreme amount of flexibility in making sure we're getting a lot, a very wide, uh, input from other groups in town. So I, I I think what you had said, Jack, was was good, I would just add a few things to it, wouldn't that be my suggestion?
What?
So so I think you're gonna have to do it a little slower, because I I wasn't able to get it all down, so I think, I think if you don't mind doing it one more time.
Okay, planning board, selectmen, sewer and water, Concom, historical, housing, school, and FinCom. And then three appointees, one by the selectmen, one by us, and one by the chamber.
It's three.
But the chamber's not on the list, they just get an appointee?
They would appoint someone within their group to represent.
Makes sense, yeah.
So I looked back at the last master plan, and there, it was huge, um, but it also, I don't think's accurate.
No, it's not.
Because it lists the entire planning board and Kate as participants of the committee. So, and I was surprised to see my name on there, because remember, I remembered I participated, but I didn't remember in what capacity, so I guess I was a member of the committee. Um, and that's why I remember it so much, because I must have gone to all those meetings, but, um.
Yeah, that was just a.
This was the, this was way back, and I tried to figure out who the people were. Um, and I could get most of them, but not all of them, they had recreation, building inspector, building maintenance, conservation, they had two from conservation, they had fire police, moderator, library, engineering, I mean, they had a bunch of town employees on there.
Yeah.
Not just committees.
They listed the entire planning board.
Right.
Those Kate, Abbott from sewer and water, uh, Jim Ossoff was the, what, town engineer, no.
I couldn't figure out who.
Building, Maggie.
Maggie.
Town engineer, Mary Jane was the build, uh, Karen was the, uh, selectman, Paul Cesari, fa, uh, library, Barbara Coughlin from the, uh.
Council on Aging.
Agent Josh Cole was the.
Recreation, yeah.
Davy Conley was.
At the time, he was building maintenance, wasn't he?
Yes.
Yeah.
Al Getz from Concom, Landis from Concom, Eddie Hartman was the fire chief, Sue McGuire probably represented the council on aging. I don't know who, remember who she was.
I think she's school related.
Doreen, I know her, but I think she was just a member of the, same thing with Ellen Nado, John Rock was the moderator, Mike Ryan was school committee, Rich Shields was probably from chamber.
Well, no, I think I was chamber, he was economic development.
Rick Stillman was the fire chief, and the last one I did not, so that was, but that wasn't a committee, that was, that was just a whole bunch of stuff.
Well, I do think most of these people, when I read it today, it came back to me, most of those people were at those meetings we went to. So not so much, not so much the town employees as all the other people.
Okay.
So.
So I think one of the advice we got from the consultant is that when you have very, very large committees, um, first of all, it can be very hard to get a quorum, to, you know, to to schedule meetings and make sure people have time to attend. And it just becomes, you know, unyieldy, un, you know, just difficult to manage. So they recommended a more of a mid-sized committee, but but also recognizing that other, all the, all the town boards would be very involved in this. And one model they had here is having an advisory, a project steering committee, and a larger advisory committee. And the advisory committee would do all the outreach, but the s- the smaller project steering committee would do the, you know, do the the more routine managing during the the course of the project, so that's another option.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
We have, uh, Pat Duchesne's here with us, maybe he'd like to speak?
Um.
Could invite him to speak, no?
Oh, I didn't, where do you, when did you get that?
What, this?
Yeah.
The memorandum?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't recall, it's been a while.
It it came, yeah.
Last week, I think.
It came, it came a few, a couple of weeks ago, I think.
Yeah.
Um.
Alright, well, one of the th- one of the things we gotta scratch off is we don't have a plan, so. Alright, Pat, if you wanna say something?
Yes, so.
There's a microphone right there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Patrick Duchesne is director of economic, uh, community and economic development. So I think there was just kind of a little bit confusion in terms of the master plan implementation committee was the committee that was set up to implement the plan that was developed in two thousand and four. What's, we're trying to create now is more or less that steering committee that is going to be the community outreach, uh, initial group that works with myself, uh, and Judy Barrett to do community outreach for the revision of the master plan. So that initial memo that, uh, you got from Ben Barrett that had thirteen members, that was kind of a latest revision of a proposal that we wanted to bring forward to the planning board of that steering committee, more or less. Ultimately, it's up to the board how they would like that steering committee to be, um, assembled, um, so if you have to answer any other questions regarding that.
Thank you.
Alright, what do we wanna do? You wanna add anything tonight, you wanna just wait and go back and see what we have and what we can and can't do?
I would advise not waiting, because, oh.
So he said thirteen, we get twenty-four before.
Well, not wait, why, is there a?
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Is there an urgent need for this?
Well, I know the the consultant company's already started working.
Oh, that's funny, it's, we, I have no knowledge of that, I mean, this wasn't done by us. The other thing is it's gonna, I don't know why they did a jump start, because it wasn't, the master plan isn't up until twenty twenty-four, so three years away. So, I mean, I.
It does seem a bit, this is what it is, yeah.
So it's a lot of, you know, why it's jump start, I don't know, but is, I'd rather have to get it right than just slosh forward, so we, and we don't wanna point people that either shouldn't be there or not supposed to be, or we should have, or more importantly, we don't wanna have, miss somebody we should have put on there, that's probably worse. You always have too many, but if you're missing somebody, so, my suggestion is we find out everything that was, if they're in the charter on this, if it's not this committee, and find out so that we can see what we have. And if we have to change, we can find out how we have to change for the next time.
Can I ask Pat a question?
Yeah.
Pat, is she already working, and by whose charge, if that's the case?
So Judy Barrett is, uh, um, her, Jeff, Bert, Barrett Planning Group is already working on this project and assembling information. By her charge, I guess.
Like statistical type information, or?
Yeah, so we've been, uh, just basically compiling, um, existing town record information that is imperative for their study. I was also gonna mention too, so if the board wants to think about this some more and continue to in that, uh, further meeting, I think that, you know, obviously it's up to the town board which is to to do that, but it may be a good idea to 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 think about that some more. The one thing, at least today, uh, that I would certainly request, um, the board to consider voting on is the Barrett Planning Group is also hoping to conduct the leadership interviews and begin, uh, talking to town staff and board, um, chairpeople, uh, chairpersons and vice chairs, as well as other town leaders. So this is kind of an initial phase, um, for them over the summer to really compile as much initial information as they can regarding the town, talking to boards, um, talking to, uh, department heads. And so due to the time of year, I think even if this, um, steering committee were to be assembled, a proper first meeting to start truly doing community outreach would probably have to wait to the fall anyway, just, you know, during the summer, it's hard to really get a good meeting together and be able to do community outreach effectively, so. If the board wishes to think about the composition of the committee, the steering committee some more, I think that's a, I think that's an excellent idea. I would just only ask if, uh, Judy Barrett's group can start to begin doing those interviews and that, um, that background research.
Okay.
So I just wanna say I agree with the community outreach waiting till the fall, just because the mandates have just lifted. I mean, this is our first meeting back, and I know a lot of people are uncomfortable still, they're unsure as to going to big groups and meetings, so I think hopefully, good willing, by the fall, we'll all feel we're in a better place. That being said, I think that you're right in, Jack, in that you said, you know, let's, let's think about it, do it right, do it once. But I like what Pat said too, in that we should let her do the, I mean, that, if she's just talking to town hall and gathering statistical type information, I think we should let her start that part of it so that she gets some groundwork done. And we should maybe revisit the committee next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
John?
I agree with what Katie has said.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with that, but but I do wanna just, uh, make sure we're, I I believe that the the composition of the committee is strictly up to us. I don't think there's any, there's no, there's no guidance, uh, you know, there's no bylaw or something that's that's covering that, it's really totally up to us.
I think that's all we just wanna verify, that there isn't actually any bylaw in the charter, anything that would just restrict us, yeah.
Okay, Sarah?
Um. I have no comment.
Okay, um, my speak on, yeah, you gotta look first, this is all online, isn't too hard to find, and, uh, just pop it up. But the other thing is, uh, Judy Barrett. Been a wise guy, but I should be, who is Judy Barrett, what's that about?
So Judy Barrett, I I, she's the, um, the president of the Barrett Consulting Group, so that was the, um, the consultant that was ultimately determined to be, um, the consultant chosen by the, um, joint deciding committee, if I wanna call it that exactly.
The RFP.
Yes.
Of which Katie was a member. Yes.
Yeah, but.
We only had two applicants.
But this committee that was formed was formed by the selectmen, correct? And the RFP was put together by whom?
Um, from my time, but I believe that was a combination of maybe Ashley Clark and, um, Assistant Town Administrator, uh, Patrick Shield.
Okay, so, and so we basically had somebody that it's our charge, but someone else did everything for us, correct? They put the RFP without any input from us, she has a contract, I assume, based upon the RFP? Without any, we're the guys who gotta do it, but we don't even gotta have a say, we just go, here's your contract, here's your consultant.
Um, to my knowledge, that might have been the case taken, this was before I had started with the town.
No, this was happening the last couple of months, but anyway, um, the fact is, we're sitting here, right here today, and I go like this, who's Judy Barrett? I've heard the name, do we have a copy of the RFP? No. Do we have a copy of her contract? No. Has anybody from the administration or anybody been kind enough to send it to us? Because I myself don't play go fish, like, oh, could you please send it to me? You can tell I'm not real happy the way this has gone down, alright? Basically, the selectmen tried to run this through them until I said, no, it's in the mass, it's in the master general laws under the planning board, not them. They go out, they hire this, they write the RFP, and no one's had the courteousness to send us something or say that she's doing. That's why I'm not too happy with this, the way it is, as far as I'm concerned. I don't need her to go out and do anything yet till we even know what she's supposed to do, because you're telling us she needs to do this. While I do contracts all day, and if she's doing something extra, she may want something extra, I wanna make sure she's doing what she's supposed to, and I have no idea if this is part of it or not. So, my o- my only feeling is, and I'm only one of five, is she not starting till we find out exactly what's up? So, I think that's pretty fair, that we shouldn't be shooting in the dark with somebody with a, you know, we're we're telling, letting her do what she wants without us knowing.
Yeah, I that's that's certainly understandable, um, I think that information can be provided, but I think the group that has also been in part of the implementation has has been aware of her actions and, you know, certainly that grant, I mean, that contract, you know, can be sent to you and should have been sent to you, and that's, I can't, I can't speak, obviously, for that, that's, that's certainly an oversight.
And in Pat's defense, he did walk in right at, we started the RFP and you started that week, didn't you?
Yeah.
I believe, so he wasn't the f- front man in the beginning, but.
But we're the ones in charge overseeing it, and we don't even know what's in the scope. You ever hire anybody without knowing?
No, I agree, we should definitely, we should know, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Mr. Chair, I was just, but but Kate, you were, you were on the committee, right?
But we never had any input in that, so what we had input in with the RFP, and it was supposed to be, the meetings were, you know, between the members of the group, it wasn't supposed to be a public, um, discussion, but that being said, what it was, was we basically interviewed the two candidates, we, um, each came up with a couple of questions, the questions were compiled into a big document, and they, you know, they gave a presentation, obviously it was over Zoom. Um, they had their, the people who work with them present, not just the principal. And we asked a few questions, like, we each asked a question or two, um, and then we had a rubric, and we completed the rubric according to how they answered the questions. We never s- we never, um, had input in the actual contract or how much they were charging, we never saw any of that. That was done after the fact, we chose based on their presentation who we felt would do a better job. Um, and the, as far as the RFP, as far as the, you know, the bid going out and what was required, we weren't involved in that, we came on board after that. So I never looked at it that way, but I believe that is correct, I mean, we do need to know that part of the puzzle piece, because you know, whether it was intentional or accidental, someone trying to help out, we should have been the ones, we should have had say in that. We definitely should have, so I do think we should, if we're going to be the ones that are seeing the master plan through, he's right, we need to know what the duties are, what have we hired her to do, what have we agreed upon? Um, and I mean, we all know what a master plan is, we've looked at the old one, some of us participated in it, and we all know what it is and the intent of it, but the specifics, we do need to know if we're going to be, I don't wanna say her bosses, but the people working with her that.
She wants to.
Yeah, so I I do agree, we need to see that.
Okay, alright, so.
Um, I don't know if you know Patrick, but where's the funding for her coming, coming from?
Um, I believe the town received a community compact grant as well as, uh, there's an existing funding account, um, the name, I can't remember at the top of my head, but it, it was the two different sources, one which was grant funding.
Okay.
Alright, so.
So I make a motion that we request a copy of the agreement?
Contract or whatever.
Yeah, all the paperwork and so that we can review it.
Okay, I'll second for discussion, anybody have anything to offer? Well, right off the bat, which you said Kate shouldn't happen, we shouldn't have to play go fish, but, but the motion's been made, and second, all's in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Sorry, I'll, I'll, I'll say aye, I don't know.
Abstain, okay. Alright.
Aye.
I abstained.
Alright, so we gotta get a copy of that, and we wanna get that now.
Mr. Chair, are you proposing that we start the process anew, is that your preferred option?
What do you mean anew?
I mean, like, uh, define the scope, interview candidates.
No, I didn't say that.
I'm I'm just, I'm just trying to understand your perspective.
My perspective is very simple, Sarah, do you let somebody give you a contract if you have no say in and you pay for it? And you're responsible for it, all I wanna do is, let's see what she's doing.
Okay, yeah, I I agree, I'm just trying to understand what's, what's your preferred.
My preferred is, when I buy something, I like to see, yep, I got that, I got that, I got that, and I didn't need that, I don't need them coming back. If we ask her for something right now, and it's not in there, she's gonna look for extra money, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's all it is, the checklist of what we're getting.
Mm-hmm.
What we're buying, that's what I, that will give us, uh, a starting point, okay?
So could I also make it maybe a step more so that we're not paying someone to sit around, maybe we could, um.
I'm not paying her to sit around, she has a contract, so whether it takes her a week or a decade.
Maybe we could, maybe we could let her start with department heads, because that should be standard, right?
Not, well, I don't know that, Kate, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so she is on, she's conducting work currently, so that contract is in place, so.
Oh, she's already started?
Yes.
I don't know why I'm here, then.
Well, in her defense, I have to say, in her defense also, she doesn't know any different, she has a contract with the town wall pole, she's been hired.
No, we don't.
So she's, I mean, by working, she's doing what she's supposed to be doing, I guess you'd say, she doesn't know that it wasn't thorough.
Yeah, but at who?
Yeah.
But we, at whose direction, that's the other thing, but.
Well, that's the, we're following the town administration.
I I would make, I would make the motion that you were, you were saying, Katie, that we allow, um, our consultant to start doing the interviews of town officials, town heads.
I would also make, I I'd make it a dual motion, really, that sh- start, start that, but she should also be, she should be, she should understand that sh- it is the planning board she's working with. she should understand that sh- it is the planning board she's working with, as well as everyone else, but we're the.
Well.
Liaison, I guess you'd say, we're the ones that she'll be dealing with, and I think she should, yeah, I think she should, um, it should be clearly, clearly, that made clear to her, so she knows, because I don't think she has any idea.
Well, I will just say to that effect, if she's in this business, she knows that master plans are master general laws by the planning board, if she doesn't know that, we picked the wrong person. She knows who she works for.
I'm quite confident she knows that. Alright. And it's, and it's, just, just to be clear, it's not one person, she has a firm, it's Barrett Planning Group.
Okay, so, we had a motion, do we have a second on that?
So the motion, can you repeat it? Was it what I said?
So, so, yeah, so, so, yeah, so, so that we allow the, um, uh, the consultant, Barrett, um, consulting company to start doing interviews of town boards, town officials, town heads, as.
I'd, I'd limit it to, um, I'd say that, you said the department heads, I wouldn't go out to the boards yet, I think that, I think she should be within town hall right now, I don't think, like, until we read it and see, she's not gonna do that much in a month, I mean. I think it should be limited to town hall right now. Until we can see what exactly the charge is.
Okay, we redoing that one?
I, I would like to make it be also the, uh, committee, committee chairs, um.
Chair and vice chair.
Chair, sure, yeah, I, I'm not sure why, why constrain her work at this point, um, you know, after all, she's, she's probably, you know, following her well, you know, her company's well-established procedures and, and, uh, techniques, you know, for make, doing master plan, planning, it's probably well-proven, that's one of the reasons I'm sure that she was picked by, for committee that picked her. And, um, you know, it's in our interest to ha- start that work while she's here and, and, uh, you know, so I, I would advocate for both, both, uh, department heads and, um, town board chairs and vice chairs.
So your motion stands?
Yeah, that's my motion.
I need a second, second.
Okay, any further discussions, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? What, which, where'd you go?
Just give me a minute. So when you say committees and, like, we're not talking like, um, I don't know, like, um, like, are we talking elected boards, just the elected boards?
Well, elected.
Or are we talking like housing partnership and, um, you know, ch-.
Zoning and finance and all.
Yeah, w- well, they're town departments, but give me another committee, I th- thought a housing partnership, cause it's sitting in front of me.
I know.
Yeah, so there, there's select board appointed committees, um, and then there's.
No, alright, then I'm a no, so it should only be boards, like, it should be like conservation, building, um, like all those departments and selectmen, planning board, I have no problem with like tho- that, but I don't think it should be going out to everyone yet, because we might have questions, we want her to ask specific questions. Um, and I think that's where we have to see, you know, what the direction is, so.
Okay, I agree with that, at least elected, elected boards and departments, town, you know, town departments.
So I, I think that should be specified.
So I would, I would change my motion to.
Okay, alright, do we have a second to the change?
My people was in, and, uh, department heads.
Okay, sorry.
Second.
Okay, any further discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, aye, abstaining, yeah.
Thank you.
I guess I'm a mean guy for not wanting to go ahead on a contract I never see.
Can I just, while he had to speak on that microphone, looked very awkward.
Well, they didn't set it up the way it's supposed to be.
Can I raise it, well, there's no podium, that's the problem.
Well, that's the thing, well.
Okay.
Not so much for us, it's for the cable.
I think one of the issues in this room though, is that there, you don't have any amplification of sound in the room itself, so sometimes it's pretty hard to hear, hear people.
Okay. Alright, now, first, first public hearing tonight is New World Estates. And. Okay, so, so everybody understands that the last meeting was scheduled, but it was requested the applicant to continue without testimony, so tonight will be the first night it's open. So, those hereby given will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May sixth at seven sixteen, an application, wait a minute, where am I? Wait a minute, is it seven, oh, May, I'm sorry, going to May, we continue tonight, that's what's getting me, on an app, I'll read the original, on Thursday, May sixth, the two thousand twenty-one, at seven sixteen, application of RD Associates. One sixty Old Maple Street, Stoughton, have a definitive, submitted a definitive plan with waivers for five lots subdivision located thirty-eight Peach Street and a portion of twenty-four Peach Street. The owner said property shown on the census map twenty-six, parcel one fifty-eight, zoning residence B, is Eric Waller, twenty-four Peach Street, the owner of property on the census thirty-four. Posses one twenty-one, one twenty-two, one twenty-three, zoning district residence B is RD Associates of Stoughton, said plans entitled New World Estates. And it says that the undeveloped portions of site are wooded and existing dwelling will be demolished, and the five new dwellings will be constructed in accordance with Matt General Law's chapter forty-one, section eighty-one T. So with that being said, it, the hearing is open, and for anybody that's never been here before, what we do is typically, we allow the applicant to state his case, so to speak, and show us everything, and once that's done, I will read any of the all comments that have been given to us, any board committee or anything else that happens to be in here, and once that's done, we will allow the members, if they have any questions, and I'll just ask you to hold your questions to, to the end, cause everybody will get a chance to speak, so you don't have to worry about not getting a shot, so with that being said, Mr. American?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dan American with Legacy Engineering, here with Phil Mackey, on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for a definitive subdivision, we appeared before you for a preliminary, uh, previously, this is proposed on about three acres of land at thirty-eight Peach Streets. So thirty-eight Peach Street is comprised of three existing separate lots, and then also the rear portion of the adjacent twenty-four Peach Street, that rear portion has already been divided from twenty-four Peach Street, we did an A and R plan in twenty nineteen for that. What we're proposing to do is to demolish the existing residents, to install a three hundred and twenty-five foot road, and then to, uh, lay out five new lots. So we have one residence now, in the end we'll have five, so a net increase of four. We are proposing to, uh, build the road in accordance with your regulations and requirements, we're not looking for any waivers with respect to construction of the road. We are, let's talk about drainage a little bit, we, we did test bits out here with the town engineer, soils are very good, sandy gravelly soils, well-draining soils. So we have a proposed basin out front, and then two basins here, so we're picking up runoff from the back half of the property to these two basins, and then the front, down here, goes into the front basin. Uh, very little discharge from these basins, again, it's, it's very sandy gravelly soil, so we're doing a, a lot of infiltration with the design. The two waivers that we are asking for with respect to the design of the subdivision relate to those basins, I think as you know, your regulations are a little outdated, they require a sloped bottom of the stormwater basin with a center drainage channel, which is not the way stormwater infiltrations, uh, basins are built these days, we want a flat bottom. And we don't wanna concentrate the runoff in one location in those basins, we want it to spread out over the entire bottom of the basin, so that's a wa- a waiver we basically ask for every time on a subdivision. Here's the profile view, uh, very modest graves, three percent, two percent, uh, we're coming here to the cul-de-sac, again, we have our stormwater basins, we're connecting to municipal water, municipal sewer. Uh, we don't have any stormwater discharge out towards the street at all, that's all being infiltrated, so it's all being captured and retained on site. And that's really it, uh, it's not a complicated project, we do have a sediment and erosion control plan here, we are going to, we have a developed, uh, stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is in the stormwater report, we have perimeter erosion controls around the entire work area to prevent any sediment or erosion from discharging from the site. We have a construction entrance, at the entrance to the site, to make sure we're not tracking any dirt out into the road, um, standard fare for a project of this nature. We have, uh, appeared before the Conservation Commission, uh, for the land disturbance permit application, and we've received some comments from them. We've also received some comments from the town engineer, which we're in the process of addressing, and we'll be prepared to submit a revised plan to you, uh, in short order. So with that, I'll, uh, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, uh, comments, alright, the first one, I'll pick up, the simple one, uh, request for street name approval from the fire chief, and Christopher Way is approved.
Yeah, we actually are gonna change it to Litchfield's Way, uh, but I have spoken with the police department about that, they've indicated there is no issue with that, I'll follow up with the fire department as well.
I don't think the police get a say in the roads.
E nine one one, so we, we went through E nine one one through the police department.
Okay, so only one thing you had, everybody agreed, you said no.
Pardon?
The only one that every, town department said okay, you said nah, never mind.
My client decided to change the name of the road.
When you get a win, you take a win. Um, from the, uh, Board of Health, the Board of Health, and it's April sixth, voting unanimously that the board reiterate comments from the mod sixteenth meeting, which states the board approvals the request of the preliminary subdivision. The board is not in favor of new construction within the wetlands, has long stance on protecting the wetlands and water sources, as well as protecting residents from human vector borne illnesses. If this project is approved, the board urges the applicant to, as well as the future homeowners, to adopt the best practice standards for me- mosquito mitigation and work with North Park County Mosquito Control for spraying and standing water treatments, institute regular cleaning gutters, provide proper grading of buffers to prevent low points and hold water. The balls, board also requests to be adequate, adequate lighting throughout the development, and recommends that a third light be added, if the development is on a private way, the residents should be ma- made aware that the trash will be picked up on Peach Street. In the event it becomes a public way, the street must be made wide enough for the trash truck to maneuver, so.
So this is a public way, it's designed to your specs, there's an off-site wetland, off property here, it's not on site, so we have no control over that wetland area, but I will obviously circle back with the board of health to get them to update their commentary on that.
Okay.
Um, just to follow, cross that, cross that T and dot the I.
Uh, let's see, from the conservation dated four twenty, um, what's that, oh. Please see the comments below regarding New World and Peach, but it must be in here, I'll find them, sewer and water dated April fourteenth, the board of water sewer, discussed above the subject in our last meeting, the commission wants easement utility, u- utility easement for both water and sewer at the end of lot three to service, lots beyond three. Commissioners are pending future comments regarding, once they hear the town engineer's, um, comments, what they usually do, so you, I'm sure you understand that one, Dan, right?
Yeah, that's something Carl's asked for, so we don't have an objection to any of that.
Okay, from the fire department, Paul Barry Deputy Chief, May fifth, uh, we do not find the location proposed hydrant acceptable, if I were, I don't like to work with the applicant or represent their final location. Fire department requests the applicant confirm the proper turning radius throughout, including entering and exiting the site, u- utilizing the Walpole Fire Department turn radius documentation, and a street name should be proposed. So, uh, you gotta deal with the hydrant, and you don't have the radius thing on that plan?
Hold on, I mean, this is a, this is a road built, designed to your standards, so I'll, I'll provide him with a turning radius exhibit for his file, it's no problem.
Okay, so I'll tell Paul it's per our standards, and that's the way it goes, I assume they meet the new one, your new, okay?
No issue.
Well, as long as you, it's right there, so, um, from the police department dated April sixth, uh, the task plans have been reviewed by Officer Luke Cowan, and they do not have any public safety concerns in relation to traffic in this case, so that's that, uh, okay. Uh, from, oh, actually, this is to the building commissioner, applicant, subject application for demo thirty-eight Peach, and. Another date was August twenty-eighth of twenty twenty, so almost a year ago, the, what it says there, they voted five zero zero in favor that the, that the property of thirty-eight Peach is pref- preferably preserved pursuant to town Walpole demolition bylaw, based upon the form contribution this historically significant house and bottle had, had in the early days of Walpole. It would be in the public interest to preserve, rehabilitate rather than demolish, condition that after a time of two years from the date of historicals commissioned to, decision to pre- preferably preserve the structure thirty-eight Peach without a demolition occurring. The historic structures by law, chapter three forty-nine, again, will be required for the purpose of protecting and preserving significant buildings and structures and aesthetic resources within the town of Walpole. Along with pre- preferably preserved determination, this condition should be noted and filed with the Walpole Building Department. Therefore, under the town of Walpole delay by law, no permit for dem- demolition may be issued by the building commissioner from twelve months starting on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. So, and it asks that if make continued bona fide reasonable efforts to locate a purchaser, preserve or rehabilitate, um.
So the applicant is working with the historical commission, just so you know, uh, he has found somebody who's interested in, in taking pieces of the building, they're working out a plan to do a controlled demolition, so that certain portions of the structure can be saved.
Okay, uh, I do have some here, I'm reading, um, this is actually regarding the historical commission dated April thirtieth, um, regarding, and it came from Christine Cockburn, I know she's here tonight, and I know she'll probably wanna speak, so rather than taking the thunder, you wanna speak to this when the time comes? I don't wanna start misinterpreting or not speaking clearly on that, um. I have something submitted from Dana Sterns, that says, dated April twenty-ninth, it said, I'm writing this letter as a lifelong resident, oh, before I go, is Dana Sterns here? Oh, you wanna speak to that at the end? Okay, I'll hold that, um, and I have another one from Kurt Sanquist, here, you wanna speak to that at the end?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Tricia Uniac, she here? You didn't let her come? You gonna speak to it?
Too feisty.
You gonna speak?
No.
You won't, isn't what you want. Alright, Kevin will speak to that, uh, oh, you got another one in here, Kevin, you, you have a choice of one, I like your wise one better. We have one from Douglas Ashworth at the end, okay, however you guys wanna paraphrase it, whatever you wanna do, and one one here from Ann Walsh of Sawmill. Well, uh, what she says is, she's in opposition to this, uh, and the Peachy is scenic road, uh, and the specific aesthetic elements are apparent when tra- transiting Peach Street. Our older housing stock gives a rural feel with the fences, stone walls and vegetation, I'm gonna paraphrase, uh, Peach Street has also hosted the Pan Mass Challenge, is rather the backdrop for film. The most, most, most recent multi lot developed by the builder ignored the existing context of Peach Street, and preferred that no roadside continuity and detailed aesthetic amen- amenities were given. Uh, what can be taken away is that without proper controls, the existing street scape along Peach Street will be, uh, be continuation of the previous developed next door. The builder will easily make excess million, so, no reason the town shouldn't request a streetscape, and just so everybody understands, we don't do the roads on the town, we do within it. Uh, the preliminary plans submitted to us show drainage infiltration basins on some lots, the largest. The largest one is right along the street and that infiltration has depressed the area of the ground and it could create a temporary pond. So that's something, Kyle, I'm sure you'll take a look at. And the preliminary plan submitted to the planning board last year shows second curb cut to the one created. And this creates two separate driveways. There's no reason the town can't work to develop, develop or to minimize the curb cuts. From Jay Barrett. Thursday, April twenty ninth, longtime resident moved here in nineteen fifties and went through the school system and we're residents of Waukau and as a dollar is fortunate to purchase a property on Juniper Circle, which is next to Peach Street and I always regarded Peach Street as one of the most beautiful streets in town. I just don't, the planning board is committed to preservation of the character. I therefore concern about the changes to thirty eight Peach Street in recent light of the buildings of fifty two and fifty four. And the loss of the scenic road vista was evident with the removal of vegetation and the modern look of the buildings. The planning board will require the proposed homes be consistent in design and character in the area. There should be protection of existing site features of the Peach Street's history and the surrounding neighborhoods. As a resident of Juniper Circle, the property front in a small pond that is on the water course from the Waukau Golf Course to Memorial Pond are concerned that attention be paid to the impediments that may occur to the water course. This has been a long time flooding and new construction overseen here must be overseen for the compliance with the water. I fully understand changes is inevitable, but I want to preserve what is made and make it desirable. So, and that is from Jay Ellen Barrett. Dawn Pizzo. Uh, Dawn Pizzo, she's one Peach Street and the bullet points that convey my family's feelings. One is Peach Street is a scenic road and designation is unique, gives a little characteristics. Two, the specific aesthetic elements are apparent when transiting Peach Street, our older house stock rural feel. And it seems to be the same as the one before about the Pan Mass Challenge. It is the most recent development. Matter of fact, it is almost the same. What she talked about is from the roadside of the previous two houses, it doesn't look very good. Uh, yes, it is the same one that was submitted before, because it goes on to say you talk about how much money they make and so on. So that is, it's the same one, so. There's no sense of reading it twice. Uh... What's this? We got something that went to the town clerk, but I guess it came to us. The proposed development was now thirty eight Peach Street, much ends the reason of a scenic road designation of Peach Street. And in the bylaws, having said that, there are a couple of requirements one should maintain. One should maintain the existing wall and stone fence. And the second would be provide access to development through an existing entry from Peach Street to put development with a new construction adjacent to lot fifty four rather than complete new road. Okay, this is from Joe Tabell. And I know he lives on Peach Street, one hundred and eleven Peach Street. And Christine Cochran, your last one. Okay. So those are all the comments from everyone that has sent in. And except for, so we got the Board of Health, don't expect it in Conservation. I never did see the Conservation's one. Do we have one, Kate? All I have is this.
That's all I have.
Okay. And you're in front of Conservation's, what you said?
Yeah.
Okay. And when's your next hearing?
July.
Okay. And you'll be making changes, what you're saying? Okay. The only last one that's not been said is, let me just check. Kyle.
Mister Chairman, Carl Waldorf, Town Engineer, for the benefit of the audience. The Assistant Town Engineer, Chris Johnson, and myself reviewed the plans and materials, issued a letter to the board dated May fourth. That letter has about thirty comments, so on the front page, we make two general comments. One is that we want to see a site distance outlined on the plans so that we can verify that the cars exiting the new street would be able to properly see and cars would be able to see them. The second is reminding the board that Peach Street is a scenic road, which evidently everybody else has also commented on from the sound of the letters. But anyway, we note that there's an existing wall and fence along the front of the property and that's clearly within the purview of the scenic road, at least by my, my estimation that it is. The remainder of the comments deal with various details, labeling, conformance, things like that. We do have a little bit of a drainage comment on there, but I want to, about off-site drainage areas. I do want to just say that the, the design from a drainage and a public road construction viewpoint is solid. The soils are good, a legacy's done a good job on it and the comments here will be fairly easy for them to address. So that's a paraphrase of what our comments are. Mister Chair, if there are any questions from the members of the board, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, before I let you off the hook, to ask for two waivers that affect you, the design of the slope basin and also the stone line, could you?
We, we have no issue with granting those waivers, we're in favor of them.
Okay, what is the plus and what is the doubt and what is the minus?
As, as Mister American noted, the basins now are designed to be flat so that water infiltrates evenly. All the regulations wanted to try and channel the water through the basins to the low flow outlet in the structure. I'm not quite sure what the older logic was. I think it was to move the water out of the basins. Today's designs want to spread them out evenly so we get the infiltration. So I'm, I'm in favor of, of the current design and that's in line with state standards. So I have no issues with the waivers, Mister Chairman.
Okay, so to sum it up, Kyle, is what we have in our standards, which have been around for a while, they keep getting updated? And we're a little behind?
Yes.
Alright.
Mister Chairman.
Yep.
I tackled two topics here before you move on to board comments.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Let me just talk to you about the scenic road. So Peach Street is a scenic road. So as a scenic road, basically the town regulates two things, public street trees, which there are none that will be impacted by the proposed work, and walls that fall within the right of way. The fence is not in the right of way. A, a, a small portion of the wall is in the right of way. So what we're proposing to do here is though, and the wall is not a field stone wall, it's a granite slab wall. So it's these long pieces of one foot thick, right around one foot thick granite slabs. And they're, they're in the site as well as along the street. But what we're proposing to do is at the street openings, we would reconfigure those slabs, come around with one rounding. And then in this section where there is no stone wall, we would build the same wall using the materials we have on site in this location on this side. So then you have that kind of continuous granite wall across the entire front of the development. Whereas now it's only across maybe three quarters of the front of the development. The second question was a comment made by the Board of Health and I figured I'd ask you while it was fresh in our minds. They suggested three streetlights. With a three hundred twenty-five foot long road, we have a streetlight proposed at the intersection at the end of the cul-de-sac. Is, is the board, does the board want an additional streetlight in the middle? To me, it doesn't seem necessary, but...
Three hundred, John. You're asking the wrong guy. All he has is climate change, but someone wants to add a streetlight.
I don't think it's necessary, but the board brought it up, so.
No, I understand they did. My suggestion is, since they brought it up, might as well clear it up with them and just show them a little light plan, what's going to happen if they, where would you, you put one at the front.
There's one here and there's one here, so if we put one in the middle, it will be there.
What's the standard for the town?
Three hundred feet.
Every three hundred feet, so it's consistent with that.
Well, my suggestion, I don't think any of us, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I don't think it's, you care, but you might want to get that off your list from the Board of Health.
Can I back up to what you commented on before? So am I correct or incorrect in saying that the fence is on top of those granite slabs? And the fence is going to disappear, so it'll just be granite slabs?
No, the fence won't disappear.
But when you rebuild it, will you put fence on top of the granite?
We can do that.
Just so it's consistent?
Yes. Sure.
So it looks the same as what's there now?
Okay. Alright. Also, those two, Dan, and I'll, I'll start at this end. John?
I'm sorry, to me? Okay. I think you've answered some of the points I had in mind. The, all the storm flow is being contained on site and that includes like a hundred year storm or whatever.
There's no discharge from the front basin. There's a small discharge from this basin towards that isolated one.
Towards the isolated one.
Reducing peak rates and volumes that runoff in every design storm.
Okay. So if you get a heavy rain and the water's flowing down the street, the basins that are at the lower part of the street are sufficient to catch it without it flowing out onto Peach Street?
Yes, and Carl's asked us to put a double grate on those catch basins, so we're going to do that just as added insurance.
That increases the amount of water that can flow in at one time?
Correct.
You've mentioned that you're inclu- increasing the fence along the bor- border, so that's going to have a barrier between the street and that first catch basin, so kids walking by won't be tempted to fall into the basin or anything like that. The fence will prevent that.
It's not a deep basin, but yeah, it'll, there'll be a wall there.
Okay. I noticed based on the plan that the road comes out almost exactly opposite the driveway across Peach Street. Is there a possibility of putting in an island or something at the end of that street just to, so that a car exiting the new street is going to be favored off to the right hand side? So it's not going to shine the lights right towards the house? Is that a capable, something that's possible?
It's not something that's allowed in your regulations.
Could the lining on the road be set up in such a way to do something like that?
What do you mean?
Well, like, instead of having like one center line down the middle of the street, could it be fork at the end so that you have one going right and left kind of, no?
No.
Not without a wider entrance.
Right.
Okay. So the road is set up now to be a normal forty-six foot road with whatever the cap, the normal situation is with, uh, barriers or sidewalks.
Yeah, required, paved with grassed up sidewalks, yep.
And there's sidewalk on one side and around the circle, is that right?
Yep, bring it in here, come around the cul-de-sac and wait and with a crossing.
A little crossing, yeah, okay. I guess I have no more questions at this time.
Alright, Kate?
So I'm struggling with this one a lot because although I understand it's not within our purview, I, I also feel Peach Street's one of the most beautiful streets in town. I don't love the new houses that are there. And I think the most heartbreaking thing for me was when I read that they're knocking the house down. I think I could have accepted it more if the house was remaining because at least that character would have remained and would have been up right at the street and kept that feel when you go down the street. We can't control what those houses look like, but I do ask both of you to bring back to your client. Just from a conscience standpoint, it would be fantastic if he would try to keep the houses with the character of the street. I, I just think it's a special street in town. It's not, and I understand you can't mandate that, but I, I respectfully ask that because it's a beautiful street and this could really change things. And then having an old house myself, I sort of cringed when you said pieces. So can you just elaborate on that? So like, are they taking out like banisters and floorboards? Are, are, has it been considered to pick it up and move it? Has anyone?
Nobody has expressed any interest in picking up and moving it. The house has kind of fallen apart. But I don't know the specifics of what pieces are going to be taken out, but I'll get that information for the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I know we can't, it's, it's irrelevant sort of, but it's beyond our control. But it's just, I, I just, I hear all the residents. I, I agree with all their comments and I, I don't know, I, I, this one hurts a little bit. So I do ask, I really ask strongly that they consider what they build there. And I also ask the residents, and you can comment when you get up, but make sure what I requested with the granite slabs and the fence on top, that's something you think is a good idea because, just because I think it is, doesn't mean, you know, you're the ones that live there.
Done?
That's all I have right now.
Phil?
I, I just want to second what Katie said that even though we don't have the mandate, the authority to, to change the, the streetscape, the look and feel, you know, it is, it is, you know, a very historic street. So anything that could be done by the developers to maybe work with the neighbors to see if any adjustments could be made. And again, this is not something we're mandating, just asking for the, for consideration of that. I know one of the comments was the retention pool in the front. And I don't know whether that's, you know, you know, the design issues of why it's there. You know, is that even a possibility of moving?
No, it's at the bottom of the hill, you got to put retention.
Yeah, so.
So, and, but it will be screened by the wall and the fence.
So that's, that's good. But, but that's, I would, you know, would strongly state too in, in working, you know, see maybe working with the neighbors and, and reading the comments and seeing if any, any, any changes could be made to, to try to keep the, the streetscape a little bit more like it is. As far as the, the house, I mean, that is, it's unfortunate that, that's going to be torn down. I, I know we talked about it during the preliminary hearing and, and now we're, you know, the year is almost up, so. So that's, that's going to be probably the way it is. The, there was some comments about, so all the, all the water will be handled around the property as far as runoff? Is that, I, I couldn't hear everything John was asking, so if I ask something he already did, please excuse me.
Yeah, we, we have the storm water basin out front handled all the runoff that comes into it. Hundred year storm included, using the newest design storms. And then these two basins work in tandem, there's a pipe connecting them. And they infiltrate most of the runoff. There's a small discharge, like a three inch pipe during certain design storms. But overall, when we look at the total drainage analysis, we're reducing the peak rate and the volume of runoff to our surrounding properties in every design storm, as is required by your regulations.
And I, and I know when you first presented the plan, you were going to do the, the private way, but that, I think then you came back and said you, you changed your mind and you, you did the, the new, the new street.
Well, I was initial thought about modifying Morrissey Way to provide access to this property, but that, we didn't get a favorable reaction from the board on that, so we abandoned that tactic and, and went this way.
Yeah, okay. And yeah, as far as the street light, you know, I would second what Jack said.
I'll talk to the Board of Health. I'll explain to them what the town standard is and we'll see what they say.
And I, I did get a chance to go through the plan again, but I think there was a couple of little things of adding, you know, making sure the street width is there and so forth. But I had one question on, on chart. Sheet four?
Okay.
So, so when it says temp, on the, on the cul-de-sac at the end there, it says temporary one point five. I'll take my glasses off after to read that.
It's the layout sheet?
Yeah, on the very end there, slope, slope easement, temporary.
Temporary fifteen foot slope easement?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So what is that? I just wanted to clarify.
Well, when you construct the road.
Yeah.
You need to do work outside the layout of the road. You need to grade off into adjacent properties. So what we do, because the final completion of the road work could occur after lots have been sold to people, we retain a temporary slope easement all around the road so that when we need to finish it, before it's accepted as a public road, we can do so, we have the right to do so. And then those temporary easements expire when the road is accepted as a town road.
Okay, so that's one and a half foot easement there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think that's all I have, but thank you.
So?
Do you know when the scenic road hearing will be, or are you?
I haven't applied for that yet. I wanted to kind of get through this, the beginning of this first so we could refine the plan. So I will be applying for that shortly.
Okay. Is there a reason you didn't want to do it concurrently?
I do, but you know, the scenic road hearing is usually a, a one hearing event. I figured I would start the process. I do, but you know, the scenic road hearing is usually a, a one hearing event, I figured I would start the process going here
Uh-huh.
and get comments and get the, the plan kind of nailed down to finalize before I file it so that it would come later on in the process, but it will be concurrent with this.
Okay, it just seems like a lot of the comments are related to that, so.
Again, the scenic road issues are pretty straightforward, it's walls and trees, there are no trees, so it's really just the wall.
Okay.
The only question, and we're gonna, we're gonna salvage pieces of wall from the property and we're gonna add wall to the street frontage.
Okay, um, and have you shown the location of those walls and fence on the plans that we have?
Yeah, on the existing conditions.
On the existing?
When I, when I prepare the, the scenic road application, I'll have a, a separate little sub detail. So you can see here, these, these are interior property.
Okay.
So these are all those granite slab walls here and here, they run up outside of the driveway and then from this corner of the driveway runs almost all the way across the frontage, not quite all the way, because there's a little whole park over there, um, but there's nothing for it here.
Okay, and so when it says the, the stone wall, it's those granite slabs with fence on top? The, the whole, the whole length of that entire, what you did?
Up and down the existing driveway along the street is all granite slab wall. There's some stone wall behind the existing house, but it's, that's different, um, but yeah, up and down the existing driveway and along the street frontage is these long slabs of granite with a fence on top of it.
Okay, but for the entire length, okay, and you're amenable to, to doing that same thing when you, when you add the wall?
Correct.
The other frontage, okay, um, um, okay, and you mentioned the road name and you mentioned street light. So have, you have shown on the plan the two street lights you're proposing, correct?
Yeah, on the profile sheet and the plan view.
Okay.
So they are, it's the profile sheet, so we have one right here, and then we have another one right here.
Okay, okay, and have you shown, um, street cheese, street trees?
Yes.
Okay.
They are also on the plan view of the profile sheet.
Of the plan view, okay, um. Okay, and do you have the date that, uh, the building demolition can proceed?
August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, I think it was the twenty-seventh, some day in August in twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Yep, it was twenty seventh.
Two months from now.
And you had mentioned that next meeting you'll let us know which parts of the, the house you're proposing.
Yeah, well, they're, the applicant's working with the historical commission, so if, uh, if, if the applicant reaches consensus with the historical commission, they can allow demolition to proceed sooner than that, but that's when the delay under the bylaw would expire.
Okay.
Regardless, Sarah, we'll get you information.
Okay, okay, good, thank you, um, okay, well, my, my final comment is just, I'd, I'd like to, you know, just do the scenic road as, sooner rather than later.
Sure.
Because I think it's, it makes sense to do it all together.
Yep.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, um, my turn, the granite wall right now, are we fifty fifty or is it seventy-five, twenty-five or?
It's ninety-five, five, about an inch of the wall is in the layout.
And where's it gonna go when it's over?
What do you mean?
You're gonna put it within an inch?
I would align it the same way, I cer- I don't have any problem putting it further into the street layer if that's what the town wants, but I would align it the same way as it is currently.
Okay, that, that's fine, 'cause if you put it inside, then it's theirs, they could do what they want with it.
Right. Yeah, so we can do a little detail on that.
Take the five.
Yeah, I'll give you the five.
Okay.
Put a detail together for that.
All right, now, um, the, the developer here, IDZ Associates, he's not the same one that did the other houses, correct?
I don't know, I wasn't involved in that.
Okay, but this is the Zoppo company out of Stoughton?
Yeah.
So it's a different entity, correct? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
As far as I know, yes.
Well, I already looked it up, uh, it's the Zoppo company, which, which is fine, it's not the same builder, I think the last one was Adams, I believe is the name.
Yeah.
And I think they still live there or whatever, um, Dan, you mentioned about not wanting to get into the private road because what you, what I conveyed once upon a time was you're going off a private to a private and that wasn't gonna work.
Are you talking about Morrissey?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, was it, but that's, that's fine, but what you proposed here is a whole different than, so my question is, uh, I wanna say it's horse trading, but, you know, I, I can sit here and, and reaffirm what everybody says, it's a great street. I hate to see it get, you know, let's come in and, uh, put up, uh, glass houses, right? So, that being said, would the developer be amenable to cutting the street back to a private way, which would decrease all the drainage problems, which would decrease the asphalt layout, decrease the intensity of it in return for guaranteeing that they will build colonial type houses, keeping in contact with the rest of Peach Street? Now, before you speak, Phil.
Okay.
All right, this is a waiver.
I'm well aware of that.
Okay, so we can play a lot of games with waivers.
Yeah.
So if you say this, that would be, I, I'm throwing that one out and I'm throwing out to everybody here, um, just so you understand they're within their rights, but we also wanna preserve it to make it, to stay the way it is. So if you cut down the road, you cut down your costs, you also cut down the sheer size and everything goes along with it, um, is that?
I think it's on the table. No, I can't talk to him right now, but I can say that I have an answer for you next meeting.
Okay, so, is, for everybody to understand here, it's a little bit of horse trading that is the fact that he's within his rights to build it out. The typical forty-six foot layout, twenty-six foot road and sidewalks and the big cul-de-sac. What can happen is you can make it look more like a driveway similar to the one next door, but in, in allowing to do that, we were conditioned, which is a little bit, normally we can't touch the houses, but if we offer a waiver, they agree, I believe it can be upheld, that they will look in like Phil Wild's old house, make it blend with the neighborhood. Uh, I'm throwing that out and he's, Mr. Mackey will take it back to his, um, client to see, and he said it is on the table. Uh, I, if I was building that, that's exactly what I'd be putting up because that's what you want and I think that's a better seller. But, uh, I just wanna explain that to everybody, so that is something that, that can occur. I do like the fact that they've come around keeping the granite wall there, so it would really, and you're only talking about serving three houses if you think about it, 'cause two of them are on, right on Peach Street, so you really serve since the three in the back. So I just wanted to throw that out and it seems like the, uh, developers representatives will take it back and it seems like something can happen, so I wanna explain to everybody so that we don't have, uh, now look at you, Kevin, an architectural marvel that doesn't blend with the neighborhood.
Who would be in charge of design review on, on that sort of question?
It would, well, it would be written in that has to be a colonial type.
And who would be the, who would ascertain?
We would just probably in the decisions, reference something.
Any, like a sort of wood number or something being involved with, uh?
As far as enforcement, I think he's asking.
No, it ha- we would have to put it into decision so it's an effect, you can't do it afterwards, too late, so we'd reference something and however that done. I know you're an architect naturally, 'cause it did work for me, but if there's something that can be framed, also, we haven't heard if they're amenable to this is what they may want. Now, they could come in, very simple, and say, um, this house is gonna look like this, this is like this, this is like this, this is like this, okay. All right, this is what, we could do that at this decision with the trading of the waiver, do you agree to that, Phil?
Correct, yes.
So we'd all know ahead of time what they're gonna look like. I think that's what everybody's kinda wants to keep Peach Street like, you can't stop, as one person said here, um, moving on, but at least you can keep it the way you like it to look, so I think that's a, so that's something you guys can do too, correct?
Yeah, I would propose, again, I haven't talked to my clients, so I can't promise anything other than we will have a part to part after this. Um, we would do, I'm sorry, I'm out of practice.
Phil Mackey, Mackey and Mackey, twelve fifty-six Washington Street, Northern Massachusetts Council for non-bi-activ applicants. Old habits will come back soon. Um, basically, Mr. Chairman, what could happen is either we could write into the decision or we could come up with a declaration of covenants and restrictions, which we've done in other cases, um, and to Mr. Uniac's point, define, generally speaking, and we're not gonna get into trim width and colors, but, you know, generally speaking, this is a colonial house with traditional shingling and siding versus, uh, new, modern, industrial, uh, which is clearly not in the place, uh, in place in the neighborhood. Um, so again, I, I can't commit to that, but, uh, as you've said, once, once waivers actually do enter into the program, um, we, we could put a lot more in the decision that's legally upholdable and enforceable.
Okay, thank you.
And we could have all of that laid out prior to the approval.
Okay, um, my suggestion, you know, I know the people are gonna speak and naturally gonna let you speak, but my suggestion would be if your client's amenable to this, which I hope he is, 'cause I think maybe that's what you build there anyway. I don't believe it's gonna cost them any more than a conventional house or whatever you wanna call it, unless it's, as that you might have a onsite meeting to kinda show a few pictures, so the residents know what's happening.
Sure.
Before, you know, as we finalize it, 'cause that way, people may, like, if you ask me right now, I'd tell you, do it like Phil's, white with black roof. And make it look quality.
Partially white with black roofs, as we all know.
Yes, and if you wanna give it a flavor like it's kinda falling down, that's even better. 'Cause we wanna keep it historic, all right, so that's my suggestion, and I ask you, it sounds like maybe a client may go for it, he may be already ready to do it, but either way, as I said, wanna keep it our last gasp effort along Peach Street, okay? So, all right, and with that being said, I'll open it up, uh, one at a time.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, could I ask just one more question?
Yep.
Um, is it possible to add a detail showing the, the, uh, stone wall and fence, Mr. American?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Well, he's gonna have to show one for the new one, if he just says move the other one, he doesn't necessarily have to.
It's, it's one of the same, so we'll.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll add a detail.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so.
That's it?
Yeah, pretend you're at home, just sit, sit. Okay.
Now I'm gonna say.
You gotta stay a long time, uh, okay, anyone who wants to come up, I ask you to come up, one at a time, the, the microphone so that, and say your name and address, this will be for the TV, so, who wants to go first? That's why you're in the front row, huh?
I have Uniac, uh, resident one hundred and Peach Street. Uh, I know a lot of people, uh, have talked to me about this and I'm just gonna sort of go through some basic stuff and, um, some residents get back to all the pieces that are missed or people that, pieces that are more important to them. Uh, the plan that Mr. American produced, it is perfect, I mean, it was lovely and it was on West Street, you know, we could just run away and do it tomorrow, but it's not, it's on Peach Street. Some of the items that have been addressed tonight, uh, from the chairman besides the road, uh, and, uh, previously, uh, there are requirements for the, uh, the fence that's there, uh, these are all good things in sort of bringing the scale back. And I don't necessarily wanna go outs- too far outside of the scope of what's here tonight, but remember that we've already got a curb cut at Juniper and you've also got that other curb cut at the private way next door, um, precedent of what not to do mostly, there's nothing there showing you something you wanna replicate. Uh, but in no particular order, um, the wetlands and drainage design, while interesting and meets all requirements, realize that you're moving the water over here to the, um, uh, the, the temporary wetland that's over there. Uh, and some of the residents that live over there will tell you the ground actually rises when it rains, so there's, there's quite a lot of hydrology going on outside of this site, as Carl had mentioned earlier, that, and it's also mentioned in the COMCOM letter, that, uh, has to be addressed, uh, or at least looked at. Um, you've got one of the letters that's in the, uh, uh, the packet, talks about how the sump pump runs more often after this development was put together, never mind what's going on over here, there's quite a bit of subsurface water that's being disturbed, uh, and impervious area being added that's, you know, somehow not being addressed. Uh, as Ben mentioned earlier, uh, the retention area is the low point of the site, uh, because naturally that's where you wanna catch it, but it's also on the street. Um, you might not know at first, at first look, but as you're walking down the street, riding down the street, the part of what makes Peach Street Peach Street is not just the walls and the foliage, it's the distance of the, um, structures to the road. It's, uh, it's a historical proportion and, you know, putting big bombing houses set back off the road is an absolutely different aesthetic. And as somebody mentioned earlier, you know, you really want to get, have those, uh, houses, even if they're larger, as close to the road as possible. I mean, if you see my house, uh, you say, oh, it's a lovely little old house, what, four thousand square foot house, you just have to design it right and it'll look small. And, uh, you know, done right, that works right, you just can't pick a plan of a, a book and go for it, it's gotta be done, proportions and everything appropriately. Yeah, also in no particular order, there's a question of whether it's the same developer, well, the developer and the money is coming from a different location, but the builder is the same, I believe, and certainly I'm not sure any designers were, um, I'm not sure who designed the previous stuff, but I think it probably just came out of a book. Uh, if we're going to do some sort of, um, historical covenant or just general colonial revival or whatever the, um, the, the word might be, uh, we're not gonna get down to trim, we're not gonna get down to color, but just general proportions, and if somebody wants to pick something out of a book and say, something like this, then, you know, that might be a start, so you don't have to go through a whole, get a whole new designer and, um, just for that meaning, go through a set of drawings. Uh, that would at least be a starting point for that discussion. To go beyond, and I realize that this is a, a little bit beyond, um, anything we can sort of even horse trade, is, is there a way to come off the, uh, the existing private road that was built in the last, um, the last project? And feed in here as opposed to having the two curb cuts here with the, uh, drainage riprap hole between them? Uh, you know, the idea is you're just, you're just cutting different holes in, in the streetscape and you're gonna do a lot of work to get into it. I mean, they've, they've totally abandoned any chance of in, in the previous curb cut, I mean, there's nothing there, it's, it's not maintained, it's, it's not been, none of the promises or rainbows and unicorn's that we heard at the last meeting for the, for this development ever occurred here. Uh, but we're hearing that we're gonna have this lovely granite wall, it's gonna be a radius granite wall, it's gonna be a replication of the existing wall, it's not gonna have fiberglass, it's not gonna have PVC on the top, it's gonna have a, um, you know, the, the same detail that's right there. Mr. American, excellent engineer, not a landscape architect, you know, these details, to your comment, really need to be provided, how that's gonna be done, and part of it's gonna be private, private's gonna be public, you know, how it's gonna be maintained. The location where it is works now because there's adequate space for the town to dump snow there, uh, and it doesn't damage the, uh, the detail. I mean, it, it's the detail that's there, uh, it's a fifty year detail, all you have to do is maintain it a little bit, um, so you really don't have to get in any of the plastics or any of that other stuff to sort of make it more robust. One of the things I'd also recommend, if you're bothered, bothering to do the detail and bring it over here, well, just give it another, it's a twelve or fifteen feet because they already tore the rear end out of the street over here and they really need to sort of update what's going on over here. They found a couple boulders and they laid them out over here, um, and that was not the discussion at the last planning meeting for this project. They said no, they said no curb, they said no light, and that was a great idea, but as far as planting or anything else, as long as you got a just gray riprap running over here and an unmaintained place with, uh, with nothing like what was discussed, uh, I probably just wasn't memorialized in writing or whatever during the last, uh, presentation, but, you know, the type of detail you're talking about here is gonna stick out like a sore thumb compared to the, um, abandonment of this area over here. I think it should be included in some of the discussions and some of the approvals for this project. Uh, it's also been discussed that the town only, of course, if the sea road, it's just trees, it's just stone walls, that's your purview, and a lot of this is off of town land right here, but it's the tree boughs, it's everything else that's on the private property that affects the streetscape, uh, that needs to be maintained, just 'cause the trunk is not there, you clear cut this site, as they did over here, and turn it into a, a temporary mud field, you know, there's, you, you've lost all that stuff, there's a lot of evergreens right up here, a lot of stuff you probably just wanna maintain for privacy anyway, uh, and I'd like to see those specifically identified, uh, in a planting plan. I mean, right now, we've got, um, you know, you've got trees and, and the plan views on these sheets, but, uh, it's not talking about specific trees that are being left and the plant and the new- And the plant and the new trees are not necessarily being specifically located, their species and so forth. I mean, that's gonna be very important here, less so up here. Oh, and uh the comments the American made about the additional street light, I'm pretty sure I can speak for everybody in the street. Less street lights, the better. You know, we're not looking to, you know, turn this into a nightclub. Uh, so it's quiet, as, as dark as it could be over here would be great as long as it's safe. Uh, and I, I guess in closing, preserving and maintaining the streetscape as a condition of approval uh and including detailed design aspects for that in both plan and section. Uh, and that includes mature plantings being kept and mature planting being added. That'd be very important to, to see as part of the uh, whether it's the uh the, the meetings they're gonna go through with the uh scenic people or the next time they come to the planning board.
Okay, uh, I'll address a couple of them. One of them is, I believe, that the existing Morrissey is not part of this, correct?
Correct, correct.
Alright, you also, you're asking to connect two, three new houses to something that I don't think you'd ever be able to do from a safety viewpoint, but this is up to the applicant. Uh, one, the other thing is, is uh, you know, they don't maintain it. Well, it's theirs to maintain. It's just like anybody else's property at the end. I understand it, you know, I think it looks like crap. Because I, I, if you go by my house, I'm out there making sure it's done right. I hate the look of it, but there's nothing you can do. But even worse, Kevin, if this is a full road, you get the town to take care of that whole thing. There you go. It'll be dirt after the first year of growth, because nothing ever, they don't maintain it. So that's even worse sometimes, I think. Uh, as far as planting plans, they're not required under subdivision control. We only deal with the road itself. So planting plans typically come when we do the site plan within the site. They have to show stuff when they do the scenic road, what they're doing on the town property, but inside, it's up to them to whatever they wanna do.
Yeah, I just, I went back and looked at the meeting minutes from the, the last proposal and I was even misquoted and drove me crazy. So I just wanted to make sure that I got it through this time. I mean, head bobbed up and down, I remember the whole thing. Every, every was kumbaya moment when we talked about what that, those curb cuts are gonna be. And uh, I kept waiting, I kept waiting. I was like, oh, I'll probably get to it. Well, last thing you probably did, last thing you probably did. Well, I'm still waiting for them to make it look like we talked about.
Okay, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Jen Karnakis. I live at sixteen Rainbow Pond Drive, but I'm actually here because I'm the chair of the Historical Commission. Just wanted to clarify one thing, then make it clear that the hold on the demolition remains in place. It's not actively before the Historical Commission. Mister Adams initially inquired on May twenty seventh about the possibility of an organized demolition and I told him to come back to the Historical Commission when there was a plan that was approved by the building inspector to make sure that we can maintain structural integrity while portions of the building or barn might be taken down, um but it's not yet actively before the Walpole Historical Commission.
So, wait, don't leave. So what does that mean as far as the demolition date or the hold that you have on it?
The hold remains in place until, if and when we decide we're going to release it, we will send another decision out and copy you all as well. So until now, it's still in place until August twenty seven, twenty twenty one.
August, okay. But then, what happens on that date? We don't know yet.
Oh, at, at, that, then it's no longer our purview and we have no, there's no hold anymore, so that, that building inspector can issue a put down.
Okay, I think that's what they said, right? Or did they say something different?
I just wanted to say that they said that they were actually working with the Historical Commission on, on the organized demolition. We're not at that part yet right now, so I just wanted to make it clear that it's.
Yeah, well, actually, what you, my client mentioned to me that he was working with the building inspector about that controlled demolition plan. So maybe that must be what he referred to.
That's, I just wanted to make, I just, just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
Okay.
Before you go, is so everybody understands, this demolition thing doesn't really have any teeth. You wait a year, right? You can't say you're gonna keep that. You agree?
Oh, you mean in terms of, no, so like, no, we, they can wait a year and a day and, and do whatever they want, right?
Boom. Okay. So I just want everybody to understand, there's, they can't come to you, what, and they say, why can't, why are they knocking it down? We only give them a year. That's all that's in our by.
That's our bylaw.
Yeah, that's the bylaw. So everybody understands, anything over a hundred years, right?
At, at least a hundred, or it could be architect, architecturally significant. There's a whole, there's a few things, but we automatically will look at any property that is at least a hundred years old.
And architecturally significant? Is there anything in town? I just don't, I don't mean to delay you, but what would you consider?
So if it happened to be, you know, um, somebody who became a famous architect and they, it wasn't a hundred years old, but they had become sort of world renowned and were like, they were the new COVID C A or, or I M K. Um, I think if they, you know, whoever that person is in Walpole, we would wanna preserve the buildings they have here and they might not be a hundred.
Like a Frank Lord Wright type of deal?
Exactly.
Okay, alright, that's.
I live at the Royal Crest Condos, which I call the Swiss Michelles. I think they're architecturally significant and most people don't, so.
Right, Tom Flaherty did a great job. He just put that Irish in them and just landscaped out of them.
I'm gonna think of Coco every time I drive by.
Well, what's good about it is you go anywhere, you go to Nasher, you go down the South Shore, it looks like your home, doesn't it? You can see them everywhere. Cookie cutters. Use the same plan probably about a thousand times.
I'm sorry to get off topic, but I'm thrilled you're here, because in the four years I've been sitting here, we've had this happen twice. We've had two homes come up. So my question is, and maybe we should speak separately, but your hands are basically tied. Am I correct in saying unless a house is with the National Register, you only have that freeze control for a year?
Right, and, or if it happens to, that we, you know, if it was, say, a, a, a local historic district, that would have another layer, but for houses, we have the bylaws as we can only delay it for a year.
Do we have any homes in Walpole that are in the National Historic or anything that couldn't be? Like, um, the old police station, I would think.
Right, and, but, I'm like, you know, so there are certain things that I know we tried to do, but we just actually did on the register. Um, I'm not sure about the homes. So I should tell you, I've been the chair for about two years, but I've actually only been in the commission for about two years and six months, so I'm still learning a lot of everything that goes on. But, um, you know, one of the things we are trying to do as a commission is to be more proactive and not just wait. So we can, we can educate people who are in, um, all historic homes, that they know about the historic nature of their homes. Because a lot of times they don't know about it until it's been sold and once it's been sold, it's, it's hard for us to then get in and, and have any sort of restriction.
That's great, though, that you're doing that. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Um, next?
Thank you, committee. My name is Dana Sterns and I am a resident on Juniper Circle, which as you know is off of Peach Street. I've been a resident of that location since nineteen sixty seven. Um, born in the town of Walpole in nineteen sixty four. I actually knew Mister Wild quite well, having attended school with his youngest daughter, Kim. We graduated together from Walpole High School in nineteen eighty two. I had the fortunate ability to be able to do yard work for every single house on Peach Street growing up as a kid. I knew every neighbor, I knew every tree, because I raked all the leaves underneath them. I also knew a lot about rain and water and where it flows. So, before I continue, though, I just wanna ask a question to the two representatives receiving. Either one of you planning on living here? Sir?
I don't know, maybe.
Good answer, good answer.
Be a nice place to live.
Great place to live, right. Okay. Well, I just wanna say that history repeats itself. I think we can all agree with that. And we also know that the current construction from the owner of this property previously was not done to the same aesthetic as would have been otherwise expected on this scenic road, one of seven or ten such roads in this town. Okay? So we don't have any real proof that this owner is planning on respecting the ambiance, the historical, the rusticity, the context of this location. Another example that raises significant concern for me is that the proposed roadway for the residences exits onto Peach Street with a direct line of headlight fire into the living room of Peter Lausher's house. The Lausher parents are neighbors of mine on Peach Street, on, on Juniper Circle. Okay? So, to me, understanding that this isn't within regulation, it's an example of the lack of insight or respect for the neighborhood. Again, having grown up in this area, I know that the back end of this property is the high point. It abuts Edward Jones's property. The Jones's property that extends all the way up to Washington Street on High Plains. Historically, there is a natural water basin on the other side of this knoll that is Juniper Circle's lifeline. If it is affected in any way, the basements in all of Juniper Circle's property are at risk. This natural wetland, I believe, we, we've had it surveyed and is it a vernal pool? I'm not sure. Normally drains off into Rainbow Pond. And there's a natural waterway that has been created between Peach Street and the Bisson residence with a natural drain next to the Sandquist residence and onto Rainbow Pond, part of the Royal Crest condominiums. On the other end of this proposal, which I heard the representative say is not on our plan, is another wetland here. Okay? This wetland is again, a low point off of the knoll, which is the high point on the back end of these properties. Growing up, working at the old Johnson residence, which is now the Wallers, and the old Smith residence, which is the house next door, and the Matsumoro residence, which is on the corner, owned by you two, thank you for coming. This area is wet all the time. And that is with the normal natural flora that exists on this property. Multiple hundred-year-old trees, as well as margins with brush, et cetera. Now let's raise that, let's put up roofs and streets. We're gonna have drainage issues that can affect this wetland. And as it stands now, in my previous experience, any heavy rain, any snow melt, this thing overflowed and there was a natural gully between your residence and this last residence over here, where this stuff would collect. There is a small drain that crosses Peach Street and empties, what's the name of the house on the corner? Used to be the old Herb Lewis's house.
Don Pizzo.
What's that?
Don Pizzo.
Don Pizzo, and then the adjacent home, I can't remember the name of that couple, which drains down to Rainbow Pond. So we have this issue here, which with proposed Lot Four, which ends on the top of the knoll, unless it's designed to go in this direction, any water from proposed Lot Four is going to end up in this wetland. Now, I'm not a civil engineer. I don't understand much about water drainage, but I do have a lot of common sense. Okay? And this, I have a huge problem with, and I'll get to why in a second. But I have to turn my attention to these irrigation basins, which to me indicate some insight. Insight that this area is gonna have some water problems. So let's stick to some regulations and create a method of collecting that water. Okay? And so their solution is an industrial catch basin to collect this water on each of these proposed lots. Now, they're not sure if they're gonna live there, but what they're saying is that this is needing to be flat to collect a lot of water. That sounds quite enticing for somebody that's gonna be living on a lot and looking out at a water basin. I don't think you'd probably buy proposed Lot Two or One for that reason, right?
Uh, being an engineer, I probably would.
Okay. Want to explain why?
Because I've designed these in accordance with established standard practice, the rules and regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the town of Walpole. And this is how you do the stormwater developments in a, in a project like this.
Okay, so in a heavy rain, where we're gonna get a half to an inch of water in this whole site, the water's gonna drain into these areas. How long do you suspect that water is gonna sit stagnant in these catch bases?
In the stormwater bases?
Yeah.
Depends on the storm. Couple of hours?
Couple of hours?
Depends on the storm.
Okay. Alright, so, in my other life, I'm a physician. I'm an emergency physician at the Mass General Hospital, going on thirty years. I'm wearing this mask because I continue to take care of COVID patients. And I do this out of respect for everyone here in this room. Okay? I've also taken care of patients with West Nile and triple E. And let's be very, very clear, these are real threats. And it only takes several hours for mosquitoes to spawn. So the border health issue is a big thing for me, because I've seen it on the other end. So, you can follow the state regulations, and I respect that. And you and I can agree to disagree, but from a public health perspective, especially in the context, and let's make this very clear, none of us know who's gonna buy these properties. But perhaps some families will have children. And by the way, as we speak now, there are two young girls living across the street whose bedrooms are gonna receive streetlight and headlights from this proposal. Next door, there are other young children. And how many children do you have at the corner?
Yeah, two young kids.
And several more up the street. So this needs to be addressed aggressively. And finally, the location of this basin makes a lot of sense topographically, because I believe you said the low point is quote, "out front." And you also said that this basin needs to have double, whatever it was, to make it deep, okay? To catch it and flatten things out. So, that's a lovely thing in my mind, because you also mentioned that we don't have any issues with any tree problem or anything like that. So you've agreed to address a wall, right? You've agreed to do that, but it doesn't say anything about raising the trees. And so now, anybody driving down Peach Street past this location, based on the history of the previous project, is gonna have a lovely view of that. How rustic, how historic, how memorable. Perfect location on a scenic road, one of what, seven or ten?
Eight.
Eight in this town. Brilliant. Now this may be a fait accompli, and you guys are simply tolerating me, but it shows a real lack of respect for the neighborhood. It really does. Thank you for listening.
Okay, um, anybody, anyone else?
Can I go up?
Yeah. Name an address for the TV.
George Joseph, I live at two Peach Street, I'm the last house on the corner there. Um, and my concerns aren't so much the aesthetics and what this is going to look like, but more, I'm more concerned with, again, because my property is located, knowing of where it's, it's in place and I'm, two houses over from there and I'm not sure what the new geography is going to be, how high it's going to be, but I feel like, I, I, I sense that all the water from, or a lot of drainage from the new development will go toward my property. Right now, when it rains, there is a lot of water in my backyard when it rains, a lot of mosquitoes in my backyard when it rains. And I don't allow my kids to go in the backyard during the springtime and play because of mosquito issues. There's a lot of mosquitoes back there, so I, I, I think, I think having more water here. So I think, I think having more water here, collecting more water will be an issue. The other thing I'm concerned about is right now, from time to time, you will see deers outside in my backyard. And they are coming from this location here. Rabbits, deer. So what's gonna happen with the habitat with those things? Am I going to have more of them in my backyard? What's going to happen? Again, there is a stream right along the edge of the property, of my property. Stream of water, it stays there during the spring season. It doesn't go away. And I feel like it's going to be a recurring problem. It's gonna collect more water over time, and that's really what I'm concerned about. Again, not so much with the architecture. I'm not sure exactly what the architecture is going to look like. But I'm very concerned with what's going to happen with the water issue. So I oppose, I oppose this project.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, just for people's information, the drainage design, part of the process that we do is we calculate the amount of water that discharges off the property in different directions. So the water that discharges towards this wetland that's behind your home, we calculate that in the existing condition. And we design our drainage system so that in the fully built-out condition, no more water is going in that direction, or in the other direction for that matter. So there's all drainage design. There's a book about Yethic that details all those calculations that attest to that. So that's the fundamental purpose of the drainage design, is to ensure that we're not sending more water off the property than occurs presently.
Okay.
If I may ask, now, as far as the topography is, are you planning to raise those properties back there to the new one? Are you going to raise it?
Raise it higher?
Right. Then why is it there now?
Well, presently, this is all fairly flat.
Right.
And then there's still here. So the contours in this area are not gonna change dramatically. We're bringing the road up slowly. So we'll fill in behind the existing house, just to get that road to have a nice continuous pitch. And then they'll actually, they'll cut down the top of this hill a few feet for these homes. But there's not gonna be a lot of change of topography overall.
What is that, Kate? I've slowed the road gradually up.
Three percent and two percent. Very modest.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
My name is Anassa Assad-Joseph, and I live at Two Peach Street in Walpole. One of my questions, with the two new houses that were added in our backyard, we do get more deer and rabbits. And there's been numerous times where after picking up my kids, I have to stay in the car. You can't, the deer just staring right there in our driveway. Even two days ago, I mean, the kids think it's cute, you see the little rabbit, or they calling me, but it's still a safety issue. And we get more of that with the two new houses. Now you guys are adding more houses over there, and they're all wildlife over there. And like my husband said, our backyard has lots of mosquitoes. A lot of the time, because of the kids and they're so young, you know? And even this summer, you go, once it starts getting dark, the mosquitoes are out there. And even before it gets dark, the mosquitoes are out there. For us to do any type of yard work or anything like that, you have to wear a long sleeve constantly, spring and everything. So, and all these have increased more with the two new houses. Now you guys are adding more houses around that area, and it is wetland. And the water level is there. And the house across from us, they had to put a little fence, because I believe they also have three young children, because that water rises up. And the kids go and they think that, you know, you don't know how deep, it's a safety issue. So I don't know how that's gonna look for our property and for our children and our children's safety also.
Okay. Anyone else?
Kurt Sandquist, who I'm at eighty-eight Peach Street. And my wife and I have lived there just about twenty-nine years. I echo the same sentiments that every, all the other residents have expressed concerns around. What I do hope is that the owner will work with the residents around, as Kevin said, the devil's really in the details of this, right? So the aesthetics, specifically that drainage basin, how it's gonna look. It sounds like there's a lot more water concerns than I was even aware of. I mean, we have wetlands right in our backyards. We have a lot of mosquito issues as well. But driving by that house now and just envisioning what is gonna be there with just massive catch basins to handle that water and what it's gonna look like is concerning. And I'm concerned as a resident. And the other thing that hasn't been talked about is just Peach Street is a cut through for a lot of people, and there's a lot of traffic. People fly down that road. And adding more houses, more traffic, more congestion, you know, is not gonna service as well. So that has to go be considered and be part of the plan. It's really super important to the safety of the kids and the residents on that road. But I, you know, echo the same concerns.
Okay. Dan, so everybody understands that when you highlight them, they look like you get big, deep swimming pools. What's the elevation change from the top to the bottom?
They're about three feet deep.
So three feet, so you get, so it's no different if you add a hollow in your yard.
Yeah, they're not as deep as your desk.
But they're expanded over, so typically those will be grassed in and mowed, correct?
They'll be grassed on the slopes, and on the bottom, we're gonna do crush stone.
All right, so we're not talking anything of any substance like a swimming pool or anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Could you maybe provide a picture of something similar that we could show to the residents at the next meeting? Like just an example?
Okay.
Dan, will the fence and wall be in that area too?
Yes. We're gonna add it there. There's no fence and wall there presently, we're gonna add it there.
Will that help shield it from the road so it's not invisible?
Yes.
Not at the tower height, disagree?
No.
No. It's also, that's an arable, great thing to look at as you walk by with your kids, seeing crushed stone.
Okay.
Still doesn't answer my question about the time that with kinds of water runoff that we're talking about in winter time, early spring, heavy rains in the late summer, how long that stuff is gonna sit there? And again, then you've got seven. So crushed stone will get replaced by peat, because of pine needles and leaves. And then the next thing you know, you've got a swamp.
Crushed stone is a request of the conservation agent.
Okay, I don't know if you heard that, but that's for the conservation. And if you guys have any questions regarding design, that stormwater management, we don't do. Conservation does, and they'll be in front of conservation. So whatever you think might be better, let them explain it. We don't, we don't have any jurisdiction over what goes on the bottom of a, if the conservation's doing it through stormwater management.
Personally, I just think it just shows a lack of insight. Just really does. It's not, it's, you know, looking at a big swimming pool-sized bunch of crushed rock outside your dining room window, that's broken.
I would suggest you guys go talk to the, we didn't set that, just so you understand. It was done by the conservation. So let them explain to you what would be better, or so on and so forth. Because that's not our calls. This is all to do with stormwater management and drainage. Anybody else wanna come up? Ma'am?
My name is Lisa Marie Starnes, and I live at Seven Juniper Circle. My question is, when will the scenic hearing be and will the neighborhood be informed?
Okay, the scenic, when they file it, and within a certain amount of time. Neighbors, Kate, who gets it?
It's like, so.
Three on the seat?
Yeah, there's an rebuttal notification for it.
What I will tell you, what we did on the other one up in North Street, where the daycare is, we ran that concurrently, so that you're here for both. Because we're not gonna, I'm not gonna schedule something that we do with scenic today, and then if there's issues, you can do them all at once. So it's one-stop shopping for both at the same time. Makes it better for everybody.
Thank you. And I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your suggestion of asking for the changes to keep the design of this development in compliance with the street. I think it's important. My question is, how do we, how do we know? What assurances do we have that they will do it?
Well, the insurance, assurances are, we can't, they could build it just like this. We enforce the rules. If they conform the rules, there's nothing we can do. If they want a waiver or something, it's called, let's make a deal. And that's why I offered this up, because if they don't do it, then they'd have to come back and do a full build-out, which would cost them a lot of money. It's beneficial to them to do this at the start. And that's why what we want on the decision is what it's supposed to look like, what everybody's agreed to. So that when they do go down and they sell it to an individual builder or homeowner, this is what you gotta conform to. It's in the decision, because you got granted that waiver. And that's enforceable. If they don't do it, they don't get the permit.
And is that contingent upon them having a meeting with the neighbors and showing us photos of things like you asked for?
It's not contingent. My recommendation is that they get from you people what you're looking for versus what they may think. And sometimes they find out it's, you guys got something better, or they may be looking at something way beyond that's more money to them, and you guys may not be as much. Makes more sense rather than everybody beating each other up. It's just to look at it ahead of time to say, you know, what we want. And I think I read Christine Cartridge think, I couldn't think of Georgian's, Georgian's style is what Phil's whole house was.
Greek revival.
Oh, Greek revival, yeah, not true.
So that brings me to my next point. I'm wondering if the developer would consider naming the street after Jeremiah Allen as a nod to the historical significance. I mean, I think it is a sin that this town has no control over its historical properties.
So the only problem is with the nine-one-one rules, it might be an issue? Because I think we already have an Allen Road or an Allen Street.
Or Allen Way.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't wanna do it, because many years ago, they had a problem, Goold and Goold. One over here in Fisher, and one in East Walpole, and the fire truck went the wrong place.
But I wonder if there might be another way to, because there was another, there was something in Christine's report about, I mean, he's the man who built the house, but the man who lived there was named something else. Just as a, to give the property some nod to the historical significance.
Captain.
And the.
Charles.
Some. Captain Hockness.
I, I don't care, as long as, you know, they can suggest anything, as long as it goes over, well, now, there and down police, as long as they agree that something that, you know, will come across E nine-one-one correctly. I don't think anybody has objection. Mr. Mackey?
We'll ask.
What?
We'll ask.
Okay.
It's, like you said, right now, it's nothing. We can put a sign up that says anything, if the fire department says okay.
So they're not in love with any name, other than they get approved from the fire department, so. Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. As I say, it's a wrap. We meet July, and then we meet August. So you got a big hump to get over the next couple of weeks or the next month. And I don't wanna come back here, just, we're almost there, so. I'm not gonna say like the song, "See you in September," but how's August? Well, you can't knock the house down anyway, so. I mean, we could continue tomorrow, but until August twenty-eighth, that thing can't go boom. Yeah, I just wanna, I'll get your sign.
What date in August?
Nineteenth.
Is that the date, Kate? August nineteenth?
Maybe extension, John.
Yeah, okay.
I think we'd rather be on your July meeting.
Well, yeah, I, Dan, it's, I've gone through this, everybody wants, I got another one behind me, everybody wants that, but... I can make a deal right now. If everything isn't ready, we stop right there. How's that? That's, because I'm not gonna waste time to do it. Now, you gotta go talk to the developer, meet with the people, go to Concom, dah 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 dah. When's the conservation meeting?
July before your meeting.
So you wouldn't even have the plans back in time? So if the plans change, you're never gonna make it.
All right, we'll go to August.
I knew you'd agree.
You didn't give me much choice.
I didn't have to give you any.
So I guess we would request and grant an extension on a time which the board can act, up to and including August thirtieth.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, sorry.
Okay.
Do you want a letter, Kate?
What?
Yes. I'll make that into formal motion. Okay? Grant up through August thirty-first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstaining. Two seconds, John. Okay, August thirty-first. And so you're gonna talk to your clients, and if you come up in the meantime, and I'm gonna get you in the back in a second. Hate to say this, who's the point person for this whole deal? Not from you guys, but from you to look at the houses, what they consider. Nobody's volunteering, huh?
Christine and I, Christine and I can do that.
Why don't you just ask the name?
No, it's not our committee, it's you guys. Yeah, but I need, they need someone to call.
Yeah.
You volunteering?
Why not?
Okay. You name an address for them, and they email or whatever. You don't have to do it on TV, you can give it to them after. All it is, is so that when they wanna present it.
Kevin, I'm sorry, I think Kevin's here. He's an architect, he's an architect.
Well, I'm the only one. You're the only one I have a phone number for.
And I know where you live, though. So, all right, so.
Chairman, do you wanna set a time?
For what?
For the hearing.
Yes, I'm sorry. Seven fifteen, Dan? Okay. Now, before I continue, you got a question?
Basically, all right, well, I live on seven fifty-five Washington Street. I actually own a barn that's originally a part of Peach Street's, I'm sorry. I forgot your actual address. One sixty-six. I'm actually the person that's in talks with the contractor to repurpose the actual lumber to go back to the barn. That's on my property, which used to be attached to her property. Because I don't wanna see that building go kaput. So if we can reuse the material, once the engineer signs off on it, be reused and put back in the barn, at least it stays on Peach Street Circle.
Okay, so you're taking it, okay. So when you talk to the guy, the developer owns it, you're gonna say this stuff is all termite eating, I'm doing you a favor getting rid of it?
Actually, there is a plan that I'm actually typing up.
Okay.
For that to happen. And I did speak with the actual building inspector, and he said, just be safe taking it down. Doesn't matter, just be safe taking it down. No, with an excavator. And we have not had any contract signed between one another yet. I will be sending that over so that R D K and Z watch X sign as well to give me, out of time, to basically take through what is reusable lumber. Just wanna make that note.
Okay, thank you. All right, before I move on to the next hearing, are we all set? Okay, no more notices, August nineteenth at seven fifteen right here. Okay? And I'm sure something will happen, you guys get noticed on what's gonna happen with what they wanna do for building, if they in fact want a private road and do it this way, so, thank you.
Please try to schedule the scenic hearing for the same.
Yeah. Well, that will be, the question will be, Dan, Sarah's point is, you think you're all set, that there'll be no more issues on the nineteenth, you might wanna think about the scenic road.
Yeah, my plan is to get it in so that we can have a hearing concurrently.
Okay.
On the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. What? All right.
Do you want these plans coming along as well?
Okay.
We don't have any.
Dan, we've already opened this, correct, Kate? Yep. Kate? Kate? All right, with the hour being after seven fifteen, we have a continued public hearing for Lincoln Estates. So, rise and shine, Mr. Truax. Oh, Mr. Almeida.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Brian Almeida for Lincoln Estates. And, uh, Rob Truax with me as well, if you have any engineering related questions. Thank you very much for accommodating us tonight, um, fitting us in. I, uh, just wanted to go over some of the items that we've submitted in between our last meeting, um, the revised plan, revised traffic plan, revised gravel removal plan. Um, I believe that we also submitted a deed with the wording, um, that would be conveyed to the lots that are adjacent to the gun club. Uh, we also submitted a revised street name request and then, uh, a particular interest of the board tonight, the proposal from Beta with respect to the peer review that we discussed at our last meeting, uh, for gravel removal. So, um, if it pleases the board, I think that our main goal tonight is to get approval for that peer review, so that before our next meeting, I believe scheduled for July twenty ninth, we'll be able to have that at least substantially underway, if not completed.
So that's your main goal? Okay, well, all right, as I said before, what are we doing with the easement on the gun club?
In between meetings, we looked into that again. Um, it it doesn't seem to run with the chain of title for the property.
So you're saying that there is no easement? So the gun club has no rights to access their property?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying specifically that it doesn't have a right via that easement that we were showed last meeting.
Okay, so you're saying that that thing is defunct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next question is you're showing, you're taking a subdivision and showing a little strip of land, what is that?
What's that?
Parcel A.
Where the gun, where the road is. You haven't identified that at all, other than just a parcel.
For the record, Rob Truax of G L Engineering, so we show a parcel A, which is a square feet. Um, and the intention of that is that at some point in time, there will be some agreement hopefully between the gun club and the applicant that that would be hopefully, with all of this going on, that that would get needed to them at some point in time, and that would give them access to get into their site, so.
Okay.
I think as you said, there is no frontage to that property, and even though it wouldn't be legal frontage, it would still give them access and frontage on Lincoln Road.
Okay, well, that brings me to our next comment, and it's called proper planning. Uh, is Ava Drive, that should be extended to the property line, so therefore that, there's no need for that piece of strip over there. And it now gives frontage to a p- piece of property that's been existence almost a hundred years.
This this piece, this what you're calling Ava?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm looking at, this one, yep.
So, at one point in time, Mr. Chairman, we had proposed that, and we got negative feedback from the authorities, which is the gun club for access through there.
Um.
Just saying, we do have an easement on the plan.
That's that's fine, Rob, but it's not up to the gun club's side to access.
We do, we do have an easement up there with the cul-de-sac, almost to that property.
No, but now we're trying to make a a lot that does not have proper frontage into, you pull the cul-de-sac up there, now they're they're up to date legal.
Yeah.
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Um, I just got a text, people said they can't hear you on the mic. No, that's okay.
It's probably better.
I'm not used to it. It's been over a year and a half.
There's no codium, so that's the problem.
Um, so, the cul-de-sac is short of the property boundary, however, we did provide a utility and access easement that goes up to the gun club property through those two lots.
So what is the, why wouldn't it be pulled to the end of the property?
It's not our desire to do so.
But it's up to this planning board to do proper planning procedures, which were done in the past on many parcels where they're landing.
Um, they would not be landlocked with the parcel land that gets them through their driveway. They have access.
I'm not, myself, we have all these buildouts, I'm not able to access it with a fire truck. So you're saying no?
Well, they've accessed it now with a fire truck.
Okay, what you told me is no.
Correct.
But you also told me the gun club didn't wanna leave.
We got negative feedback, yes.
Okay, I will, I can check that out, but as far as, I'm one person here, but we've always done this, we've done it up in North Walpole. And that's proper planning, that's proper procedures and 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 so on, so. This lot here going back to here, is that being segregated, is that part of these lots, or what, how does it go?
Yes, see what you're pointing.
Where the road goes now?
Oh, yeah. No, it's not part of those lots, it's a separate parcel.
So this is part of it, but it's not part of the sub, you have a note of that on as another separate piece, correct?
It's called parcel A.
And if you know.
It's part of the overall project, yes, it's part of the overall permit of the plan. It's our land, it's within the property boundaries, yes.
All right.
And it's shown as a separate parcel that basically meanders down their access road to the, to the gun club.
There's another thing that you can't answer, Rob, I know you tried, you guys tried to answer it, but the thing about, uh, shooting within five hundred feet, um, you gave us a deed, I don't know how enforceable, but even if it is enforceable, it doesn't stop anyone else who's not on that deed from complaining. And that's one thing I think we will have to get answered from our side, is are we allowed to zone out, in theory, another property?
Are we, we're not zoning out any property?
You would if they were within five hundred feet. If you put a house within five hundred feet, you've actually put them out of business.
You wanna answer that, Brian?
But I, before you get in the, but I saw all those, those are individual cases, there's nothing in the mass Supreme Court that says boom, it's all individual cases.
Correct.
I would suggest that that's how it is pretty much in any circumstances. Sometimes it's just individual cases, and in this case in particular, an appeals court case. Um, it says, that's how we're interpreting the statute.
I understand, but we have to get it. Can we approve something that was going to put someone, in theory, out of business?
Well, I I, theoretically, it's not going to put anyone out of business.
Yes, it it is if someone makes a complaint.
Again, that statute, as interpreted by the Massachusetts Appeals Court, interprets it in a way that would not put the gun club out of business.
Okay, well, we can get an answer to that. Um, and I'm just, I'm coming to the one, we gotta talk about the, uh, the dirt, so to speak, okay? What's, Rob, what's your interpretation of five dash one C of our Rules and Rights?
So this is the one that talks about what's necessary for site preparation and construction?
Yep.
So, in the past, the subdivision, in order us, for us to construct the subdivision, build the roadways, build the lots.
Not the lots, not the lots, the roadway. This is subdivision control, you agree?
Yes.
And this only allows you to take out or put in the dirt you need to construct the roadways, you agree?
I don't agree with that, no, but
Well, okay.
That's a board's decision.
No, it's not a board's, it's right here. Your lot, all right, I'll put it simple, do we bond the lots?
You bond the road.
Correct. So we have no business being on a lot, what goes on in a lot, correct?
I, I don't know, I don't know.
No. What this says is earth removal is restricted to subdivision that is which necessary for site prep and construction, unless a special permit is obtained from the Board of Appeals. That's your option. We do the road, whatever dirt you need to take out of there on this particular case through us, if you wanna take out more dirt, you gotta go see the Board of Appeals. That's what it says there.
Yeah. Respectfully, I don't, I disagree with that interpretation.
Okay, you do, okay. I've got lawyers who tell me these are all wrong, like I'm stupid, I can't, well, what does that mean then? Could you explain? At what point do you go see the Board of Appeals?
When we exceed that which is necessary for site preparation and construction. I would suggest, again.
For the road.
It doesn't say that.
What is this called? Subdivision, what do we do, deal with? The roads, we don't deal with the lots.
Respectfully, though, if it, if this were limited to the lots, it would say so.
No, respectfully, it's not, it's, this is roads. See that nice little road? It's got to do with the road, it has nothing to do with the lots. That's what this means, very simple. I mean, we can fight out, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but I can read. And our subdivision control deals with the construction of the roads, nothing beyond the roads. So we can't say whether you're gonna fill in a a lot or whether you're gonna cut it down. Whatever you need to make the road is what you're allowed to do. I don't disagree with that. Once you go beyond what you need, you wanna start hogging stuff out, then then that's where the Board of Appeals will come in.
Again, respectfully, it doesn't limit itself to the road, it's the site preparation and construction.
Okay, then, okay. Then what is the purpose of having that thing on the Board of Appeals? Where does that fall?
If you were to try to extract more than is necessary.
More than is necessary for what? To construct the roads?
Site preparation and construction.
Yeah, for the roads.
Well, again, I would suggest that it's broad, because it doesn't limit itself to the roads.
Okay, do we have any, is this subdivision control?
Yes.
All right. What do we, do, see these things here, these lots, do we have any say over what they look like? No, we only have what's in this nice little dark line here, the roads themselves. That's what we deal with. We can't go beyond it. Now, to say it doesn't, it doesn't have to say the roads, cause it's dealing with subdivision control and building the the ways, so. That's in there, so it's gonna have to be addressed.
Again, I, clearly we have a disconnect on this, I don't think we're gonna bridge it tonight, but.
Oh, I know we're not, but.
And if if you did go through the Z B A and do a special permit, that would answer a lot of my concerns with, you know, the removal, because it has a lot of regulations on, you know, what's required and and what you need to do, you need to provide a bond to protect the town. Lot of things are outlined, which I think are prudent on this project. So I I would agree with the chair, I mean, if if at all possible, if it's within the the law and our right to do, I really think that's the way to go for this project.
And and generally, I would agree with that, but I think some of the material that we have in our gravel operation plan suggests that even if we were to go before the Z B A, this would be allowed, for for instance, section five D three, which is item number three on the gravel removal plan. It it has, essentially tracks the language of.
So five D one and five D three both use the word incidental, and when you are taking out that much fill, I don't think we can call it incidental in any way.
When we look at five D three, we get into incidentals of the construction of residential buildings. So, in this case, we're.
And five, five D one is incidental, other primary uses or activities. Not limited to excavation for swimming pools, terracing, onsite utilities, but the word incidental is a huge block for me. And the fact that, I mean, we're talking about a whole lot of removal here.
Well, Kate, what you're referring to is the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Zoning bylaw is irrelevant to this. This is subdivision control, that has no bearing on what we do.
But that's what they're hanging their hat.
I know, that's why I'm trying to say, take it, go home with it. Now, once I said before, and, uh, Colin, I had this discussion, is you're gonna show us a plan that's gonna make this flat, pretty much.
I defer to Rob on that, but.
You're gonna make it enough that you're gonna make a, take a whole lot of dirt out of there, correct? All right. So you're gonna give us a plan, we're gonna approve the plan. What's, what is, how can we bond to be assured you guys are gonna put it down to that contour? Cause it's not gonna be bonded.
You're gonna bond the road.
I'm gonna bond the road, but I'm not binding the individual lot. So if you left a big hill there, there's nothing for us, but you you don't meet the intent of the plan. You can't do it both ways.
But if they went special permit by Z B A, they would, they would have it bonded.
Yes.
We don't, we don't need a special permit regardless of what your board approves of. You approve just the road construction and the grade of the road? Or not, we don't believe that would still push us to a special permit to to grade the lots.
And that's why I refer us to five D three, which says incidental to the construction of residential buildings, so we find ourselves sort of bouncing between the two. That's why, again, I understand that the zoning bylaws aren't binding here, but they're cited here, because there is this natural tension between.
No, that that is more on the individual lots, that's what the zoning bylaw is about, where this is under subdivision control and everything incidental to build the roads. But let's keep going back. You're gonna show me a plan, we're gonna call it all down to zero. I can only bond the cost of what it does to the road. If you leave, if you all of a sudden find there's all granite under there, ledge, you ain't touching it, but your plan shows it being down to zero. How do we enforce that? We don't, can we? Because it's on an individual lot. You agree to that?
I don't, I think you have the same jurisdiction over the site as you do with the road.
No, we don't.
So, we wouldn't bond the road, let's just say I wasn't taking out all the gravel. Let's just say the road met all the grades, it was a flat site to begin with.
Yep.
I wouldn't necessarily bond the road until such time that I wanna pull a building permit.
Yep.
So what if I went in there and started building on a flat site, and I didn't like it when I'm done, I say, you know what, I'm not gonna bond this, I'm gonna walk away. Ten years go by and I left it a big mess, what's the difference?
The difference is you didn't put a bond up.
Uh, right, I didn't put a bond up for that site, I wouldn't put a bond up for this site till I'm ready to pull a building permit. Regardless of gravel removal.
But if you just, you're gonna sell houses here at some point, you're gonna.
Maybe, what, what I'm saying, I'm giving you a for instance.
Okay, I can, okay, great for instance.
Giving you an example, that can happen on any site that you have a permit.
Okay, I understand it happened on, up there in Sharon.
Right, it can happen on any site you approve.
Anyone, but.
Any site.
Okay, we'll bond the road, that's what we bond, okay? But we can only bond and only enforce what is needed to construct the road.
Yeah, but we wouldn't bond that road until such time that we're gonna pull a building permit. And that's probably not gonna be till we have binder down.
Okay, so you're not gonna bond it till that point.
Correct.
And all of a sudden you find ledge, you're gonna say, we're not gonna do that. So now you can't meet the conditions of.
No, we have to meet it, we have to build it to the plan.
But you're saying, like, here you're going, Rob, you want me to approve a plan showing you're going to zero?
Yeah.
So now, we're getting mixed metaphors. You're saying you have a lot, you're gonna bring it down to zero, but if you find it's no good, I'm just walking away from it.
We're not gonna walk away from anything, you're saying we're walking away.
No, what I'm.
I'm not saying that.
What I'm saying very clearly is, you you're making the argument both ways.
You're maybe, you're you're concerned that the project might not get completed and it can be left a mess. But that's the same risk that this board has with every project they approve.
But you want us, you want us to approve a project showing that you've taken everything out?
We wanna approve it as we're going to build it, correct? That means taking it down, moving the gravel so we can prep the site to build homes.
Yeah, to ground zero.
That's what we wanna prove, correct.
So we're gonna have a a decision based upon, you want us to decide what each lot's gonna look like, that's what you want our decision. But that isn't what is per subdivision control. You can only build the roads and take out or add, however the case may be, to construct those roads. Any of the off-site stuff, which would be any of the lots, that's why we have to.
So you don't consider the fact that we're building the road, building all the drainage basins, we wanna build a berm to screen out the the gun club and put screening on it, that's all part of the subdivision approval?
The berms aren't necessarily part of it.
I would think it would be. I would think it would be in the board's best interest to be sure that that berm is built properly.
Well, that's that's what you're offering, okay, it's not a requirement of this.
No, but I would think in the best interest of people, bodies, to everyone who lives there, that that berm should be constructed like that.
But what you want is to come in and bypass this section.
Not bypassing it, that section doesn't require us to do a special permit, Mr. Almeida just stated that.
Okay.
That's your opinion, it requires a special permit.
Of course it's my opinion, and I'm also reading what it says, but you guys keep grasping back at the zoning book.
No, we're reading the same thing.
No, again.
Okay, then, when does this apply? Please give me an example, cause I'm stupid, I've never done this before.
If you're removing more gravel, then it's necessary.
To construct the road, thank you.
For site preparation and construction.
Site preparation of the road, not of the, where does it say lots?
It just says site preparation.
Site preparation.
Site preparation.
Is not site preparation individual lots. You can smirk all you want.
It's not necessarily just road.
No, it's for the.
Preparation.
You come in front of us.
What do you consider to be the site?
Site preparation for the roads themselves.
What do you consider this site is?
Whatever's with it.
Just the area for the road?
Just for the road, correct.
That's the only area that's part of the site.
It's the only area that we are concerned with under mass general laws, is the road itself.
I I, we we disagree, we think the site is the property.
No, cause if that was true, every, everybody'd be mowing sites down left, right, and center, wouldn't they?
We've, you've given permits before to remove gravel on subdivisions.
Okay, we're gonna go back to the one up in West area?
We're gonna have to go back there.
I I'll explain it again, so anybody wants to hear, Johnny was here for that. The choice was either we're gonna knock down a bunch of trees, that was a trade-off. Either take it from a field or knock down all these trees. You guys had an either or on that one, and that was the better of the two.
But that's, that's still the same scenario.
It's not the same scenario.
What if he hit ledge in the hill and he left the place a mess, that he couldn't bond it? It says the same thing you're saying now, same situation. It says the same thing you're saying now, same situation.
That was, instead of doing this, you're gonna do that. That's how we ended up with that one.
It's still, you still gave a permit under the subdivision to remove like almost five hundred thousand yards.
We keep going up, four hundred.
Four hundred thousand yards of gravel.
Okay, and how many years does that take?
Two. How many years does that take, John?
Predominantly, two.
Predominantly.
Yeah.
With, uh, Rusty was in there for a lot of years that you guys wanted. I don't have an issue with that, that's what you wanted to do, but wasn't all removed.
If you wanna talk, can you come here so people at home can hear? Thank you. State your name and address.
Hi, my name is John Walsh of Walsh Brothers Building Company, and, you know, if we go back in time to when we were getting that subdivision approved. Back then, it was both controlled, both controlled, both controlled. So we built it out, we built it slowly. We were a small company. We do so many houses a year. When our Toll Brothers, we don't come in and bang out a hundred homes in a year. And that's what the town wanted, and and it turned out to be probably one of the nicest subdivisions in the town. I I think we were very responsible.
I'm not arguing any of that, John. I just wanna be clear that you didn't.
You can't say, you know, you took a long time to do it when.
But you also can't say we didn't, Rob said two years.
We did, but but the vast, vast majority was out in two years. There were a sm- some quantity left every.
I'm not arguing that, but I I, my trade is ten decimal points, and when someone says the vast majority, I know. Let's just say all of it versus the vast. I'm not, let's not, I'm not disagreeing with it, John. What you guys did, I understood what you did. You did five.
It came out nice. You did a nice job.
I'm not arguing anything you guys ever done.
I I, I mean, I could be wrong, but I can't think of a subdivision, since I've been building in Walpole, which is thirty something years, I can think of, uh. Toll Brothers had gravel, Viano had that site at the end of Toll Brothers that had gravel. There was up off of, uh, Spring Valley, uh. Spring Meadows had gravel, Meadow Ridge had gravel. I I can't think of any subdivision that's been required to go to ZBA for a gravel removal.
Hey, Meadow Ridge, not familiar with that. They just cut into what they needed. They didn't do a massive.
There's a massive retention basin that was excavated. That.
Meadow Ridge, in front there?
The me- the retention basin that that.
Right on Oak Street?
No, no, Meadow Ridge.
Meadow Ridge, oh.
Is the bird pond. They did, there's a massive basin there.
Yeah, that was long, yeah, but that, he didn't, they didn't hog a bunch of gravel. They didn't really change that much. Nobody took us, nobody took fifty feet and knocked it down to zero.
Absolutely, they did. Go look at it. You can see it right now. It's a, it's a gigantic cut. It was at least a fifty-foot cut. It's a huge hole.
Well, do you know if they went in front of the zoning board?
I don't think so.
Nobody knows, okay.
Well, I can't think of a case that the planning board has said go to the ZBA on a residential site.
No, we haven't had a case, John, I've been sitting here, that would, other than Wisteria, which was, do we wreck the river, which nobody wanted to do. We're on agreement, and take a field that's, that's just gonna become, take it out. That made a hundred percent sense. That was a trade-off. But this is taking it all out.
But I think, I think what that suggests, though, is that this board can do that in certain circumstances. You're saying there's a trade-off. It it can't be, it's only for, we only do roads, but also we can do trade-offs. It it suggests that the board has the discretion. I'd suggest that this section, without saying the word roads, gives you that discretion. If it's necessary for site preparation and construction.
Yeah, but that was in lieu of, okay, then you want to do it that way, then just knock out the back of the houses, last five along the gun club. That's a trade-off.
Is that a desirable trade-off? Because that that's what we're talking about is.
Probably not for you guys.
And maybe not for the club.
Oh, for the club it would, because you'd be protecting them five hundred feet. From any of the, you know, the skeet range and the rifle range, so.
I mean, between between that interpretation of the Mass General Law and the appeals court case and the deed language.
Okay, well, I've kinda said my piece on this. This is one that we haven't explored, and, you know, it's all started with me. With a woman from North Alabot wanted to come into town and take the, I know how this goes. I work with guys who do that. Nobody cares about building houses. The gravel's worth a ton of dough. And if you can get six hundred thousand yards out at about five bucks a yard, that's a good, that's a good deal. But not at the expense of building a house. That's why we have these rules in here. That's all.
Well, I can assure you that this is not a gravel removal operation. It it, again, I agree that it's an extreme quantity of gravel, but given this site.
But what I did find interesting is you guys did a boring of fifty feet. That's a little extreme.
Excuse me, uh.
Boring of fifty feet. Nobody does boring fifty feet unless they wanna see what's down there for material.
We needed to see what was down there because of the road cuts.
Yeah, and for the material. You were able to analyze all every step of the way, what was down there for material, whether it was saleable or not, correct?
Uh, we're gonna take samples all the way down. That's not correct.
For the fifty-foot boring, but anyway, um, I guess we're not gonna get anywhere with me, but I will turn it over. Well, start with you, Sarah.
Okay, um. So regarding the proposal from Beta, Beta, um, I don't see anything here that, um, asks for a bond or any kind of, um. Protection for the town, and that's one thing that I was interested in. Again, similar to what special permit would require, where this have to go to the ZBA. And then also, I didn't see anything for any kind of like in-construction services, and I just just wanted to check with the board if that's something that. That we think is important, or we just want someone to review like the their their plan and the, um, and the engineering drawings. So I don't know if anyone wants to have a comment now, or we'll wait till later. Just keep going.
So what are you asking, Sarah?
Well, one of the issues on Beta, Sarah, is we don't know the quantity. If they, if it's their way, it's one. If it's our way, it's another. And it becomes a whole different plan. Meaning you could, they're thinking removing five hundred thousand yards, this could come down, they're only removing a hundred thousand. So it's a matter of how the plan, for for Beta even to comment at this point, till we sort out which, how much material's coming out, it's kinda tough for them to give a final synopsis.
Yeah, well, they would do it based on whatever the plans are.
Yeah, but they, right now, they're looking based upon the five hundred thousand yards.
Right.
And if it comes, and that would be, but if it holds what we say, they may only be a hundred thousand coming through the planning board, and then they have to go to the zoning board. And at that time, they would have to revise it if the zoning board said fine.
Yeah, well, I think if they have to go through the ZBA, this is not maybe necessary. Because I I had asked for it because I wasn't sure we had the authority to ask for the ZBA, but that's my preference.
I agree.
I think that has much better protection to the town.
Yep.
Yeah, they will be the ones that, they may not like what we have, and they may say, yep, we're gonna do this.
Yeah, so, um, I guess it's an outstanding question and one that I would like answered, like if we can require it, because I I certainly think that's better for the town.
If I could just address the point of having the peer review, I would suggest that having the peer review what we're asking for, which is the maximum allowable amount, will give you some indication. If the amount's reduced, I would suggest that then Beta's concerned with respect to the quantity of it is gonna be reduced, because the amount's gonna be less. Um, so having them review the maximum amount that's being requested, I think is at least comprehensive at this stage.
Yeah.
Now, one of the things that's not, I'm gonna step on this, Sarah, but it's not contained in there is, is this going from dirt to truck and out? I didn't see that in there.
In in Beta's peer review?
No, not Beta. Beta's kinda our guy. You, how was, how was you, you guys gonna do it?
I I believe it's on the gravel removal plan on the second folded line operation, um, still on page one.
Okay.
Bottom.
Alright, what did that say?
It just gives the route.
Yeah, okay.
It says the timeframe, the number of trucks.
Yep, I, that's.
The hours.
Okay, my point is, is the backhoe or the loader, whatever they're gonna use, gonna take it right out of the hill and load it on a truck, and the truck goes down the road?
Right.
What?
Yes.
So you're not gonna have a screen there?
We would not be, we would not be crushing. It's, it's possible we would have a screen there.
Okay, so you're.
Some materials of the site.
Alright, so you now, that's what's missing here, is now you're gonna, John, come on, we know how it goes. You're gonna have a screen there, cause you gotta screen the crap out of there, right? And you gotta screen the loam. So that isn't what was set. Then it becomes more and more of a gravel, uh, type of operation, as opposed to removal.
Well, we have to build a road, we have to screen the loam to to put loam strips.
No, I understand that part, but if you're gonna sit there.
Sand to 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 bed, pipe, it's part of building, it's part of building a house, building a road.
I understand all that, but not doing all every, all the other access that's gonna get taken out of there.
The, in Wisteria, we had a loader, we took five pockets, we put them in a truck, and then five back. It's as simple as that.
So.
We were banking.
So then what you need to do is explain how it would be. It's not in there, that's my point. I mean, you're gonna have a crusher?
No. He said no, but.
You gotta explain how, why the screen, screen all's gonna be there, and and how you're gonna approach it, so that everybody understands that, okay? Say if you get approved and someone goes up and sees that screen, it's like it wasn't in the, you're gonna get shut out.
Yeah.
Tell us how you're gonna do it, what we, what everybody should expect, so there's no surprises down the road. That's all.
A very detailed gravel inspection, a gravel removal plan for the next hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, I don't care the size of the machines, but what, you know, why the screen's there. The screen's there to do, just like you said, John, screen the loam, screen any of the bedding. And the other stuff is just on its way.
I mean, the screening is typically to make product that's used for the construction of the road.
Don't disagree, but if you only need fifty thousand yards, and you got five hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah. We wanna, it's screening, yeah.
Well, you might screen, because I know when you go to dump it, either Tresco or Lou, so they're not gonna take the big boulders. We know that. You may wanna get them weighed, but you ain't cakein' it, so. That needs to be in there, just how this all approaches. I'm sorry, Sarah.
No problem. Um, okay, so that's outstanding for me, this whole situation. Um, and then just a couple, um, comments. You have a proposed Ava Drive, and according to our regulations, I believe that should be a lane, not a drive. Drive is for, um, a road that serves fifteen to thirty lots.
You will make that change.
Okay, um, and in the previous hearing, you mentioned that you, you're not really doing anything with, uh, the scenic road, Lincoln Road. However, you do have a lot, Lot twenty-four, that's gonna have a curb cut, at least, right, for the, for the, um, home.
You have that lot here?
Yep.
Yeah, when we, when we develop that lot, if there's any trees or walls, they have to, we would file a permit for scenic road.
Okay.
I don't anticipate that. There's no stone wall there. It's very desalt brush. There's no significant trees in front of that lot. But I mean, if.
So why, why not just do that now?
Cause we haven't definitively designed that lot yet.
And maybe take it out of the subdivision?
I mean, I can definitively design it now, and if it's not required, the only reason we go to scenic road, though, is if we're taking down a tree or a wall in like in the layout.
And we just hope Scout's Honor, you're gonna come back for the scenic road, right?
Saying that again, Scout's Honor?
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, we're not gonna clear that until we design that lot. I mean, we're not, we're not gonna rip all the vegetation down along the street right there. We wouldn't take any trees down if significant side was in the layout.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's an, that's another thing that you had mentioned previously, that you don't have it in the phasing plan, because it's like, it's gonna happen later, maybe, whatever. But I think that has to be listed. You know, some kind of verbiage, like to be completed, at a later date than phase three or something, like this. So if you're gonna have this Lot twenty-four in the subdivision, then it should be complete, and we should have.
I can pull it out, do an A and R plan, get rid of it.
I mean, I don't know. I think if it's there, I don't like these things hanging out. It looks like it's not.
It's not, it's no different than any other lot in the subdivision, but I mean, if it re, but if they're in the process to file for a building permit for that lot. And if it requires removal of a tree or a stone wall along the road, then then we would file a scenic permit then.
Mm-hmm.
We generally wouldn't file one now. It's just, it's premature with that lot being constructed.
Okay.
I mean, that lot still has to have perk tests, has a, have a septic design. Every lot out here's gonna have a septic system. There's no sewer.
Right, so how are we gonna have Board of Health approval for that, if that's, you're not even planning to look at that?
Well, we're gonna have Board of Health approval prior to a building permit. We're just not gonna have it for a subdivision permit.
But we need Board of Health approval for the subdivision.
I can't perk ninety percent of, that's the only lot I could probably perk prior to these, this road being built, just because of the cuts. Cause I could do a perk test out there, and by the time I finish digging that hole and doing the perk, I'm thirty feet in elevation above where the septic system's gonna go, so. Um, Board of Health is not approving septic systems at this time. They would not approve septic systems as part of a subdivision approval. It's a separate, that's a separate permit, so I don't know the Board of Health.
But they're gonna make a, they're gonna make a, um, a recommendation or a comment to the planning board, yes.
On the subdivision portion, but not on individual septic systems at this time. They're not approving individual septic systems. We're not, we're not submitting them yet. We can't submit them. We don't even have lots created yet. I can't submit a septic system on a lot that doesn't exist.
Okay.
So that's, it's premature to, you know, to do a, I think it's premature to do a final site layout for any of the individual lots at this time, just because the lots aren't created. We're creating the lots.
Okay.
You know, we're doing the subdivision.
Can you, can you add something to the phasing about that Lot twenty-four?
In what sense? What would you like to see? What do you wanna see?
Just, I mean, uh, it's been kind of, uh, you know, maybe completed sometime after phase three, I think is, is the.
It could be completed first. It has frontage and access off of Lincoln Street. It doesn't have frontage on the road.
Okay.
But I mean, it could.
So, I mean, uh, we're.
It could be. I mean, it's not.
We need to evaluate the phasing, right? So where is it?
It's.
It's just.
It's, we, we didn't designate it in a phase. I guess, because it's not, there's, there's really no construction on it during the, during the road construction. There's no drainage basin on it. There's no, we're not, it's not even gonna get cleared during the, during the construction of the roadway. The lot won't get, the trees won't be cut on that lot until they go to build that actual lot. If you want, we can, we can take it out of that, in that sense, and just leave it as an individual item. I mean, I don't, I think.
I don't know. I, it, to me, it looks like it's, it's incomplete, like, that it's just hanging out there, and you haven't told us. Is it first? Is it last? Is it in the middle? Is it?
It's because we don't know. It's not, it's not defined yet. And we haven't defined how it's gonna go. I mean, it's premature to do that, I think, because it's not a lot yet. And when it is created, and this is approved, that lot will have legal frontage on Lincoln Road. We might need the subdivision roadway to gain access or to gain building permit.
Sure.
So, I mean, it could, it could, it stands alone in some sense. It could have been an A and R lot.
Right.
We just included it in the whole subdivision. So it'd be part of the covenant.
Right, okay, um, alright, let me think about that. Um, so Jack had asked about this, but can you explain this, um, in between lots seven and eight, this utility easement? Is it an access easement? Is it strictly for utility? It's utility to the gun club, or what is this?
Um, it's just for future anything. It's gonna be granted to the town of Walpole if acceptance of the roads. I believe the town engineer had requested in his review.
We asked for it.
Okay.
So that if they wanted to loop water lines, utilities, et cetera, anything through there, they could get through.
Okay. Okay.
It's an access utility easement.
And the, the, um, possibility of it being a road extended is not out there?
No.
Uh, not without something else happening.
Without a subdivision approval of some sort.
It's a u, it's, it's a utility easement.
Okay.
Not roadway.
Okay, I thought somebody said, called it an access easement.
We, in the town of Walpole, all the easements designate access and utility, just because it gives you the town right to go in there. And you access the easement to do work, and it gives you the right for any utility in it.
Access to utilities, not access like a road access.
Right. Cause some of the old easements said drain, and then the town might have wanted to put a water line, and they couldn't. So now all, this has been going on for probably, since I've been doing plans here, a long time, that they all say access and utility. So the town has the right to go in there and do whatever they may choose at some point if they have to.
So that request is not peculiar to this subdivision. It's the same thing occurred in the one that we reviewed previously for the same reason. Just to be able to put utilities from one to the other.
Okay. Okay, no problem. Um, and then just one comment on, um. Something like, um, the typical cross-section. I think there's just maybe a typo that says were, where maybe it should say where. And I wrote lot. And I wrote Lot twenty-one, did I mean Sheet twenty-one? Yeah, Sheet, Sheet twenty-one.
Okay.
Um, and... So just to reiterate, I still have the question about the five hundred limit, and I still have the question of the gravel remover. Should it have a special permit? Um... And that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Phil?
Um, on Sheets Ten and Twelve, Lot sixteen and One.
So if I could make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Well-
We've submitted some, Brian submitted some information about the five hundred foot rule, you've seen that document, right?
Yeah.
So, why would, wouldn't it be in the best interest of the board to have legal counsel to do that, Town Council?
Yeah. What are you gonna do?
Okay.
It's gonna come back, is that a case by case or landmark that the court has decided that this holds true for everything, that's all.
Oh, you're gonna decide, that's how it's gonna come back?
No. The way it comes back from them? You're gonna, you're, you're lucky, it's me. If I ask the question, they're gonna support you. Thirty years, I've gone oh for a hundred and thirty-eight. Yeah, you keep laughing, John, you may get oh for one thirty-nine the way this goes. Yeah, we need their input on that, uh, and what came up the other night was when one of your butters said, well, when you knock it all down, and that's when it struck me. Even if you do the deeds, someone on Deerfield says, they're within five hundred feet, they can still report them. You don't have to be living the house to make that, that complaint.
You, you, we'll get, I, I think it'd be great if you got a legal opinion from Town Council on it, and maybe you can ask them about the gravel removal as well.
I don't have a great record with them either, so I don't know, maybe you wanna ask them.
I'll ask, sure. I have no record.
Because you two are the perfect ones to ask.
John will ask, it'll be great.
I'm new.
Phil, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, actually, since you're talking about the, uh, the gun club, one thing you had mentioned the last time was that you were gonna get a copy of the, what you're putting in the deeds to notify the-
Yeah, I can have that.
Did that come to you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a copy, it's quite client-handed.
It's not, it's not much, but, uh, this thing-
Oh, okay, I might've missed that, yeah. We just got this today, yesterday, so it kinda, okay, I'll take a look at that, thank you. And then I'll just go back to my, my other, beginning of my questions on, um, Sheet Ten and Twelve, there's Lot sixteen and One that don't show roof recharge systems.
Yeah, it's just probably an error. They're all gonna have it-
They're all gonna have one, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
With the show roads, I apologize if we missed a couple. Yeah, every household will recharge system.
And then, and then I just, um, just had some questions about the, the gravel remover, and I know we already talked about this a little bit, but just wanted to bring it up again. You know, just looking at how much, again, how much gravel, how much land is being removed. You know, for example, Lot Five is gonna go from about two hundred twelve feet, uh, two hundred, I'm sorry, two, yeah, two hundred, two hundred twelve feet down to a hundred eighty-four feet. Again, we can go look at any of them, the, the streets are also a good example, so, but just curious, so, did you look to try to not have to remove as much earth and still make buildable lots, or that's just not-
Well, we started, when you start the, when you start the roadway from Deerfield and you come into the site, we maxed out the grade.
Yeah.
So that sets the grade at the intersection of Deerfield and, and our new proposed road. And then, you know, you run uphill a little bit, but at that point, I mean, I can run up maybe a little, maybe I can make it five feet higher. But we got to the point where the design thought was, let's keep it lower because I can screen out the gun club with a berm in the back. As I raise it, the berm goes down. So if I raise the rope, if I raise the site up five or six feet, then the berm's only fourteen or fifteen feet. All right, now I have it, so it's twenty feet, and, you know, that's about gutter line for the second story. So the idea is if I'm in the second story of that house and I look out the window, I can't see the gun club. And I don't have to worry about something coming over the top of that berm.
You mean a what?
A what? No, like, you know, like one of those model airplanes, they fly those over there, don't they?
Well, they're, they're little orange things.
So, that, that's kind of what our planning was at that point, because honestly, if I lift it up five feet, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go from six hundred thousand to a hundred thousand yards of material.
Yeah, I guess I'm more looking at if the houses can be raised up.
Right, so, I mean, the idea was at the end, I'd rather have the site gradually sloped and readily steep and have all my houses stepping down the hill. So at the end of the day, I wanted to look like a nice, you know, subdivision layout and not a steep slope, building a house on the side of a hill.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of some streets I know in town where the, you know, the, the street was cut in and then the, there are fairly steep banks, but the, the houses-
If you go out there and walk the site, it, it's two to one slope straight out fifty feet.
Yeah, I, actually-
Right off the end of Deerfield Road.
Maybe, maybe that's something we could arrange, walking the site.
Yeah, absolutely, we take you out there, with your arms jacket.
So-
Yeah.
Again, I may have missed this, but I didn't see the, of the phased project plan in the, in the, in the sheets, so I missed that.
Oh, that was a separate, no, that was a separate document. It wasn't in the plan set.
Okay, is it possible to get, you know, include, so we can actually-
We can put it in the plan set, I think, Kyle, did you make that comment maybe?
Could be in the plan.
Yeah, we can put it in the plan, definitely.
Okay, yeah, I know you showed it the last time, but, but-
No, that was in a separate, uh, phasing document, so it was by itself, stand alone.
Okay, that would be, that-
It wasn't part of the subdivision plans itself.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
But we can, anything that we put in documents, we can include in the plan set, so it's all the same.
Um, and then, you know, the, the beta engineering study, so obviously there's that, that's a big issue all around, you know, we-
So can I make a suggestion on that? I know, like, I mean, John says, has agreed to, you know, obviously pay for beta to do the review. And my thought is, no matter which way the project goes, whether the board approves this and the sloping the roads just for the, uh, slope on the sides just for the road, or we're sloping everything to prep the site to build the houses. The worst case scenario is, you know, what we show in prepping it for the sites, let them review the worst case scenario. And if it comes to the latter and we come back to something less, well, then you just have more protection in the review. So why would we want them to review it if we're gonna slope the sides and then maybe it goes down a half the gravel? And I would have them review the worst case scenario, and we're willing to pay for it, so why try to reduce the slope?
But there's no, there's no, um, you know, bond for the town, and there, and some of the things that are included in special permit-
Right.
Are not there.
But they're not, they're not a special permit though, again, so-
Okay, so I'm saying that, so not everything that we want is there, so...
But you're saying do the study and we may come back and say you need to do the per, the, the special permit.
No, so you're, you're, you're looking, you're looking to have them review it as a special permit and come back with bonding and et cetera and things like that.
That's what I would like, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, he can review it for all that, but it's, that doesn't mean it requires a bond at this point in time.
Which is why I think we should explore what it says in our rules and regs.
That's fine.
And then, um, the, the, it's gonna be eighteen wheeler trucks that remove in the, the gravel, is that-
Right, most of the tractor trailer.
Tractor trailer. Yeah. Yeah, so I, so I think we talked about it the last time too, the-
Yeah. It'll take twice as many trucks for the ten-wheeler.
Yeah, yeah, so it's forty, forty trucks, limited forty trucks a day, but that's, you know, the, the first, first phase one, two hundred fifty thousand. Two hundred fifty thousand cubic yards, that'd be, that would be two hundred fifty days of trucks to remove that, of forty trucks a day, yeah. So it's an enormous amount of, of, at least for projects that we normally see, it's an enormous amount of dirt. Um, so I guess that's, that's really, um, I think the major things I had. And, and I do agree that we would, you know, the special permit would be much better for the, for the town, for the, you know, just, just to reiterate that.
As much as that might be the case, again, and I hesitate to mention the zoning bylaws here, but I think it sort of bleeds into it when we start talking about special permit. The zoning bylaws say that this is allowable, so, e- even if you send us and you would like us to get a special permit, if they can't give us one, we can't come back with one.
Zoning bylaw just says incidental, like swimming pools, it doesn't say-
Well, that's Five D one, but Five D three says incidental to the construction of residential buildings, so that's what we'd be doing here.
Incidental to the construction means a patio, this and that, not the building itself, and also doesn't mean-
I respectfully disagree with that interpretation of incidental in, in-
Well, okay, let's put it this way, we wouldn't be cutting this to zero if this stuff wasn't worth a lot of money.
Oh, I, I, I completely disagree with that.
Correct? What?
Well, I do, because I think, I think exactly like we talked about-
So you mean they're gonna take out five hundred thousand yards of useless stuff that's gonna cost them five bucks to get rid of two and a half million bucks just to get rid of crap?
No, I certainly am not saying that.
This is gold.
I'm not, I'm certainly not saying that, what I'm saying is that to, to paint it as gravel removal for the sake of gravel removal, I think is not, is not correct. It's not strictly a gravel removal operation, it's gravel-
Oh, yes, one of the, one of the owners, he, his ears perked up when he heard that. Didn't he, Mr. Hassanaker?
Gravel removal incidental to this-
Well, enough of that, it's, yeah, okay.
But, but I think, I think it's important to mention that, just like the board was talking about trade-offs, I think that that's a big element of this project, is-
There is no trade-off in this, we're not gaining anything, but-
Well, well, no, I, I think it's important-
We're gonna go round and round for a long time on this, so-
If I could just say, with respect to the alternative, I think that Mr. Truax was talking about is the, the houses up on hills. If we can strictly only remove gravel for the roads, the houses are on big hills, the roads are cut out, but then the berm is useless with respect to the gun club, and one of the board's concerns is the gun club, um, so the berm becomes useless, and then it becomes a public safety issue to have houses on hills with roads far below. So I think it's a trade-off.
Why does that become-
Or like Jack said, we just don't allow any of the houses within five hundred feet, if that's the ruling that we get, so.
We'll have to wait for that ruling, but again, I think the Massachusetts repeal court's already ruled on that, but-
Well, I don't believe it, but anyway, um, I got a couple before I turn, I'll go this way, Katie, um, a very simple one. Deerfield cul-de-sac cow, I see that, if this does go through, wouldn't it make sense to get rid of that and make it straight and?
Yeah, the revised plans show, uh, well, the, the right-of-way, uh, lines are still shown.
Yeah.
But the curb's taken out and the road gets straight through, and the last house on the right on Deerfield has its driveway extended, it's, it's on the set of plans. We did contemplate taking away the right, taking the bubble away and making the right-of-way straight through, but in discussion with Mr. Truax, it may have implications to the conformity of zoning for that lot with its frontage. So, right now, I'm not leaning towards removing the cul-de-sac.
So we're not gonna have that bubble?
We can also do that, we, the bubble will stay unless we, that's actually a separate process to eliminate a check. It would have to be actually a discontinuance or abandonment, could be done when the roads are accepted.
Yeah, just get rid of it when they plant or however they get there.
Well, actually, well, I guess you could, no, you can't, it would have to be discontinuance or acceptance.
Yeah.
So, Jack, just so, just to reiterate that, so the, the bubble comes out, the pavement bubble.
Yeah.
But the actual property line must just be a pavement-
I don't care about that, I want the bubble, I just, there's one and a half, it looks like a piece of crap.
And the neighbor who lives there, for the first time we had a chance to speak to her tonight, she was the one who came out in the hall, we had a conversation about, we never got a chance to ask her how she felt, and she didn't have a problem with the bubble coming out.
Was that Mrs. Mashad?
Um, no, it begins with an M, I can't say it.
Nisho?
Nisho.
Nisho, Mashad, Nisho.
She was here tonight for the hearing, but she had to leave at eight o'clock.
Yeah, it's funny. Uh, yeah, she's the one that gave us this letter. That she came onto a property.
I, yeah, she told me that, not me personally, but my, my people were out there doing stakeout.
Yeah, I know, I, yeah, experienced the GLM, storm troopers on my property too. Um, okay. Now, the other thing I gotta ask too is, since you've been in wonderful talks with the gun club, they, they're all set on wiping out that two-way coming out? But that's gone per your plan, correct? Right now, once you do the split, it's only narrow enough for one car to get.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Drive up to the gun club, Rob, you've been there, right?
Yeah.
If you go to the right, you got that big island.
Oh, you mean way up inside?
Way up, yeah, so now you-
I'm taking, I'm taking it for street.
So you guys are getting rid of that, so now all of a sudden, their little itty-bitty road becomes a two-way. They understand that?
Yeah.
They do? Okay. All right, um, one thing, I don't know, before I turn over the cake, but just wanna reiterate a few things. So what we got here is, you guys wanna take it down to nothing, you wanna get rid of all the gravel, you're not gonna move the road up where, where I said, and so, a lot of cooperation. So basically, anything I've said I didn't like, you guys don't know. Just wanna set the, set the tables, so. Okay. I don't even know why I talk, so, Kate?
Um, I won't take a lot of time, I think everything I wanna say has been said, but I have a lot of doubts about the regulations. Um, I need clarification. I think the gravel's a huge issue, I mean, worst case scenario where you guys talked about the forty trucks a day. If you do the math and the eight hours and you take an hour out for lunch, it's, it's a truck every ten minutes. You know, that's a lot, that, that's an awful lot for the neighbors, and for three years, I mean, that's, that's a lot. So I wanna make sure we're doing the right thing, so I definitely want to hear that a special permit is not required, because with the incidentals popping out, when I read it, obviously I have no legal degree, but when I read it, I have doubts, and I can't, until the doubts are cleared, I can't go forward with it, so. Um, I just want that clarified, that's all.
John?
Did you respond to your question?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I assume when you say clarify, you mean from, from Town Council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, Rob, the reg, parcel A is kind of a reg, irregular shape. What's the variance on the width of that, as you travel along it, you know?
Yeah, it varies a lot.
Yeah, no, at a minimum or maximum or?
I don't know, I'll have to, I have to get back to them and tell it.
'Cause I know it looks clearly narrow in some of the spots, where, and then it wide.
Yeah, the idea was just to try and get their road-
Give them something, yeah.
I mean, their road, and some spots goes off their property on the other side, off our property, and onto the other abiding property.
Onto the other abider, okay.
So, right in here, I mean, we're giving them a strip, we're actually-
Yeah, I can see you don't have a lot of square footage of where you were.
We're gonna move it out front for them, we're gonna, we're gonna work with them in the best we can to help shape that up. So that's part of, you know, that's a, that's a separate issue from the board, obviously, that's a private, you know, negotiation going on between the abider and the applicant.
It's on this plan.
Just a parcel A is, no improvements are.
All right, so we don't have any say over it then, okay, 'cause it's a separate parcel, okay.
It's just a parcel.
Fine, so we, it's a lot, so we don't deal with that. Okay, I agree. You know why I agree? Goes against what we were saying before, is these lots have nothing to, so here's one, that we have nothing to say over, but over here, we can do it. Can't? All that one, Rob?
I know exactly what you're saying.
Well, parcel B, could you explain a little more on that, the one, the curve out in front of the street, parcel B?
So parcel B is to, um, right now Lincoln Road is not within the layout, the county layout. So the roadway itself, the pavement, is on our property. By almost all the pavement.
Okay, by that thin shape there, that, the actual road right now?
The pavement is on private property right now, so, um, we've, we've talked to Carl, we've discussed it, and it was his recommendation that we give a parcel there to create a new layout, so when you accept our roads, you'll accept that parcel as part of the road layout.
Okay, so currently the road is actually within that parcel?
Correct.
And you're granting that back to the town?
Yeah, we'd have to move it some thirty feet into the people across the street's land to get it back in the layout.
I don't like to think I have any new questions other than ones that closed in the past, uh, so I'm all set, I guess.
All right.
Um, Mr. Chairman, can I just say one other, one other comment, so when we talk about the forty truckloads a day, it's really eighty because you got the trucks going and coming, right?
Trips.
Yeah, so, so it's really eighty?
Trips.
Yeah, eh, forty trips, but-
Forty in, forty out.
Forty out, yeah, I just wanna clarify that.
They're using the new road, not Deerfield, correct?
We've, yes, we've specified it, no construction vehicles with access through Deerfield, that includes the building of the houses as well.
Yeah, she said it was.
So just the, uh, roadways.
So, uh-
When the guys come to pour concrete foundations and electricians and, they're gonna come in through the new roadway.
Um, okay, I, I just got a couple minor things, what do you, how many yards on a trailer dump?
Twenty-five, approximately.
Yeah, I wanna be at the other end when Tony's out there going, uh-uh, you don't get twenty-five on a trailer dump.
Where do you get in it?
What?
Where do you get in it?
Usually about twenty. Remember, you got, you're talking about eighty percent, right?
Where do you get it?
Depends if you're buying or selling.
It depends if you buy or sell. Twenty-four to twenty-eight, twenty-five is a good amount.
Yeah, no, okay. Um, now, uh, that was my only co- comment, Rob, uh, we don't have any others because when the plans came in and people were off and so on, so-
That's great.
We don't have any right now, but, um, if there's anybody from the audience would like to- We don't have any right now, but, um, if there's anybody from the audience would like to speak, did I see anybody? Mr. Mackey.
Phil Mackey, Mackey and Mackey, twelve fifty six, one hundred and thirty. Norwood, Massachusetts, is counsel for him on behalf of the Walpole Sportsmen's Association Incorporated. Um, I'm gonna start off with saying we are trying to work with John and the team here, I'm not here to say deny the project. Um, but unfortunately, I made a few statements for the club that I vehemently disagree with, so for the record, I have to actually say something. Um, first, we have a deed of easement. I can provide the title, and if we really wanna spend time arguing about whether we have an easement or adverse possession. We own access, and it's over the list of it a lot. Um, again, it's not my, my goal to argue about whether we do or don't, to actually come up with a solution that works for both of us. But respectfully, I disagree completely with Attorney Almeida on that. As far as with the gun club, prefer not to have any lots within five hundred feet, I would be lying to say the answer is anything, but yes, that would be our preference. Again, we may be able to work it out, um, I hope we do, um, but at least at this point, uh, we haven't been able to have those discussions, and so. Everybody, uh, just, so you understand for transparency here, I was only authorized by the board of directors to have official negotiations. Um, with Mr. Posh last night, so, uh, I hadn't planned on speaking at all, but when the statements are made from a client, I, I have to get on the record. Um, and then, last, I guess, but not least. I think we will come to an agreement as to our access, but, uh, one of the clubs, other than the five hundred foot issue. Um, and just so we're clear, I agree with Mr. Almeida. Um, there is a case out there, but to Jack's point, I don't really think that provides the club a whole hell of a lot of protection. Cause someone can still, still sue him, and death by a thousand cuts, they're out of business in ten years. Um, so it's, it's our goal to figure out legally how to prevent that. And if we're going to submit this, uh, question to town council, um, I'd like the opportunity to, to voice our concerns as well. Cause it's not simply, is this good law? That question I can answer for you, yeah, it's good law. It is, it's not bad. Um, but how it's interpreted and what it means, that's a whole different discussion. Um, and that's where our concern lies. Uh, and finally, the, back to our, our other main issue. Um, I don't know that they would prefer access off the road, that may completely be incorrect. Um, but I do know what, whatever this board decides at the end of it, the town, the club, the neighbors, everyone is stuck with for access to this. To the club, um, and whatever goes on there. Wolf Scouts use it, sportsmen clearly use it, other groups use it. Um, and so I would respectfully submit that whatever that turns out to be has to be acceptable to the fire department. Um, yeah, uh, you, you, uh, I shouldn't say you, you listen to the deputy fire chief, and I think that's proper. But we went through, uh, how many months of what is the rear road that probably is never actually gonna get used in New Pond Village look like? Um, and I think you guys made the right decision, and finally, we got conservation decayed, and we have a fully paved. Fire code compliant road, um, I would suggest, and I can't speak for the deputy chief, but what, whatever.
This is not gonna be shown as a road on the plan, so this really.
It's not.
It's a little difficult for us to, I mean, I have on my notes a- ask fire to comment, but.
Well, if you can't come up with a, a solution, then we will have problems. Um, and not with you, but.
Yeah.
Just simply saying, I mean, it is your charge to make, keep things safe with them.
Yeah.
Um, this, this board has imposed buffer zones, and in fact, I believe I'm in front of you discussing that exact issue. Um, some buffer zones are better defined than others. Um, some are very poorly defined and just aligned on the plan that no one really knows what they mean, others have documents and. Plan notes and, and what have you. And that's really as far as I'm going, cause again, my, my charge is to work with these guys from the Sportsman's Association, but I did need to get on record and at least. Answer the, the statements that were made on behalf of the club, not by me.
Okay, um, if you wanna wait one second, Phil, um, Mr. Truax, you've given, you've shown parcel A. Have you widened it up more than what it is now?
Have I, or did I? What did, what did you say? Have I widened it up anymore?
Yeah. Did your plan actually give them, take them off the New England waters and put them on there, okay?
It can.
It doesn't now?
We're not rebuilding their road.
Okay.
On that plan, what, what?
Alright, where did you come up with these lines? That's what I'd like to know.
Wherever their drive was on the property, we made sure it was within that parcel, wherever it went off, we gave them space so that they wanted to move it on. That way they could.
Okay, and what is used for driveway width?
Well, I, I have to go back and check with the wood side, I don't know exactly, cause it varies so much.
I would think that would be a key element, cause if it goes down to fifteen, fourteen feet, we got a problem, but, okay. Um, as, right now, we have a difference of opinion on easements, and it's very simple. I think I might win this one with town council, but you can't go forward with a subdivision plan without having all easements shown. So, for us to continue down this road where this, where this is logjam between you guys and the gun club. There's no sense for us to continue until that's worked out.
Again, I certainly agree with Mr. Mackey that we won't, don't wanna debate the viability of the easement, but, um. Again, I, I don't think it's in the chain of title that's made it to today, um, particularly since, again, not to belabor the history of the easement with the cl- with the board. Um, but as recently as.
The last, last several years.
Last several years, um, the board was, the club, excuse me, was exchanging the right to access for sending a.
That is absolutely incorrect, absolutely incorrect.
Again.
I, I, I don't see the, the reason, I don't see that we need to debate that here tonight, if, if, uh.
Certainly.
Yeah, well, I, I understand, but what I'm saying is, there's no sense until you guys agree, it's over. For us to continue, because guess what? Well, I'm not gonna sit here and prove a plan. And then somebody, and then all of a sudden, they, somebody from the gun club says they're gonna take their ATV and go roll right up the middle of your, your subdivision. Easements have to be straightened out beforehand. Who controls the land? Right? If they have an easement, they should have been part of it. The other thing I do know is, we, we all know that they could claim adverse possession that whole road and probably half the hill.
Again, I don't wanna debate the merits of that, but it's been, it's been considered, but.
I know it's been considered, I mean, but, once again, it seems to be hinging on this easement. You have your opinion, he has his. We're sitting here. We're not gonna prove a plan until that's resolved.
Certainly, and we have a hearing on the twenty-ninth, and until then.
Your hearing on what?
July twenty-ninth.
No.
No, why don't you come over there?
At the last meeting?
No, no, you guys wouldn't go to July, and I said, alright, I gave you the seventeenth. No, no, we don't do, we don't book weeks in advance. We go one at a time.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
We're, we're going to have a subsequent hearing. Mr. Mackey's been authorized to negotiate on the club's behalf. We're hopeful to come before you with a conclusion as to the club issue and, in addition, the easement issue.
Okay, I didn't mean to jump on you, but Mr. Truax has a habit of saying we're all set.
That's fair enough, Mr. Chair.
We, we, we're given a half hour tonight.
Mm-hmm.
You had more than a half hour?
Correct. And the twenty-ninth.
We don't have a hearing on the twenty-ninth.
So, oh, you're saying you want one in July?
I, I thought we had one, or, or, whatever the date was, the end of July, but it's.
Oh, we gave you July and you said no, you wanted June. That's what we gave. Gave you a half hour, we had more than a half hour.
I thought we granted an extension through the end of July.
July thirty-first.
Yeah.
July thirty-first.
We gave an extension to July thirty-first, and you booked the date, but.
So. You're gonna grant another one, or you're gonna hold fast?
When's the next hearing?
August.
We're not gonna get a hearing in July?
No, cause this isn't all gonna be resolved by then, right? We're already talking, we're already talking three and a half weeks or whatever.
We can't resolve anything if we don't have any hearing then. At least we can resolve some points.
Once again, I feel like I'm getting pushed way too much. I've been told I'm, no, 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 now I'm getting pushed, I get pushed for this hearing tonight. You guys don't even have an agreement. You don't have an agreement with the gun club in the easement. You say it doesn't exist, they say it does, okay? And now you're setting how you want things to proceed, John?
Yeah, I just thought we had a hearing, gave, we gave an extension through the end of July. Now we're not gonna get any hearings in July?
No, cause you don't have this result.
We have just one meeting in July.
We don't even have anything back from the other departments on the resubmissions. Resubmissions came in at that fourteenth day, would've been nice if they came in a little bit earlier, cause people wanted vacation and so on.
Yeah, they, they came in early, like fourteen days ago.
Kate, more than fourteen, oh, write on.
June first, they came in.
June first, okay, shoot us for sixteen days, right, three days, but we don't have anything back from anybody else.
That was out, sorry.
So, you go in August, you'll have everything resolved, at least in my opinion. You guys resolve your easement, you'll have an answer from town council on. Gravel and the gun shooting. I don't think you're gonna get much out of anybody between now and, and July anyway, cause that's the next. Two weeks, we know, just goes.
Well, we might get some comments from Beta that we could at least begin incorporating into the plan, uh, sometimes.
Well, we can send you those, because that, that's a consult being paid by you guys, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's not an issue now. But, did Beta, did Beta say how much?
Yeah.
Did they? Alright, cause they had two. What was it? Is this the se-? Is this the second one?
Nine thousand nine hundred fifty, I'm the one that I have.
What's the date on that?
Uh, May twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Is that the most current, Kyle?
No, there's a June fifteenth.
I think he wants to stay the same.
Month stays the same.
Okay, that's as long as the month, okay, well, we'll let Beta go, but. You gotta write a check, right? Okay. Gotta get that, he can't do anything until you, so you'll be down tomorrow, Phil, uh, who'd they give that to, to the town?
I don't even know that.
When we're done consultants.
We have that.
We're done for a while. We'll figure it out, John. Make out the town a wallboard, as long as you put it far explicitly for this, for that, so they can't use your money. How's that? On the check for Beta Engineering Review for Lincoln Estates, that way.
There's, there's, I think there's a process, you can check with the zoning board how they handle the.
I think Maggie always did it.
Maggie always took it.
Amy does it all the time.
But, but Maggie did it before, I, I, we didn't.
You've never done that, right? So just ask the ZPA how they handle that review piece.
It's not until Monday.
No.
She won't be until the first of the week.
Next week.
If you wanna get it going, just write the check out, bring it in, and put that on there, and we'll put it where it has to go. Um. Any, I guess, no one else, okay, um, alright, what's in Ju- uh, August?
July, August nineteenth, there's, uh, New World, is it seven fifteen?
We'll do this at seven twenty, okay, uh, can you, extension through August thirty-first?
If we're able to get on the engine in August, absolutely.
Well, you gotta give me that, then I get you on. I can't give you August date until you say yes.
Yes.
The hearing in August.
Nineteenth?
Yes.
Okay, make a motion to allow the extension up through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one for Lincoln.
Second.
We have a second from Phil, any discussions? All is a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll continue this public hearing on August nineteenth at seven twenty P M.
Can I ask, have we checked the minutes on the tape above the July hearings?
I think you, you talked about July, then you said you wanted June, so we changed it to June. We didn't give both, we gave one.
And that's where the half an hour limit came.
Yeah, I just, I just watched the hearing, part of it, like today or yesterday.
I don't know if the hearing does say that.
Yeah, it, you requested, uh, the June seventeenth, and then we set a time, and then Jack had said, like, we're not gonna go on and on and on. We're gonna give you half an hour.
If, if the tape shows that we were given a July hearing coming.
No, cause Kate doesn't have in the book. We would've told you that. We don't book.
We don't, we don't do two hearings. I've never, we've not, never given two.
Matter of fact, is that would be saying, gee, I guess I'm not gonna get approved on the next hearing. I'll go the next one after. Is that what you'd be saying?
Well, July fifteenth.
My point is, you would be saying, oh, I'm never gonna get approval for the next hearing, so we'll go one after that, so we'll just sit there and say, okay, well, we'll wait till the next one. No, all we did was, you guys weren't budging, so I said, Rob, I said, okay, we're in July, I mean, June, and that's the way we went.
Yeah, just so that you know, that originally Marie wanted to be on June seventeenth. But we moved them to July fifteenth in order to let them go on June seventeenth.
Yeah, we bumped another guy. We bumped someone else to get you here tonight. He doesn't know it, he's probably not watching, so. Let's see, it's Kate, we can't.
Nothing else on?
Alright, so you're all set to August nineteenth, okay?
Very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good night.
Night. Got a few items here, letter of support for recreation. Does anybody wanna make a?
What is this?
Make a motion?
It's from Leander's, right?
It's from a while back.
Do we have it here?
I gotta be at the dock.
A big report.
Might still have a.
I don't know, like a hundred pages, eighty pages?
Yeah, that was a while ago. She's just looking for us to support for the state plan.
Where are you going?
I'll make a motion. Far. Okay, okay, a second, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's do another easy one. Ross Commons subdivision, he asked for an extension. Kate?
Um. Yes, I'm sorry. Just trying to figure out what you were doing.
You too.
Attached, find an extension for Ross Commons, we're wrapping up the project, and, let's see. Strong point. What do they say what they wanted to, Kate? Did you rec- read this?
They said a year.
I don't see.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, this doesn't say anything.
Actually, I think it said two years.
Did it say two?
I think so.
I don't have a.
I've got the latter if you want it.
I'm trying to see.
Well, everybody has it, I think.
Yeah, but I'm trying to see.
No, I didn't get it.
For two years.
Yeah, but it doesn't say from what the what, though. Okay? Yeah, I'm looking at the same one, I think, but I don't see where it says, he talks about.
Second?
The date.
What?
Do you check the date?
Okay. If you wanna read it, John.
You gotta check?
Yeah, but. He says formerly endorsed on July fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, was released, was due to be resetted in July four, two thousand eighteen. A two-year extension was granted, which took us up to July fourteen, two thousand twenty. Uh, apparently, shown out lapse due to separate ruling, phasing, but he, I can't see where he says.
One I don't have.
What he wants.
I request. Extension to the approved. For a minimum period of two years.
We expressly request an assurance of extension to the approval term for the two thousand sixteen. Okay, so he's really, he didn't say two years from the di- this is his second extension, right? So that's how everybody reads it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, to allow, uh, two-year extension.
Second.
Yeah, second, any discussions?
What is this for?
Ross Commons? You go through Olmstead to get it?
So they're looking for two more years to complete building?
Finish the road and all that stuff, yeah.
I don't remember seeing it.
Why does he need that long, Kyle? I thought all the houses were done.
The whole houses are done, most of the road work is done, they've got a little bit of cleanup to do, but when you start the project, it probably doesn't need two years, but it's probably gonna be a little more than a year.
Oh, it'll be on this.
By the time it gets into acceptance and everything next fall, so, you know, that would be safe.
Did we vote that?
Isn't he a little behind it, though?
Do you wanna test it, let that track?
Who, who seconded it, was it?
I did.
Okay, I'm second, okay, yeah, Katie's second, okay.
Do you want to type certain on that before you vote it?
What, for the date, yeah, up, two years from the date of the last extension, which would, I believe, would probably be July fourteenth, so, say July fourteenth, two thousand twenty three.
Okay, interesting, vote.
And, okay, you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Just gonna have to build Gigi's way.
John was a no.
Oh, John was a no?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, next thing is, I'll drop back to town meeting article. Read it?
You can read it, you're allowed to read it.
I don't get it. Alright, this is the article, for to see if the town will amend its zoning bylaw regulations, section two, administration subsection two, special permits by adding new section C titled Affordable Housing Provision stating, all multi housing unit projects requiring a special permit must improve provisions to provide a minimum of ten percent of affordable units as defined by Mass General laws forty B, subchapter S as affordable, this requirement is for any project over ten units and will require one unit out of the ten units proposed. The requirement applies to all residential apartments or residential condominiums, this requirement only applies to the to- town, it only applies if the town is not consistent with local needs as defined by Mass General law, chapter forty B, this provision applies to all zoning, zoning districts where multi unit housing is allowed. This provision does not apply to subdivisions as exempt under the Mass chooses subdivision control requiring special permit, and the final one priority for housing will be given to Walpole residents for five years or more, and our first responders or in Walpole teachers before other applicants, so, that's what's being proposed, so, you proposing?
I proposed it, and I think I just wanna reiterate what I said last time, because I think that somehow my words got twisted after we left the meeting, so, um, I don't think this is gonna fix everything, I didn't intend that, I did not intend this to replace the group that's working together. My intent was to put something in place, so we have something, because we have absolutely nothing right now, I, I know it's not going to bring us to a ten percent point or over, but what it will do is if a project comes forward, um, one in particular that I had asked on, I was astounded that they could shut us down so easily, not even have a conversation about it. Um, and we all know the development that's gone on in the past few years, it's one of the reasons I got on the board, and the development that's occurred has, has and will impact the town, but not as far as affordable housing goes, and it could have, it could have helped us greatly. So, that being said, you know, I, I definitely don't think this is perfect, I don't think it's gonna save the world, but I want something in place so that if someone comes forward with a big project, we can at least have them do a small percentage of affordable, so that the project adds to our numbers. Um, that being said, I know this controversy about stopping at the ten percent, you know, I'd be willing to go a percentage or two higher, but I am not looking for us to just do unlimited affordable housing either, I mean, we're a town that we do pretty well, we should be proud of ourselves, we recently built a police fire and senior center without an override. If you are a community that it has, you know, an abundance of affordable housing, just like it's bad to not have enough, it's bad to have too much, in that you have to be able to s- sustain yourselves, um, and keep the community in a good place financially, so, I think that we have to do something, and this is my proposal.
Okay, and as a part of it too, the reason it's ten percent is that's what the state said, so.
Right, that's what I was trying to keep it.
We're only keeping up with the state, there's no reason for us to go above it, state doesn't want, doesn't go above it, there's no reason we should, and if we get to that point at some point with South Walpole, then this will keep us at the requirement in the future, so, that's the biggest reason why, to keep it inconsistent, so you have to be consistent with it, and that's why I like this article, that we, this will keep us uneven keel the rest of the way. Phil?
Yeah, so, so, you know, I think it's, it's, it's good that, that Katie's adding to the discussion about, you know, doing affordable housing, and it's, this is kind of a inclusionary zoning bylaw, um, but, but I do think that this is best, um, if it was actually presented to the, our joint task force, you know, they've been charged to come up with a, an inclusionary zoning bylaw.
So they have a meeting coming up, but our meeting was before that, and I was asked to bring something forward, so I did.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, no.
And I, I, Andrew had reached out to me, and I actually just got this to you guys recently, you haven't had this long to look at, um, and I, I.
I think it was the Housing Partnership that had a meeting, not the I Z V committee.
No, they have one, he sent me an email, and they have one coming up.
We haven't had, we haven't had another meeting.
No, it's coming up, I believe it's the twenty.
Second.
Yeah, so, because he, he had sent me an email before I had gotten this finalized, um, and so I am under the impression that you, it will be addressed at that meeting, they will discuss it. Um, so I'm, you know, I am sure that they will talk about it.
Yeah, because I, I really love to have two, I, I don't think it's really constructive to have two inclusionary zoning like bylaws going out at the same time. Um, and, but I do think it's good to have that discussion with your concerns, I, I do have a couple of points about the article itself.
Yep.
So one is, I, I, I didn't see in, in, in section forty B's, uh, um, in forty, forty B, section twenty, the, the definition of affordable housing, so I might've missed that.
That's correct, I also looked, it's not that.
I did not, did not see it, so that, you know, what, what is affordable housing, that was not one of the definitions.
Okay.
Having, having been on the Housing Partnership, that, that constructed, that wrote the first, you know, the, the, actually two versions of the inclusionary housing bylaw, I can tell you, it takes a lot of work, and it's not so simple just to write one, I, I gotta go through a few examples of that where, where, you know, it, it takes a lot of thinking, and.
So just to interrupt you, and I'm sorry to do that, but I think I could save you some time, so, what they're doing is a very elaborate, very elaborate plan, that was not my intent, I'm trying to keep it simple and straightforward, we had something in the bylaw that said, could suggest, it was like one sentence, and that was what I was basing my ask on when that other project came before us, and it has since been removed, and I am not trying to write what they're writing, I'm not trying to write an elaborate plan like they are, I am just trying to keep it simple, straightforward, and have something there to protect us.
Yeah, and I think the challenge in doing that is that, that it's not, not that it's, it's what the, the others on bylaw was too complex, I mean, it may, it may, you might be able to simplify it, but there's a lot of aspects that, for, for example, um, without, without incentives, it may be almost impossible to get a developer to come in.
I disagree, yeah, I disagree respectfully.
Okay, no, but, but that, that's just a.
There's, there's no reason to have an incentive, you wanna build apartments, you gotta do ten percent, that's your incentive, you don't wanna build them, don't build.
This isn't something we're just trying to make our zoning, we're not trying to like reshape our zoning, what we're trying to do is satisfy what the state's mandating upon us and what is making us having to accept and not have input on projects.
Yeah, no, no.
South Walpole, perfect example, so this is a situation of, I'm, it, I don't feel, I'm not trying to rezone the town, I'm just trying to react to what the state's mandating.
Yeah, but I, I think the issue of, of incentives is, is not so much that, um, if, if, if developers don't feel that they can come and do a, a project and make money on it, they, they just don't do it, then you get no affordable housing.
But you get no housing either.
But you get no housing either.
So, then, then you're back to square one.
But, but that's not giving you more affordable housing, which is one of the goals of getting.
Or more housing, which is, there's also a housing crisis.
Well, I don't think, my personal goal is not to exceed the ten percent, I'm not here to have forty, fifty percent, no, not, not, we are mandated by, and this has all been about forty Bs, Phil. Ten percent is what the state says, that's, that's the goal.
So, so I, I will also say that, first of all, we, we should have affordable housing, not just because of forty Bs, we should get affordable housing, because we wanna have housing for maybe our children, for our relatives, who can, who wanna live in Walpole, and house prices are just skyrocketing, and it's not just Walpole, it's all, it's all of eastern Massachusetts.
It's a national problem, Phil.
So, so, so we, and, and the other thing is that affordable housing is not really that affordable, we're, we're talking about, mostly we're talking about the eighty percent of the area median income, which, which for Walpole would be eighty thousand dollars roughly, that's the eighty percent level, so, but let me just go on real quick.
Okay.
Um, so, 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 you might recall that when we had other discussions about the inclusionary zoning bylaw, everybody's saying, well, we need to get the input of developers to what makes, you know, projects work, and that's why I also wanna bring this back to, that, that's, that's where when we had our consultant and we tried very hard to define, you know, where those incentive points need to be.
All due respect, Phil, I didn't have any value in either of those consultants, I, I, listening to them and how they responded and how they treated us, I have no respect for either one of them. One of them copied and pasted from another town and didn't even have the proofreading to sit and change the town name in several places. And then the other one was downright rude, and had her back up before we even started, so I, I really don't.
I, I don't wanna speak about that, I ju- but I just wanna say, I, I think the lessons that we learned in the, in the Housing Partnership is that constructing one of these bylaws takes a lot of careful balancing between, um, trying to get developers to build how, projects and do affordable housing, but, but also do it in the best interest of the town, and that, that, that's not, you know, a simple thing to do, and to, and I think the reason why it, it appeared that the, the zoning bylaw looked so complex is because we had some of that language in there, that's be some of it, now maybe, maybe it could be simplified, and, and I think that's what that task force's gonna work on, and, and that's what, you know, I think this is good to bring that to the task force and let them look at it. I just wanna make a couple of other points, um, you don't, I don't think you wanna limit the housing to just ten percent, you know, when we get to the ten percent, um, you know, uh, subsidized housing inventory, then we stop for a couple of reasons, one is that as development goes on, then, then you increase the, the denominator, the number of housing stock you have, so immediately you fall behind the ten percent, so if you don't keep building proportionally within, um, affordable housing, then you, you will continually be going back and forth in the ten percent. And the other reason is, because I, I don't think morally you can have more than, you, you can have too much affordable housing, I think.
If you wanna keep the community the way it is, you do, it, it is an issue.
I, I, I don't know what that means, who, why, why would, why would people coming into living affordable housing be any different than anyone else you want in the community? I mean, I, I think you can't.
No, I'm not saying we don't want them, but I'm saying we have to be able to sustain everything.
Well, I, I, I think, but, but just wanna keep going, I know it's getting very late, so, but I, but I do believe very firmly in those two reasons, I, I believe there's a moral issue on affordable housing, and I also believe there's a very practical issue on the ten percent, you know, that you wanna keep, you wanna keep the going, the over, to have whatever inclusionary zoning you have, because you need to keep, um, up with the, the new housing, that will immediately increase the housing stock, and you're gonna fall below the ten percent. Now, the next thing I wanted to mention was that, um, I, I don't think that we should put in the priority things, that people have to live for five years, or, you know, I, 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 I think I can think of so many examples where that could really hinder, um, people who we, you know, who, who wanna live to Walp- wanna move to Walpole, so I'm, I'm against that philosophically, because I don't think, I think we should, we should be very open in housing, and then second, I think in a very practical term, so, so supposing someone had a mother who lived in another state, and you wanted to bring, bring them to Walpole, but all of a sudden, you can't, you have to be here five years.
So maybe we add a provision that says a relative, but I feel we have to take care of those who are here before we reach out to those outside of us, we have to, and I'll go back to Sarah giving us an example way back of how she had to move as a child, and I said at that time, if there's a child here and they're in the school system, so, I'll bend on the five years, it doesn't have to be five years, but I just started somewhere, but you should, we should be helping those that are here before we're reaching out to people outside, and if you're a child and you're in the school system, and your family hits an unfortunate stretch, and they can't afford to live here and they have to move, don't we want to help them and keep that child in the school system rather than ripping them out of the school system and having them have to move to another community and start all over, and maybe have that happen to them again in a short term down the road because they can't stay where they are? Whereas if they're here and they're in the community and they are in the school, and they have friends, and they're familiar with the teachers, and the teachers know if, you know, they need anything extra, I think it just, we should be looking out for those people before we look out for just starting fresh with someone new, not that we can't, we were told we had to do a seventy percent requirement, which I haven't gotten permission, you know, that backed up, but if that be the case, I think we should use that requirement, and we should give the people that are here first priority before we just start reaching out to anyone and everyone, because we wanna take care of those who are already here and need the help, and there are a lot of people in Walpole who could really use the help, and I think we should be looking out for them, they're part of our community.
Uh, but, so again, I, 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 I think that we need to structure those things so that we are welcoming the people, I, I don't think there should be time limits like that, if we, if we do some kind of a, of a percentage mix, and I know the, the, I think it was seventy five percent, whatever it was, um, but I, I wouldn't, you know, and, and I know you said you would, you would, you would give up the five years.
I wouldn't give up completely, like, I wouldn't start with zero, maybe three years, but I would lower the five.
I would, I would actually start with zero, so.
So in other words, Phil, you're saying someone can walk in from any other town or community within the whole country and just get one of these, and someone's been here forty years, and has paid taxes and has an issue, gets bumped to the back of the line, that ain't the way it should be.
It's home people, you take care of your, take care of yourself first, which is take care of the townspeople, then if you got plenty of room, then you can go out after that. Well, as, as I said, there's, there's a lot of situations I can think of where you wanna be very open to, to people coming in, for example, a relative, or, or people who have a need and, and they, whatever happens, they happen to be working here, so, whether it be, I'm not saying it be, they're gonna, people who live outside the city will be, or the town will be the first priority, but I think there's some, and again, I think the language is seventy five percent, so there's some room to kinda, um, have some priority for people in Walpole, but still be open to other people as well, and I think that's very important. Um, a good example of that is in senior housing, when people apply for senior housing, they can apply in multiple towns, and wherever, wherever they come up first, they're gonna get their housing, and, and so I, I think it also is very good for us and our as good partners in Walp- in, in our state, you know, that we're, we're all, all the towns around, you know, we're all working together trying to get affordable housing for each other. So if we have more affordable housing than someone else, then, then we should be, we should be using it wherever we can, so, so I just wanna conclude, I know I've gone on a long time, I just wanna conclude by saying again that I, I do think, um, I, I thought we made a really good step forward when the, the inclusionary zoning, zoning bylaw, at the second town meeting back in the fall, we got fifty eight percent approval, there, there was a lot of concerns over a few things, we, we appointed a, a joint committee between the zoning board of appeals, you know, ourselves, the planning board, the Housing Partnership, um, I, I know Sarah's on that, and John's on that, so we have two of our own members on that. Um, I'm very optimistic that working together, that they can come up with something, and, and also taking input from what you have, Katie, I, but, but I think the, the avenue to getting something is through that housing part, that, the joint committee, and I, and I, I don't think we should have another, another effort to do that. And like I said, it's, it's, I, I think it's very, it's, it's, it may appear simple to write one of these, and I, and I, I, I know you're not just saying simple, but there are a lot of pieces that go into this, and, you know, as, I, I remember even in this board, people saying, well, we need to get, get more input from developers, what they want, I, I think this goes contrary to that, because we're, we're actually just saying ten percent, you know, and.
But this doesn't address all the zoning changes that would, the other one was doing, and it's not complicated like that, and I think that's why there was all that input.
So, anyway, so I, I, I really just wanna say, I think, I think the place for this is at that, our joint, our joint committee, and, and, you know, I look forward to that committee, continue to work on it, and, and, you know, like I said, I felt that we were somewhat close, and, so, thank you.
Okay.
So, so I would vote no against putting this on, on the, as an article there.
Okay, Sarah?
Okay, um, so first I'll just say that, um, I'm coming at this from the understanding and the perspective that we have, we are in a housing crisis, right, that, that there is a housing crisis in this area, and that there's an affordable housing crisis. Also, I'm coming at.
Also, I'm coming at this as, from the perspective that, that us in Walpole, you know, a suburb that is predominantly white, have a special obligation to be welcoming, to make sure that our zoning, um, refle- reflects that welcome-ness and that we, we do what we can, um, you know, to provide housing for people. And yeah, I do mean people that, that didn't grow up here and have been in this town for forty years. I, I do mean that, I think that's important, I think that's an obligation that we have. And so that, that's where I'm coming from. So, um, just a couple of comments, I, I had like two pages of, of notes, but I'll just go through my, my most important comments that I wanna, um, mention. So I think this proposal really demonstrates the difficulty in writing an effective I Z B. I understand Katie's goal to put something simple and make a stopgap and, and try to, you know, just put something in place until this joint committee can, can do something. But, you know, as has been said by multiple members on this board, we don't wanna put Band-Aids, we don't wanna do things that hasn't been vetted, we don't wanna do things that, we don't have input from other boards and contractors. And so, um, you know, if this article makes it passed tonight, which I, I personally think that it shouldn't, um, it would need much more input and comments from other people. And so one, um, as I understand it, Katie, your idea is, is to apply like to, to the larger projects, right? So that, so that we, so that we, so we get some affordable units in the larger projects. And I, I think you'd mentioned the, the two downtown projects, is that correct?
I mentioned those, I mentioned Walpole Woodworkers, I mentioned West Street.
Okay.
Those are all projects, if we could've done ten percent on those, it would've made a difference.
Okay. And so the two projects downtown, the Liberty Station and Union and West, how were they permitted?
I was not on the board at that time.
Okay, did they require a special permit?
Yes.
They did not require a special permit?
Yes, they did.
They're, they required variance?
No.
They're mixed use, multi-family is allowed by right.
No, it isn't, you have to, you have to go, they were all done on special permit.
They have site plan review?
They came on special permit 'cause it's multi-family.
I can show you the bylaw right here, it's allowed by right.
It's not allowed, no.
Special permit to construct multi-family?
Uh, no, I had special permits for parking.
Okay.
I got, um, a variance.
Okay.
Um, on one to construct multi-family, didn't need it on the other.
You had a variance for a height?
I got, by height, I got.
Not a variance to construct multi-family? Oh, under, under what rule?
Because I needed more than three point five percent of the ground floor.
That's also a variance.
That was a variance, yes.
Yeah, so there's no special permit?
There were for parking.
Okay.
There are special permits, that's all I'm saying, because we got much different.
So, a, a developer can come to Walpole in the central business district and propose a multi-family project that will not require a special permit?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes. So, um.
But that's what this says, it doesn't.
It says any project that requires a special permit, multi-family is allowed by right in the central business district. Liberty Station and Union and West, okay?
This says it has to require all residential and residential condominiums.
Okay, so either it conflicts or this one is wrong?
Well, it doesn't conflict.
Multi-family is allowed by right in the central business district. So, those two projects required some variances and perhaps a special permit for parking.
But so if you remember, this is why we brought it forward. This was brought forward because you asked me to come up with some wording so we could discuss it. So, this can be tweaked, it doesn't have to be.
Okay, my perspective is we have a joint committee that is doing great work, that, that, you know, we have invested people from across multiple boards. We are starting with, you know, an I Z B that the housing partnership and the select board came up with that has a lot of, a lot of really great things. And I know people think it's complicated, you know what, zoning's complicated, okay? So maybe we could, you know, soften it a little bit and, and reduce the complexity somewhat, but zoning is complicated, so you just, it, I mean, I think this just really demonstrates that you can't just put a few sentences together and get affordable housing. I mean, so that's, that's what I have to say. To echo what Phil had said, it really lacks incentives and flexibility that are often required and, and really can make a difference in creating affordable housing. Because again, I mean, my goal, I can't speak for anyone else, but, but my goal with an I Z B is to actually create affordable housing, right? And so to get that done, sometimes you have to work with developers. Sometimes you need that flexibility to, you know, reduce setbacks or, you know, reduce parking requirements or, or increase density. I mean, these kind of things help make projects happen, so I think they're important. A question for you, Katie, who, um, who would be reviewing this special permit? As you, you create, you said this is a, this is a new special permit, so who is going to be, um, the board in charge of this?
So.
That's the zoning board.
And where is that defined in this article?
Because it does say the zoning board does all multi-families.
Again, like I said, I can put that in, I can say the zoning board.
Okay. So that's lacking. There are several terms that are not defined, um, within our current bylaws. There is no quote-unquote multi-housing defined, there is no multi-unit, there is no residential apartments or residential condominiums. And as Phil has mentioned, Mass General Law, Chapter forty B, Section twenty, uh, does not define the term affordable units.
It doesn't?
Does it? No.
Not in that section, no.
Well, in the court, that's the whole chapter forty B, correct?
Well, it's just one part of it.
Okay.
Section twenty.
All right, let's go.
Generally, I've, I've seen other, um, I Z B refers to chapters, sections twenty through twenty-four. So perhaps it's in other sections, uh, or maybe in a, a totally separate section.
Twenty just has a number of definitions of a few, of a few terms.
Yeah, but that's not one of them. And then just echoing the concerns about the priority, um, housing. So priority guidance is defined, um, by D H C D. And so I really don't think that we should propose an I Z B that either conflicts with that or omits categories that are there, or redefine categories. And, um, I, I was under the understanding that we can allow up to seventy percent. Phil had mentioned seventy-five, it's, it's something like that.
It's seventy, and the reason I know that is because that was one of the things the consultant told me I could not do, it was discriminatory.
Okay.
And then they came back and all of a sudden we could do it.
Okay, so seventy percent, but, but here I don't see, I just see it straight. And then, so, so where I see it conflicting with, with what's my understanding of current D H C D guidelines, they allow current residents, there's nothing about any kind of residency, you know, longevity that's required.
Yeah, and I wanna, I wanna check that because it doesn't make sense, you could move in yesterday. So, I mean, just to say.
If you moved in somewhere and you're, you're in need of housing, why would you move again?
Or, or why would it be wrong if somebody was in need of housing and happened to find something in Walpole?
I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm saying we should give priority to those who are here who need help first. I'm not saying it's wrong to help others. This is where I feel, m- everything I say in regard to housing really gets twisted as soon as we leave our meeting. And I'm saying it's straight out here. I am not saying it's wrong to have affordable housing. I am not saying it's wrong to help people who don't live here. What I am saying is that we should help those who are here before we just reach out to everyone. That's what I'm saying, so just to be clear, because as soon as we leave this room, what I say gets twisted. And I'm done with it, really.
I, I think according to guidelines, you can, you can, uh, request percentage up to seventy percent, so I think that's fine. You mentioned a couple of different, uh, employees, but, uh, again, my understanding is that it allows for municipal employees, including teachers, janitors, um, town hall employees, things like that. So there, there's a, there's a list. One thing that I don't see, uh, that is included is, is employees of local businesses. So let's say business, Walpole businesses, um, that have employees there that want to live in the town. They're included in the, um, priority. And also you had mentioned, um, children that are in the school. They are noted in that guidance, um, families with children in local schools such as Metco students. So I think that should be in any, um, regulation. And I think that's, that's all I really need to say. So, um, you know, I, I appreciate the effort, um, but again, I, I would, I think that we should let the joint committee do its work, and, um, it is on the agenda. So, you know, the whole committee will, will take a look and, you know, discuss and potentially vote on it. And perhaps a majority of them think this is a better way to go, and maybe that's the way that we go. But, um, I would be a no on this.
Okay, John?
Um, received a letter from Andrew Flowers, or email rather from Andrew Flowers today, with some comments on the letter. He brings up some interesting points in some cases. One of the points that was, has been raised is requir- applies to, uh, this requirement only applies if the town is not consistent with the local needs as defined in M G L Chapter forty B. And that's one of the items he raised. Just going with this bylaw, you're not gonna get close to ten percent. You're at eight percent, you're never gonna get close unless you go well over ten percent to catch up. So that's never gonna become an issue with this bylaw. The key word in the last part of the proposed bylaw is priority. It's not saying we only do it to Walpole residents or Walpole first responders or Walpole teachers. They just get, they just look for it first, or it's one of the top ones. People who've been here, who've made.
There's no, there's no parameters. There's no, there's no parameters describing what does priority mean? Whereas D, D H C D has.
Well, priority is kind of a clear word, you, you look at, for them first. I don't think it needs to be defined, really. The issue of five years or three years is, can be addressed. Probably the factor that seventy percent that was, has been mentioned needs to be included. Let's see. As Mr. Vamaki mentioned, multi-families can be built in central business without a special permit, so something needs to be looked at that way so we can avoid feeding that loophole. And probably identifying who is to get, performing a special permit needs to be added in. The definitions mentioned by Sarah, probably as well as the affordable housing, need to be addressed within the article or as an additional, well, yeah, as either additions in the local, in other, other portions of the bylaw, in the definition section, for instance. The bylaw, as Katie presented this right up front, is identified as a stopgap nature. It's just there as a temporary basis to try to keep us from falling further behind than we are falling behind. So, the idea that maybe we need to add wording into it that this bylaw needs, this bylaw addition needs to be reviewed every year, every two years, or reaffirmed by the I T Ms. So that at some point, we have the inclusionary zoning bylaw that we're working on, we have that ready to go into place, we can then just remove this. And that was the intention going forward. So I think it serves a purpose. It's not meant to replace the inclusionary zoning bylaw that we're working on. It's just there until we get the other one finished.
That's right.
Maybe we get that finished this fall somehow, or we get it finished next spring and we add another new article to remove this once we have the other one replaced.
I think, I think the plan is to propose something for fall town meeting. So, these articles, neither one would go before the other. So, that's, that's, I neglected to mention that, but that's another huge point.
I think at the time, it comes forward, if there are two articles, one can be withdrawn. If this, I don't know how Katie feels about that. If we have the inclusionary zoning bylaw prepared and ready for the town, for fall town meeting, she could either withdraw this, or it'll be up to the public what they want to do to the I T Ms who are deciding what the town wants.
But, but I think one, one thing is that, you know, here we have two members of the planning board on that joint committee. And it feels like we're, we're, we're contradicting ourselves and the, now, at the same time now, we're, we're doing this other article.
Well, we're being flexible and we're not putting all our eggs in one basket. We're looking at two possibilities that will both help the town in some manner, one more than the other probably.
And I guess I don't even think this will help the town. You know, I don't think this will even help the town because of the, some of the issues we've already talked about, the.
Well, the very issue, idea that Andrew brought forth, what happens if we're at ten point one percent and we have a two hundred unit apartment complex come in? This one necessarily wouldn't work, but that's not gonna happen, 'cause we're never gonna get to ten point one percent.
No, this would, because this requirement only applies if the town is not consistent with local needs. So if someone comes in and we're at local needs who wants to do two hundred units, he'll, he'll wanna put us out. So he'll have to, you can never go below.
But this article is never gonna bring us to ten percent.
It won't bring you there.
It, once you're at ten, it'll keep you there.
Yeah, it will never bring you to ten.
No, I agree.
Where it's six or seven percent, seven or eight percent.
I'm not arguing that part.
We're never get, this is never gonna bring us up.
But John, we have South Walpole, which is probably gonna go, and that puts us at our, our limit. This is just to keep, once we hit, hit that limit, this is just to keep it going, so that we don't dip below.
We, we wouldn't evaluate a project and, and guess what the S H I is gonna be with that project and then determine if it needs affordable housing. If you have some kind of I Z B, you have to look at the S H I, you know, at the time of submission. So you don't get to submit it and say, oh, with this project, there's three hundred units, and now I'm gonna calculate our new S H I. No.
And, and I think as we've been saying, we don't think, I don't, I don't think without incentives you're gonna find a lot of developers who are gonna.
I think developers are gonna find a way to make their money no matter what it's worded as. Or they'll go somewhere else who isn't trying to protect their town.
Right, in which case this could become a moratorium, which is not what we need.
All that will do is maybe make the town a little bit more fiscally conscious. They won't spend, spend, spend the money they don't have.
But housing has nothing, nothing to do with fiscal conservative, though, John, I don't think, why?
No, it's town spending is what's.
It comes back to, we need affordable housing, we have a crisis.
No one's arguing that, Phil. Everyone recognizes that affordable housing is important. It's how we get about getting there and keeping us at a point where we can sustain it is important. This, we recognize, is not the end-all.
I also think that we have to stop making it sound like Walpole has a crisis, it's a national crisis. It is a crisis everywhere.
Before I get.
No one disputes that.
I dispute it, I'm tired of hearing crisis, you go on CNN, crisis, everything's a crisis. When you wanna put your, your point across, it's a crisis. No, it's not. People like to say, crisis, I don't see a crisis. What you define as a crisis, I don't necessarily, that's an overused word.
Have you ever been housing insecure?
Have I ever been housing insecure?
Yeah.
No, what I did is I bought my own place and I rebuilt it, yes. When I was in there, it was insecure and the fact that I didn't have a full house.
Pulled up your bootstraps and you worked.
Right, right now, how is, I mean, you, my kids couldn't afford to buy a house in Walpole.
Nobody could afford to buy a house right now, the prices are out of control.
And guess what, Phil, I started knowing, so that's what happens, you gotta go.
But it's not even just Walpole, it's Norwood, it's all of eastern Massachusetts.
It's the whole country, Phil.
Not quite the whole country, but.
Yeah, my sister lives in a part of Connecticut.
That's because of the way.
But I think what's important is that, first of all, if if the goal is to get affordable housing, and again, we may disagree on whether we think incentives are needed or not. But if the goal is to get affordable housing, this has to be constructed in such a way that it's going to incentivize developers who wanna come in and build developments that will you know, include that that affordable housing with it. And if if, you know, we we had the debate like at the at the tennis court, there's a lot of discussion about, well, builders can't afford to build affordable housing with, you know, e- even with the way we wrote it, so so I think I think there's a lot of work that goes into uh fine tuning an article like this, an inclusionary zoning bylaw, um and balancing it between, you know, to promote building whereas still getting as much affordable housing as we can. And 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 also the, you know, we got into all the other questions about, you know, the the definitions and the you know, all the, there's a lot of other details that go into the inclusion by, uh zoning bylaw that need to be there.
John, do you have anything else?
Um, no, I believe I've said my piece.
I have a few things. One of them is I I take I don't know what's crum, what? The fact that, well, sorry, you said we're predominantly white. What does that have to do with the price of tea in China? There's nothing, zero. Whether you have money or you don't have money is not the color of your skin. It's whether what you have in your pocket. So I like to just say that.
I'd just like to say that zoning in this country was designed was, you know, specifically done by the federal government to be discriminatory. And so the effects of that, those actions carry through to today. And so, yes, it does matter, and it's it's our responsibility to do something about it.
Not just far as saying, it's not just the federal government, because it was the banking industry.
Okay, we're not, my only point, this is about zoning.
Redlining.
No, this is about zoning. This has nothing to do with white or of color. That's what I objected to. What, doesn't matter what you have, it's what you got in your pocket, okay? That's, so that doesn't need to even be said here. We're talking about a zoning article. One of the things that everybody's missing. We have taken, and I know I have, but I don't care, beating by a lot of people saying the planning board's doing nothing. We have a housing partnership that's been in business for four years and hasn't got anything through. So uh uh, nothing has gone through, nothing. They have not put one article that's got passed in four years, okay? Katie came up with this because she felt that we keep getting looked to, so we have to get off the pot, and that's what's happened. We're off the pot. But now I see what's happened is.
I came up with it because I was frustrated.
But now I see that the same committee that's done nothing wants to take this with them. No, as far as, that's why this is here tonight.
Now, Jack, I have to say that I I I strongly disagree with that characterization of the housing partnership.
Okay, what did I say was incorrect?
Um, that they did nothing for four years.
They got nothing approved for four years.
Nothing approved.
Is that true?
Well, you're casting it in a very derogatory way.
I'm not a caster. Did they get anything approved?
They got a new housing production plan approved.
They did, that's not zoning.
No, but, well, they got nothing, but they, but that, the housing partner, the housing production plan was a big, a big effort and was very successful.
They got nothing through zoning, so we've been sitting around for.
Well, but I I I have to say, I think the planning board has to step up there too, because the planning board, I think, could have been much more supportive of the inclusionary zoning when we came forward with it.
So we should, we should just roll over.
Agree with?
Yeah, no, we are, we are the mechanism for the public hearing. We are not.
First of all, I don't, I don't think this is always positive to start talking about what board didn't, what did nothing, or who's doing nothing.
I gave you the reasons why I thought this was good to bring forward. No one's done anything. Katie's finally got off the pot, and here's what we're dealing with.
Well, but again, I, that, the the way you portray that is a very, is is a very derogatory way.
No, the way I portray it is black and white. I don't do words, Phil. It is. Has has a housing partnership passed anything? For zoning, have they, since this group has been in this new group?
Well, how many things has the planning board passed in zoning?
I didn't ask that. I asked, the charge was the housing partnership, through the board of selectmen, was supposed to do this.
No, the, yeah, the the housing partnership, with first of all, was working on the the um the housing production plan. In there, there are many other things that the the partnership was.
I asked about zoning. That's what I asked.
Their charge is not to write zoning.
There's just one thing we took on because we thought that was law hanging through.
Their charge is to to promote.
Because the planning board was lacking.
The planning board is not in charge. If you read the charge of us, we, Mass General laws, you read the charge of the housing partnership. That's what they're supposed to do.
No, well, we.
We are not, we are not the people here who are supposed to decide.
We're supposed to do how, we're supposed to do um zoning bylaws. It doesn't matter what the zoning bylaw, it could be housing, it could be anything. But all zoning bylaws fall under the planning board.
No, they don't. The planning board can, anybody can sponsor it, whether it be us, the selectman, the zoning board, or an individual.
Who is best positioned in town?
We're getting nowhere here.
I know we're getting, no, but I'm just saying, I know, I wanna finish.
This was not the intent of me bringing the article forward.
I don't like the fact that we got another group trying to take this away.
Now, when you say that, take it away, what do you mean by that?
You say, well, bring it to that, they wanna bring it in front of the group.
But no, I'm talking about bringing it to the joint committee, which is comprised of two members of the of the our own board. So what, it's not taking, it's it's a joint committee.
I have no problem with them commenting on it. I really don't.
No, they they're gonna try to take it, but anyway. Now, the question I have is the the new little committee, um you have a meeting on Tuesday, is that correct?
Next Tuesday.
Is that, what meeting number is that?
Two.
Two, okay. We had two meetings, okay, that's all.
Well, we've had one and we'll have some.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's fine. We're trying to do something here positive, and now, nope. So.
Well, I I think if.
I would like to bring it back to the next meeting, if you could put it on the agenda, because I would like to revise, make some revisions from the suggestions tonight, and if you wouldn't mind, Kate, that would be great.
All right, so we don't have to go on anything. How's that? Okay, we got one last thing.
Jack, I have to follow up please from uh.
And we should have something.
I don't need that.
We only sign one in.
But wait, look at the next video. What are we signing? This one's the funny one, because he's always pissed. I don't think you can see that, it's so small.
Okay, could I put something in there?
In here?
Yeah, that one, that's the one, yep.
Are these all the same?
Yeah. Okay.
I'll get that afterwards.
What we have is an A and R down on Boyd and States, which is hoping for. And we got one opinion from town council earlier today, and then he didn't fill out every, he didn't address the last. So what he, what we have here is it meets all the meets and bounds and everything else of an A and R.
No, it doesn't.
What doesn't, John?
Yes, both lots have to have adequate frontage on the way. This lot does not.
But he said, what he, what town council said is, because they put it not considered a buildable lot, okay?
Doesn't matter, the state law still says it has to have, A and R has to have front adequate frontage as defined by the town.
Okay.
That does not have two hundred feet of frontage on Stony Brook Road.
No, it doesn't have any. Oh, it got a little piece, okay.
It's got like.
Well, there's another, I'll read the other, the other piece, John. It says, uh, all exp- expiration of monetary the bond expired back in O- October two twenty twenty, so it said, and I questioned, hey, we don't have a bond on this. It says expiration of monetary security when work remains to be done on approved subdivision is an issue that can be addressed by the planning board. The planning board may require a new security in the form of an amount sufficient to secure the remaining construction. If not corrected, how corrected, a lack of security may deny, may result in a denial, building permits for the subdivision lots. However, unless there's a specific condition of the subdivision approval that prohibits lots in the proposed subdivision in the A and R I reviewed, in my opinion, subdivision modification per Mass General laws, chapter forty one, eighty one W is not required, and the lack of inadequate subdivision security has no effect on the board's consideration of A and R plan. Keep in mind that A and R endorsement does not alter the terms of the subdivision approval nor does have any effect on zoning compliance. With the use of subdivision lots, including the plan shown in the A R plan, remains governed by the approval and the zoning bylaws that they may apply, okay? So, John, you have yours. My my own opinion is he, this should also be a non-buildable lot, if you wanna say it, because we don't have surety for it. It's like going in your backyard and cutting up two lots.
So the road exists if one, it's bonded, or two, it's accepted by the town.
Yep.
And it's not bonded and it's not accepted by the town, right?
Yeah.
Boydin?
Am I wrong?
No, it's not accepted, uh, and the and the subdivision, um, uh, the bond ran out, so we don't have a bond in place.
Yeah, so if Boydin isn't an accept, well.
It isn't accepted. If this was, if if the town owned Boydin Lane, he could do this.
Yeah, but could he do it, going back to John saying he doesn't have frontage?
Well, they always, they do that with that little parcel, but what what tweaks this whole thing, in fact, we don't have a bond on Boydin Lane.
Right.
And what they say here is you can't get any building permits. Well, he got a building permit when he didn't have it. Now it expired, so therefore that's lot becomes a non-built, a non-buildable, a non-lot. So.
But doesn't it also say that the, it's two different things, A and R and the building permit? I I I don't have mine in front of me right now.
Well, it says if we, like this one, he can't get a bill, we just say it's, we don't make any.
It's not a builder.
Yeah, we don't, we don't make any determination what's legal or not, okay?
Exactly.
And the same thing for that, except for the fact that there's, it's not legal, because there is no frontage on the, because the whole Boydin Lane doesn't exist now, without that bond. If he went, say this doesn't exist, and he went in there tomorrow to get a building permit for that, he'd be denied, because Kate would say, no, we don't have a bond for that.
Okay.
So, that's what we, he should have, what he should have done is re-up.
But that's not before us.
No, but, I'm sorry, I, John's has his opinion. My opinion is this should be also be a non-buildable parcel until such time.
But can't he apply for a building permit?
No, he can apply, he can re-up his bond. All he gotta do is come back and post another bond with us.
Yeah.
So I think we should, we should do what you had suggested, and that's say, you know, approval not required, and then make a note that that this uh, this approval not required um does not constitute, you know, zoning um adherence for parcel A or, you know, that.
But you're gonna say it about the other one too, because it's.
You don't really.
You do, because, okay, what's gonna happen, you would wanna buy that house knowing there's no bond on the road. Or would they know?
Well, I don't, I don't think that's what's before us.
What's before, okay.
We're, we're doing an A and R for this.
No, for this and this, these two. They're splitting that off.
They're splitting this big lot into two, right.
Yeah, but to address John's concerns, uh, there's, there's several cases where, you know, it's very typical for planning boards to approve, you know, uh, approval not required for a small parcel that's noted not, not to be considered a buildable lot. And then typically that, that lot then is transferred to an abutter or something.
But this is.
So it doesn't have to have frontage, um, if you're not actually doing like a lot, like a building lot.
I'm not arguing that, so, believe me.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just telling John what what I had found.
But, since, say this house wasn't here and there's no bond, this is non-buildable too.
But but it's not, it it's in a different way, though. It's non-buildable because the, because of the.
Cause it doesn't exist.
Exist, but but it's a house, they wouldn't get a, a building permit.
No, he got a building permit. He let it expire about eight months ago. That's what happened. He never came back and re-upped his uh bond. So now, this is in a state of nothingness. Wouldn't wanna be the person buying that house, knowing that there's not a bond.
But but he could just, as you said, he could just come back and.
Yeah, so my, my opinion is you put, you you put the same thing here, not to be considered a buildable lot until bond is posted. Or transferable lot.
Is that within the planning board's?
Yeah, this thing, yeah, this, yeah.
This part, yeah, because we're, we're saying we're not making a determination of zoning. This one.
Well, if we don't do that, I think we have to vote it down, because the road.
Then we're saying, planning board, oh, well, planning board is telling you, you have to go complete your bond.
Cause the the thing we got back from the lawyers is to say, we need you to approve it.
Yeah, but he also, he didn't say any, he said if they wanted to get a building permit, they couldn't. But he didn't address the fact that the house is there, so that's the same thing. He can't, this, this lot doesn't exist in the world. What he should have done is got a, upped his bond.
Maybe he doesn't know.
Well, oh, the this guy who writes nine pages of this and eight pages ripping me, and I don't know what I'm doing, we're not his secretary.
Okay.
Here's my suggestion, is we, we can either vote it down or ask for continuance until he gets a bond.
Can you ask for a continuance on an A and R?
Yeah, they give you an extension.
You have, you have twenty one days.
Well.
And if you don't grant it, it's.
Even in the attorney's, town council's opinion here, however, unless there is a specific condition of subdivision approval that prohibits the lot division proposed in the A and R plan I reviewed, my opinion, but there is a specific condition of subdivision approval. It's only allowed to not go through subdivision if it meets the frontage requirements.
No, I think, I think what he's referring to there is if if there's a regulation in the subdivision, the original subdivision, that said this subdivision is approved for twenty lots. And so then if somebody tries to do an A and R to create another lot, making it twenty one, then that would, that would make the original subdivision, you know, um, conditions in violation. So we couldn't do that, but that's not the case here.
Yeah, and it says, keep in mind that A and R endorsement here does not alter the terms of the subdivision approval and doesn't have any effect on zoning compliance.
So I'm, I'm not, okay, I won't disagree with it, so we say that's non-buildable too.
Well, I, I was thinking, I was almost thinking we're forced to approve it, based on the the other.
How can we be forced on something that doesn't have a bond?
Yeah, but it says in the A and R handbook that we can't approve it if the road doesn't exist. You need the road to exist, and if the road, if if it's not bonded, it doesn't exist, unless it's accepted by the town, and it's not accepted by the town. So how can we approve it if that's the case?
But I thought in the handbook, I thought for A and Rs, it could even be a road that you know.
A paper road.
A piece of road, you know.
It has to be, it has to be recognized as a, an accepted road, a way that's accepted by the town or bonded. What are you doing? Is you're making sure the people have the right to access that road?
Yes.
Yeah, it could even be a paper road.
But that's, but that's if the parcel they're trying to divide is a buildable lot. This is clearly noted not to be a buildable lot, and I'm fine if we wanna write that also, like.
That not to be a buildable lot works only until we say yes to the A and R. Then it becomes an extension which gives him access to these two lots here, and he builds two new houses.
It's, it's not a buildable lot, and if we endorse an A and R, it will be endorsed noting not to be a buildable.
It's gonna become a cul-de-sac which gives frontage to these two, the backs of these two people who sell their land to him.
It won't, because if they, he tries to come before the planning board, we will say, you d- you don't have frontage, you don't have, you don't have correct zoning, like, it's not.
Because he's going to extend Stony Brook Road into the non-buildable lot, create a cul-de-sac which creates frontage for the rears of these two lots. Which he will then purchase.
If you look at what the lawyer, what the legal counsel says, however.
That's not it. That's the long-term plan, probably.
However, unless there is a specific condition of subdivision approval that prohibits the lot division proposed in the A and R plan I reviewed, in my opinion, subdivision modification pursuant to general law, chapter forty one, section eighty one W, is not required. And lack of adequate subdivision security has no effect on the board's consideration of the A R, A and R plan. Keep it.
I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying you put that as a non-buildable lot too.
Pretty clear.
But it sounds like we should approve it.
Approve, and that's a non-buildable lot, both of them.
But I don't know if we have to say that, I mean, we're.
Well, you should, because how else are you gonna know that it, that it doesn't have a bond on it?
Well, a bond is a temporal thing, it's uh, right, we're.
It's a requirement that this road gets built.
Yeah.
Okay, how would you like to be that person gonna buy that? Okay, how would you like to be that person gonna buy that thing and then find out he doesn't have, he didn't, his bond, he just walks away? They're screwed. That's what I'm looking at.
So whether we approve or don't approve the A and R, that condition exists. So how are, how are you helping the situation?
Yeah, but if we approve the A and R, he can sell it, and then that puts them in a bad position.
Yeah.
He can sell, he can sell this parcel.
No, he can sell this one, sell that house. What's gonna happen is the title search will come and they'll see this A and R done, and they'll go right to that, but the title guy won't go and see if he has a bond on it, he's gonna assume that, a bond. I would say that would be mo, most title people, I don't know.
Oh.
They don't go deeper than that.
No.
So you got, I'm under the mo, impression, we just put it as, uh, not considered a buildable lot.
But once he bonded it, it would become buildable.
The other one. Exactly, then it'd become legal.
So, he fix, he can fix it easily.
Yeah, he can fix it.
But does he have to come back before us?
No, no, he could fix it next week, if he posts a bond.
He could fix it tomorrow, he could pull a bond in a day.
You want the A and R to be recorded, that both of these lots are non-build, buildable?
And then he can walk in, get his bond, and then that.
And then.
That takes care of it, you haven't denied him anything.
And, and the sheet that says this is a non-buildable lot, what do, what do you do with that?
Well, he's put, non-buildable, and we can put indecision until.
Pending bond issuance.
Pending, uh, Boyden Estates being bonded.
I, I just, I mean, from town council's opinion, doesn't seem like that's, uh, the wise thing to do, so I don't know why we would go against that.
Well, he gonna get that.
And that, that's right, that word.
I know, but we're not protecting the town if we aren't getting a bond, I mean, we've. Maybe I say that because I'm an insurance agent, but you really could be up the creek, we could be stuck. If there's no bond on that, we could, the town can get stuck.
Although, the other way, if we're not following legal counsel, I think we would have a problem.
Well, but they say, but that's why I'm saying, Phil, if you write on there, you say not a build, not a, uh, buildable, not to be considered a buildable lot until bond is placed on Boyden Lane, then that takes care of it. Then the guy doing his title search says, well, where's the bond? Oh, yeah, I forgot, and then he posts the bond, and then, once it's posted, everybody's happy.
Have you seen other cases where, where that's happened?
No, we've never.
Something on an A and R, like said.
No, we've never had a subdivision that the bond ran out of.
This is not buildable until the bond is posted?
But if you put, non-buildable, well, you could just put, non-buildable. But the only reason I wanna do that, Sarah, is so that if he bonds it, whoever does the title search finds out when it gets bonded, it's all set.
Yeah, I understand your intent, I just.
I'm just trying to help the guy along, I don't know why.
Has it, has any planning board in Massachusetts ever done this? Or we'd be the first?
I don't know. I don't know.
What happens, you know, if he does that, and then.
No? So, I don't like to be the first on something like this. This doesn't seem like a prudent way to go.
I feel we're stepping away from, I feel we're stepping away where legal counsel advised.
There's no other recourse for the town?
There's no recourse, I'm sorry.
Can't call up the building inspector tomorrow and say, hey, did you know about this house on Boyden Lane?
Besides he's concerned, he's already issued the permit.
Okay, so, who do we go to? Carl, Carl, did you know about this?
No.
We need a bond.
No, but in all likelihood, that permit, I don't know, maybe it came after October two thousand twenty, I don't know.
No, he hasn't been going that fast. It's been a long.
There's that permit, the foundation's in, the house is up, et cetera, on the, on the.
Well, is this something that's before, uh?
So, what's your opinion, Carl, does it, does, what's the best recourse for the town to, to get the bond on that?
I'm not quite sure how the bond lapsed. It shouldn't, the bond should not go away unless there's a vote of the board.
Yeah, so how did, so that's, uh, the, the error of the planning board?
No, the bond, you have two years to do it, he asked for an extension, we gave him an extension till that time.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, but a bond is a continuous instrument.
Yeah, but not if they don't, if they just walk away, he could walk away.
So, did the bond expire or?
Yes, he came to us a year ago and wanted another, and he, he said the end of October twenty twenty.
That he would be done?
Yeah, that's all he wanted.
But, but I thought we could, the bonds doesn't, don't go away until we approve the bond, but.
Well, there's no reason to set extensions if they're, if that's the case, you'd have an argument with the bonding company, saying, hey, no, whoa, 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 you guys let it lapse, you'd be into a big battle, but hate to ask, any opinions, Phil?
Couple.
Can you, can you come up so?
No, he doesn't.
Well, nobody's gonna be able to hear you.
Maybe we're off here.
When this goes to court, we're gonna be like, Mr. Mackey said.
Yeah, he's our man.
You're a resident only.
Resident only, yes. Um, I went to, I stole the guy up here, was not happy with me earlier. Um, anyway. Couple of things, an approval not required is exactly that, you're not approving, you're actually saying you don't need to approve this.
Right.
So you're really not supposed to condition that, because you're not approving anything. I agree completely with Jack and Katie, that there's no road there. Town council said you can, I didn't, I didn't, I don't have it, I haven't seen it, I, but just kinda listening as a peanut gallery. I think you have the option, if you're comfortable with that, so you clearly are not. Um, I agree with Jack entirely, this thing goes away tomorrow if he walks in, posts the bond, he's got a buildable lot. I actually do agree, um, with Sarah, not actually, I agree with Sarah.
Amazing.
Um, that.
He's agreeing with everybody about times tonight.
Um, that, uh, you, you could actually have, and I'm gonna bring one forward in front of you, uh, hopefully next month, um, you could have one very small lot carved in the three non-buildable lots, but it says right on there, non-buildable. This particular case, it's a land court plan, and that's kind of a whole different ball of wax, and, and we'll discuss that, because you do what the court tells you. Um, but, I, I guess you really need to decide, would it be better to endorse it? Which you can do, to deny it, in which case that prevents the twenty-one days, because you're gonna put a, a letter to the town clerk, and I'm assuming this is Lou, I actually didn't catch that.
Yeah.
Um, I assumed he would have to come back, you would have the discussion, you would say, post the bond, or maybe he would've done it beforehand, you'd have signed the plan, he's up on his way. Um, I don't think you can just write on the plan, not a buildable lot, and endorse it. Because it's not, it's his plan, and all he's saying is you're not, you're actually saying, it meets the requirements, we don't have to approve anything.
But resident Mackey, um, if, if he, if we, if we deny it.
Again?
His, again, his recourse is to go to court, he can't just come back and be like, oh, come on, pretty, pretty please, I paid the town now, correct?
No, you'd absolutely come back, there's no.
He could come back?
No statutory, because you're basically denying, you're not gonna post the bond.
We're, we're not approving anything.
That's gonna go in the letter to the town clerk.
Mm-hmm.
And as soon as you post the bond, you can come back, you do the right same exact plan, you can write on. You wouldn't even have to have it reprinted.
Now, you say post the bond, do you mean post it or just renew it?
However it's going to be done.
Yeah, I mean, I'm saying post, renew.
Yeah.
As long as you have a valid security in accordance with Form F, which is a variety of different ways, then he's got a road, and he's got a buildable lot.
Well, the other interesting thing, and I don't mean to belabor it, Phil, is the fact that when you subdivide a lot like this, you're supposed to, in a subdivision, you're supposed to have the, the mortgagee agree to it.
Yes.
And we don't have that, we don't know who owns it?
I have absolutely no idea, I'm not getting in the middle of that.
So we don't have, that's not there, and they'll, and they'll turn it and address it on our end.
But I, I don't think if you said no, as long as you gave that as your reason, that would put a slowdown coming back. You could even put it in your decision, of saying no, pending, uh, resubmission. Depending on how generous you'd be, and I'm gonna get, like, someone's gonna throw things at me here momentarily, if he would say, you know, there's no refiling fee, no, nothing, just post the bond, come back.
I think, um, you know.
He's got things in his hands, I'm gonna start back.
It's only a paperclip, you're safe.
Okay. Our fans are a problem that.
Not, not that it's our problem, but I think there is a time constraint on this, so. I mean, if we, as, as far as what the applicant wants to do with this, so.
Why, what's his time constraint?
I don't know, I think he wanted it to.
Said he was trying to sell it.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, once again, his problem because our problem, and they gotta solve it together.
I know, I know, as, yeah, it's, it's not our problem, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, in the spirit of, you know, what I believe, we should be like cooperative and working with people and reasonable.
That excludes.
Okay, this is reasonable, what he said about me, no, that's not reasonable. The fact is, he's a bully, and I'll say it here, Lou, you're a bully, I got no problem with saying it, and the fact is, he goes off on a deep end like this, but he, and he tells me, I don't know what I'm doing, he can't even get his own act together to know his bond's expired. And it's not up to this board, or anybody, to notify him of his business, because he's made it very clear to me, I'm not part of his business, so. He created this problem, we didn't, but he wants us to solve it.
All right, let's make a motion.
I think we wanna do the right thing right now.
Oh, no, I do too, Phil, I don't disagree, but I don't, here's what I'm looking at, that house there. Would you, I know you'd said a lot, Phil, but what are the chances are, the, uh, deed researcher would pick up the fact that the bond has expired?
I, I would like to say something other than slim to none, but that's probably what happened.
Yeah, so now, this person buys the house, and they're in there, and he just doesn't do anything to bond, they take it on the chin.
So I wanna understand, how is it, I mean, I heard, I heard, like, it's, it's our problem that the bond expires, so, I mean, how did it, I mean, how did it happen?
It's not our problem. It's not our problem, it just expired, he didn't renew it.
So like, let's say it's a three-year bond, and at the end of the three years, he had to pay it to renew it?
Yeah.
Maybe he didn't pay it, I'm speculating, I have no idea.
No, he, he was, in our meeting of last year, he wanted through the end of October two thousand twenty, and that's what he asked for, that's all he asked for.
So maybe he renewed the bond that far, and that was it?
But I thought we have to release the bond.
Yeah.
If there is a bond, but you can still walk away from a bond, we've had that in the past.
Right, but a bond is continuous in that it will automatically.
Only insurance bond.
Yes.
This is not insurance, this is tripartite.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I'm doing insurance.
I see, with the bank, is that what it is?
Yep, need a bank.
I see.
So, yeah.
So he defaults on the bond and just walks away, you mean, and roasts the bank money or something?
Yeah. Yeah, and the bank, and the bank could come back at us, and once you tell us, we would, um, so, eh, you get into all sorts of problems. Banks don't like it, we're going through that on Sabbath, what's that way?
Sbodys.
We already got one of those going on.
Yeah.
And that was a tripartite too, wasn't it? Yes.
I believe so.
Bridgewater Bank or something like that.
Yeah, and the banks change them.
That's one thing, if we had the umbrella of, uh, insurance, but we don't, we have, uh, what do you call it?
We should take that money, Jack.
Mr. Chairman, can we make a note on the approval not required? Not to say specifically that this lot is not to be buildable, but a note that identifies the bond is not, why not?
I don't disagree with that, I know.
I do, it's not yet planned to write on.
No, it doesn't say on the plan, you can do it on the decision.
In the decision?
Yes.
For an A and R?
It doesn't get recorded though.
The A and R doesn't, or the decision.
The plan does, it's the vote.
Oh, okay.
Goes to town clerk and never seen again.
Oh, okay.
So, we, we can make, we can make notes like, you know, this does not constitute, um, you know, zoning compliance, but we can't say anything about a bond.
No.
But you think we can say, this lot is not buildable because of the bond.
I think he's, I think he's saying that. They never received this.
Or Lou here, you could say, take this back and make whatever note you want, you can tell him to do it, and then come back and sign.
Yeah.
You guys can't write the notes, because the engineer stamped the plan as it is, in conformance with the registered rules, regulations, et cetera. So handwritten notes could prevent it from being recorded. Um, and Carl, I would defer to you in this, but I would suspect, actually kinda invalidate the, the P E's.
P L S.
P L S, sorry for this, um, stamp, because you've added things to his plan that he didn't stamp. I'm assuming it's him.
Well, we could add it.
I was not only being sexist, but wrong. Which is doubly worked.
To what you said, Phil, we could add it to the decision, because the decision isn't mandated by this, but the only problem is, the decision doesn't help the person who was gonna have the deed research done.
Correct.
We're trying to protect the future homeowner. So should we worry about the future homeowner, or?
So it'd be great if the applicant were here.
It would be.
He was here.
He was here, yeah.
He left.
That was about five hours ago.
Yeah.
I hate to, I hate to point that out, it really isn't a technical issue.
Oh, it's eleven forty-three, Paul.
We're getting long in the tooth here.
It's not a car, you got something to do tomorrow, you got tomorrow off anyway.
I do.
I don't.
I, at least if you put it in the decision and endorse the plan, trying to think through this. If you ask the copy of that to go to the building inspector, I don't know if there's a certificate of occupancy issue, but that could.
See, I keep getting said.
I'm, I'm okay with putting it in the decision, I don't know about deciding that this lot is not buildable.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think.
At least do.
Yeah, I think all federal and municipal buildings are.
I, I was just gonna say, I think we should contact him.
Only because we have until the twenty, I think it's the twenty-eightth of July or so.
Yeah, contact him, let him know what the defect is, and see if he wants to handle it, and like.
Twenty-eight days is six twenty-eight, uh, twenty-one days is six twenty-eight.
All right, fine, if you wanna do that, Phil, I don't have an issue with it.
And then, uh, and then, you know.
I'd be more than happy to call, I got his phone number right here.
Why don't you text him?
Yeah.
I'm surprised you ain't been beaten down the door.
Tell him, tell him to come on down.
Yeah, no, and that way, we give him a chance to address it, we don't have to worry about, you know, the.
Although, I, yeah, I don't know when that closing is.
That would be reasonable.
You don't know what?
Closing, I don't know.
I think soon.
After two.
Well, you know, and guess what, closings have been postponed.
Yeah, okay.
But, but we're.
Phil is going way overboard, all right, and if you wanna go way overboard, I don't have an issue with it, I mean, you're doing, you're doing a, a, a solid, as some people say.
What day is the twenty-eighth?
Is next Thursday?
Seventeenth and seventy-four.
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
The Monday, from, yeah.
So you got time.
Yeah. So we would just have to post a special meeting?
Yeah.
Is what we'd have to do.
But it could be at.
It could just be three people, it could be ten in the morning.
Ten in the morning, I mean.
Yeah, all you need is three, all right, all you do, oh, it's the very last thing, time is the essence, I've scheduled a closing date of June thirtieth. So you got time.
No, June thirtieth, okay.
Okay, you wanna take it up there?
Phil, field theory to an A and R, twenty days?
But tonight, we're not planning to approve or deny, we're just saying.
Lou said, he's gonna.
Postpone it.
We're gonna, yeah, we're just, he's gonna get a call.
We're gonna continue this till.
He's gonna get a call to say, hey, dum-dum, you gotta get your bond in, and.
And then we're approved of it.
If you don't.
Let's just, while, while we're here, speak now or forever hold your peace, is the board in agreement? So if the bond is posted, John, you had mentioned some concerns, but so, I don't wanna have the, the meeting of the three come back,
The three people.
and then one person's like, I don't agree to this.
I am good with it.
Well, okay.
I, I think reading counsel's letter.
Well, I, John wants an answer, so in the meantime, we get that answer too.
I could have no friend.
Okay.
John.
Huh?
We've got an answer on what you just said too, before it all, because you got a couple of days before this is gonna happen anyway.
So you're gonna ask town council that?
Yeah. Just ask them to answer John's question, he needs to be.
Let's just say he brings in a new bond, okay?
State law, I'm going by state law.
What is the amount? Is, is that something Kyle has to figure out, the amount?
What, the bond? We have a, we have a dollar figure on that bond now.
And is it something that Boyd has to accept before you can vote to accept it? I don't know.
Why don't you ask this guy? Cause I don't know according to him. I don't know jack shit about anything on the, and, and I will say that too.
If it's, if it's just a situation of it expired, I would think it would be the same exact bond we've gone across.
Not necessarily, because he could've gone up there and ripped something up. Something could've blown apart. You could have a lot of damage.
In other words, are we, do we need to accept it before he, before it?
Before it becomes acceptable.
Let's not put ourselves in another bad situation. That's what I'm saying. So let's, if there's anything to be worked out, we're all here. It's midnight. Let's figure it out. Let's vote on it and-
You'd have to bring a bond in that's acceptable in the amounts.
And we don't have to vote on that.
Yeah, you do.
Well-
So the, so the three-
You have to accept the bond.
So the three members that are voting to endorse that have to accept the bond.
Yep.
And-
And that can be done at the same time.
And those three members would wanna hear from Carl.
How are we taking this vote? How are we taking this vote?
What do you mean, how do you take it off?
Be, well, I mean, are we postponing this until July?
Yes, no.
No, no, till, till, we got a special meeting next week.
Next week.
If he agrees to it. If he doesn't, if he doesn't, you gotta get no other choice than to go.
Oh.
That's the only thing on our meeting agenda, so are we gonna do it remotely?
No.
No, we'll do it during the day.
Okay.
As long as three of us could come in.
Okay.
Do you need a ride?
You might need four.
It's a tough commute. Yeah, so, yeah, so if John's against it-
So the board understands, you gotta use the last value posted unless they drive up there and there's a crater in the middle of the road.
But John, John wants, if he gets the answer.
Right, but I'm saying- You know, when it really can't make it as you, when they get that.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's what, so you have to-
Not doing another look at this.
And I'm out till Wednesday, so, just so you know.
Oh, you're not till Wednesday? Okay, good.
And I am away as, as of the thirtieth.
Oh, all right, this thirtieth.
Yeah, so as long as it's done by the thirtieth, I'm around.
Yeah, I don't go anywhere.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Patrols is sitting home watching this movie. Better get your, uh, it's at almost midnight shit together.
So, all right, just tell me what I'm asking town council.
What?
Ask town council, as per multiple cases already established, but is it possible? Oh, wait, you can leave out that part.
I'm writing this. I'm writing this.
Can an A and R be approved noting a parcel?
That's non-buildable.
That's non-buildable and the planning board notes that it's non-buildable.
What section do you get that from the law?
Or does it have to, um, comply with-
Did you recite a section we've come away with? It has no, it has no-
Pardon, it said anyone know.
It has no-
Okay.
Okay.
That determines what gives A and R or what doesn't.
Yeah, and John's referencing the definition of eighty-one L.
It's in the A and R hand.
Forty-one A, eighty-one L.
How up to date is yours? It says two thousand and ten.
Well, can we set a time then and who, and who is going?
You can't set anything, cause you don't, don't even know if he's gonna show.
In, informally, informally, ten.
Well, no, sorry, you've got a break. What, why don't you guys set when you can do it?
Really?
This is the time.
You're not here until Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
And I have to come in to post, which we're making-
Oh.
I studied from, it was on-
Friday?
That was whatever was in effect.
Forty-one hour would be Friday morning. But, well, whatever. If you posted ten on Wednesday, it would be ten on Friday.
I have that one there. No revision.
I could do Friday.
What date is that?
The twenty-fifth?
Yeah, okay, that works.
That makes sense, Kate?
So I could do twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-
Jack, are you the third? Can you do? No.
Oh, I work.
What day? I can do the twenty-fourth.
Oh, would I do this for him? Yeah. Sure, no problem.
The twenty-fifth?
Hmm, no.
John, are you-
John?
Hmm?
The twenty-fifth to come into town hall for a quick-
I don't know if I even. That's why I'm afraid to come in.
What day is the twenty-fifth?
Friday, next Friday.
I could get in here, I guess, if the, if it's answered.
Yeah, yeah, pending the-
Pending a favorable response.
Yeah, set it for, oh, you guys gotta come in anyway, because you gotta have to deny it. You gotta come and have the meeting.
We have to have the meeting either way.
So, so you should, I would say, once you set it for eleven on Friday.
Yeah, twenty-fifth is-
Well, maybe come in on Tuesday and set it for Thursday. That'd make it easier for the day.
Oh, no, that's fine. So I have a doctor's appointment, so I might, I might be able to do the morning. I don't know. It depends what happens with the kids' schedules, but that day is my, um, run everyone around day, so I don't know. Thursday I could do it, but they said Friday was better for them and they're, I'm only one. They're three.
Well, we threw Friday out, so you could do, can you do Thursday? No?
I could do Thursday.
I could do Thursday.
John, Thursday?
Hmm, so then you get four out of five.
I can do Thursday.
Yeah.
Well, that makes you come in for a special trip. We can also do Friday.
But it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
No, no, if you're not in, don't.
The problem is that I need to use vacation time and I was gonna take Mondays and Fridays and I don't wanna wait and have each man and Friday and then I gotta come in Monday anyway.
Oh.
Thursday, Thursday when?
Yeah.
Twenty-fourth.
What time, I mean?
You need forty-eight hours, so whatever time you're gonna post it.
Ten, eleven.
So, right, I need forty-eight hours to post, so I would say
Eleven?
It would be Thursday at, say, yeah, eleven.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
And then I'll post it Tuesday by eleven, so.
That's why I said that I'd give you plenty of time to see.
Does that work for everybody except Jack?
Oh, you're gonna get in touch with, uh, with your-
All right, motion adjourned.
So move.
Eleven A M.
All in favor?
He didn't get a second.
A second?
Oh, okay, sorry. It's late.
That's my son's birthday, so.
Is that all right?
It's all right. I'll bring some tea.